Here we go.
All right.
We're live.
I'd like to draw the village council meeting work session, September 24, 2020 at 9:03 a.m. to order. I need a motion to allow Bob to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to allow me to conduct the meeting until the mayor gets here.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up is adoption of the agenda. I need to add one item and amend one item. The item I need to amend is number 10. Instead of just discussion, if we can make that discussion and consideration, that would be great. And then...
There's...
Okay, and then under D, items of discussion, 28, I'd like to add letter in response to misinformation put out by citizens. Anybody got anything else? No?
I'm good.
Okay, I feel like Joe had something that he wanted to...
He's coming in now.
Add, and I don't remember what it is. So, we started without you. What do you want to add to the agenda? You told me and I can't remember.
Um, no, we'll probably be talking about it naturally.
That was it, okay. All right, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made this? You said so moved? A mister, I'm sorry.
Bob said so moved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, Mr. Mayor, would you like to take over?
Sure.
Sorry.
All right, so first up we have...
B, we're going to be presentations.
Yeah, how many presentations?
Nope.
Good place to jump in and... We've got nothing. So if we have no presentations, we move on to Village Hall. Uh, that is Christina. Morning, everyone, sorry for my... Tardyness. Well, it's, we had a missed queue on the, wife and I, but we was giving the kids breakfast and she's already playing tennis, so I, uh, it was a little bit behind. So discussion of the location we'll start with first.
So, as everyone knows, we've been assessing the property that's across from the lot that we own on Newtown and Marvin Road, Marvin School Road. I did talk with Venture yesterday, and he said that they're still working on some things, so we don't have an official update from them yet, but we hope to have some level of update within the next week or two, hopefully. We can have a special meeting when we get that update, or we can do it at the next regular meeting, whatever it falls, we'll keep you updated on that. I don't have anything else to say in reference to location unless Council wants to guide any direction further on anything else.
Well, one of the things that Kim said about what I was going to add and stuff, I didn't talk to any of you about this except for Kim, and I'm going to throw this out there. So this will be truly something that no one's discussed because, and I kind of led on to it at the last town hall meeting, is they threw something out there, and I'm certainly not suggesting changing it, but the idea in our mind about how we can finance this. My big issue was where the free land was. There's a reason they gave us that free land, because it takes up half our budget to build right there, so it may not be the best place anyways. So a couple of things, I thought if you were to ask individuals in the town, what would you want more, a roundabout or a town hall? If you had the money, spend it either way. And the reason it came up, and I don't even know if it can be done, but I'd at least like to see if you guys would entertain it and take it on to DOT. But if we were to say, because again, we're on the hook for 50% more, and as I was reading the minutes, didn't we spend quite a bit of money on 50% overrun on this? Same deals over here. They're saying 2022, that's barring no other surprises, no other hurricanes and stuff, 2022, and if we're on the hook for 50% overruns, and if you were asked the town, would you want a roundabout or would you want a town hall? I, personally, I think people would say, get me that roundabout in there before we get the town hall, so. And we still can finance, I think, if we can move, maybe to do this parallel, but we do, I think, have a good deal of funds to consider that. And I don't know the numbers, but it's just throwing out the idea of, and I certainly don't want to stall this, but we haven't found a location yet, and my thought was, I would rather less risk in two, three years, whatever it is, paying the 50% overrun out of our funds and get a number now and get that thing rolling and finished, and then I think, but again, just throwing it out there as an option, the other option being government can always take loans out for town halls, so we may be able to do both at once or consider a bond for that, but the idea was the DOT would pay us back, and that was something they floated at CRTPO, so, just an idea, don't want to stir the pot, certainly I may have, but I'm just, you know, ideas are free, so...
Do we know how much the third roundabout's going to cost?
I have no clue. I want to say it was two to three million, but I don't know.
I thought it was 1.5 originally.
Yeah. Do you know how much that roundabout was proposed?
It's like 1.8.
Okay, it's been months since we've looked at any of that.
It keeps going up. It started at 1.2 and then it's gone all different. Obviously, that was a 50% overrun, and we had contributed, I think, $500,000 to those two roundabouts, is my understanding.
That's, that was the right number, and that was pre-construction. That was, we were like, because we were going to put that money into the intersection to begin with for the red light and the realignment, so we transferred it to the...
Well, and we already know we're going to have to pony up 250 to start with, because that's, that's the amount that we've given them, and then we let them give it back.
And again, we could do both things at once, I think, if we considered a loan for, if we found town hall, let's say all things work well, whether it's on the Venture property or somewhere else, keeping in mind on that corner, I hate the idea of spending 50% of our budget on just land, fixing the land and make it work, when we could do something completely, and we have a landowner willing to offer us land, so. But throwing it out there, just to kind of think of it in the back of your mind, I thought this would be a little...
I have one question I've had, Joe, and this probably everybody wants to know the same answer, when are they projected to pay us back? If we did that, did they give you any kind of clues to that?
There was never even the discussion. It was, I think, Bjorn that suggested it, that because towns are frustrated and we are in a situation where every town's dealing with this, and it's like, what's the next? I mean, all I do is I seem, every time I go to CRTPO, they're telling me what's been, what else has been delayed, so now the widening of Providence is now 2030, and we haven't even got to 2022 in the hurricane season, and what's, how's that going to affect COVID, all those things. However, there's still, and Kim and I talked about this, is, you know, we're dealing with, no offense to DOT, but low-level DOT officials, when we maybe want to consider talking to elected officials at the state level to find out who is the one that are pushing the buttons, because what I'm learning is, there are projects still going on, how they're getting approved?
Oh, yeah. Well...
I don't know the answer to that, but, and there's no rhyme or reason, because I tried to pin him down on that, on what's being finished, so why didn't this get done and something else got done? We're, we're through drawings and stuff, and I know it's getting off-subject because it's about roads, but I wanted to bring it up because financially it tied to the location and stuff.
So, my suggestion, for, one thing, maybe not first thing, but one thing, is, Joe, you and somebody, you need to get up with somebody at the state level, whether it's Todd Johnson, whether it's somebody else, and talk to them and find out how they can, if, if we're going to take over Newtown Road, then we should get something in exchange for that, and see if he can help push it through. You know, we'll scratch your back, he'll scratch ours, kind of thing. So I think that's one thing that needs to be done. Something else that needs to be done is, talk to DOT, talk to Bjorn, find out how much the roundabout's going to cost, where they are in the process, if they've started with getting easements and all that kind of stuff, and then we just keep moving forward with town hall at the same time, because we're going to have to do it, it has to be done. We're making progress, I don't think we stop, and I'm not opposed to doing them at the same time, if we can't get somebody to push it ahead and make it sooner than 22.
Yeah, I don't want to lose momentum on Village Hall. I get what you're saying, and I totally understand that, but I, at the same point, you know, if we do have to borrow money to make sure that both projects get done, I don't want to lose momentum on Village Hall.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree, I just, you know, because it, that would be an option, where we say, take a pause, because we still haven't vetted all the different properties and stuff, and does that mean?
I think we keep, I think we keep moving forward, we keep vetting, but I don't hate the idea of doing them at the same time, especially if we can't get the state to move it forward and they pay for it, and we have to pay for it, and they pay us back, find out when they can pay us back.
Yeah.
That kind of, that minus the logistics.
So, a couple of things real fast, we'll check the DOT cost of the roundabout, and then we'll check on when, if they can pay us back. And I think they are actually done with acquisition, as far as the easements and all that stuff are concerned. I think they had planned on doing that last year, because the initial plan was to start, just come and sign.
And the only, and also that, and I read it later, is, as far as bringing, where location is, is the, that agreement that we're supposed to be signing, we're going to be talking about it later, in there, it showed that we weren't necessarily dealing with any real estate, or them negotiating any real estate part of it.
What agreement?
Thought we were trying to hire or fund someone to kind of manage this whole process of town hall?
Yes, I'm going to talk about that.
Right.
But I got one more thing to say about the roundabout.
Oh, okay, well, we're not on the roundabout, that's why I was saying...
But you just brought it up.
I know, I brought it up because I wanted to focus on that, but if we're going to talk about roundabouts, that's fine, but...
No, she's just saying, she's going to tell you what else they're going to do to find out information.
Okay, okay.
So, no, yeah, I was trying to finish.
It's fine, sorry.
So we have, just so y'all know, we have contacted all of our representatives early on in this game when DOT said that they were going to push it down the road. It would not hurt for you all to contact them individually and try to get across some, we've done it from a staff level.
Did you guys call, do you know?
We called every, we sent an email to every representative, every state representative that we have.
Yeah, state senate.
This was, yeah, this was probably six months.
State representative for DOT, correct?
No, for, just representatives.
Like our, like area representative?
State senate, state house.
Can you, if you can find that email and forward it to us, then we'll just kind of have a basis to go on, and I'll call them, like, if you can, I mean, I'll call them all.
If they've done land acquisition and gotten right-of-ways and everything, is that not a significant part of the overall cost?
Yes.
That they've already spent?
I think so, right?
So if the actual construction, if the whole, the whole build was 1.8, the actual construction may only be 1 million?
A lot of that stuff in acquisition, I think they were going to absorb on their own, and we were going to be paying for the construction only, but I don't know, it's literally been probably a year since I've looked at an agreement, so I need to go back and, I want to prepare data.
That's, that's, that's a lot of money that they would have paid for right-of-ways, so.
I think it's, you know, the last thing is just design and...
We'll try to get some information back by the next work session and add that.
But we can, we can kill two birds with one, so I think, I think we can go forward in either one, but I'm just saying, get that in the back of your mind.
Yeah.
If that was an option, we couldn't, we couldn't do it financially.
We'll have to get, we'll have to get LGC approval on, on any loan, so we can do them both at the same time.
Our financials are looking great.
And I'll, I'll, I have some stuff that I can add to that in just a minute when we get there.
They are.
No, no, my whole thing to this is, money is so cheap right now, other than, to the point where they're almost paying you to do a loan, I think that's a great, that's a great idea, because if we told Marvin that we were going to put, we were going to move forward with putting the roundabout in, they would, they would be ecstatic. And if we could push that along, we're, we're far enough along, we've got enough momentum going with Village Hall, to Kim's point, that, 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 we've got good, you know, wind behind our, our back on that one, and that's decisions we can make on, as we go along. Putting that out there and making that happen for the constituents that live here, I'm all for having a meeting with Todd Johnson or whoever, and say, come on, we're, we're doing it, we're stepping up, just give us a little bit of help.
Yeah.
I think, again, I wanted all those things that you can walk and chew both at the same time, and that was a prime example of...
And I will say, I had lunch with David Willis, who's running for Craig Horn's seat and stuff, and he's the one that suggested to get with Todd Johnson and other individuals, he goes, but, he clearly said, given his knowledge of the workings of the behind-the-scenes stuff, he goes, there's no way I would go forward with owning those roads and taking them over unless they gave you something in return, meaning that, and especially if we did the road, and then, because that would move our taking it over a lot quicker, too. We got that road finished, and then we'd have an IOU by the state, but he said, something in return would, would, would make sense, whether they move it up to the slot or they fix certain things that were, you talked, I think it was you that talked about some issues on the berms and stuff like that, but either way, I think we can do two things at the same time. I wanted to put it out there, because in case we couldn't financially, that, you know, but you're right, and I wasn't even thinking about, but from a home standpoint, it's, rates are so crazy low, that...
2.3.
Why we wouldn't, why we wouldn't do that?
That would probably be better than that.
Oh, I think that we pay money ahead, and by the time we would have to pay than overage, four or five years down the road, whenever DOT gets to it, we could be way over, so we'd save money by doing it now and paying the interest at this point.
And we'll get to this discussion when we talk about that contract that we're going to sign that doesn't have the real estate part in it, because if you remember years ago, when I asked planning board and council, who's done this before, no one's done it, so really, we just happen, no offense to you all, but staff members and us doing this on our own, not professionals, going to these landowners and saying, do you understand what the village was offering you, for instance, for the crane property? Do you understand that they were willing to partner up with you to get that fourth leg? Are you ever going to do it? You know, but I'm still very interested in what Mr. Venture has to say, too, but if we exhaust those things, I think that's, that's how we have to approach this, this location thing, about what, what makes best sense for the location. And that's all I'm saying, that's, I apologize for going off a little...
Nah, it's okay, Joe.
Come in late, take over the meeting. Don't say anything, Bob. There's enough stares at me already, so. All right, so we're good with discussion on location, so we'll move on to discussion on architectural design council representative.
So I am, Chaplain, I are firming up the agreement with Urban Architect. We actually had a lot to do with that contract, so we haven't signed that contract yet. You all made the motion to go into that contract, contingent upon attorney review and a few different things at the last regular meeting, so we're still firming up those details. But during this process, I don't know if you guys want a council representative or representatives to come with me to do some of the architectural design meetings?
Oh, good.
I've done it before, I could do it again.
But you don't have to, you just have to know if you like it or not.
I know, but you would have to have some level of...
They will help God, I mean, so it's really just a matter of having someone there that is representative of you all's kind of design. Does anybody else, I can have another with anybody else who wants?
Nope, nobody else wants to.
I'll, I'll go.
I would volunteer for everything if I had like, three more minutes in my day.
Yeah.
All right, Joe, you can do it, but you have to put a muzzle on.
I'm an idea guy.
I know you are.
So who's getting picked?
To be clear. Okay.
So wait, do you want to do it, too?
Yes, I said, yeah.
So both of you?
I'm going to roll her eyes like, I'm going to deal with my...
I'm just kidding.
Work has been a little longer. All right, yeah, that's all you have for that?
That's it, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Me and Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep me posted on, same architectural firm, right, over in Matthews?
Yeah.
Discussion finance and first try on assistance?
So I think this is what you were referring to, Mr. Mayor, and this is the group that helped us a couple of months ago in terms of looking at our capital projects and kind of assessing what tax rate increases would be associated with, with any capital projects, if any, based on the timeline of when y'all want to get those things accomplished. And so what you were referring to is, yes, staff does not have the expertise or the experience to really go through this process like it probably should be, we could do it, but it's probably going to take a little longer, and it would be nice to have somebody to hold our hand through this process. First Tryon has experience with, with this, and they've also got a school of banks that they send information out to, so we can get the best rates, but basically, they would hold our hand through the process of trying to find the best rates for our banking financing and through the LGC approval process. Based on a one to $2 million borrowing, we're looking at around $10,000 to $15,000. I don't know how much that increases for another one or two for roads.
Say that again? I'm sorry, say it.
So I had initially asked them how much it would cost for them to do this for, just for Village Hall, which was estimated between $1 and $2 million of borrowing, and their fee is going to be about $10,000 to $15,000 to help us.
And I believe, if I recall the conversation, they help us as well with like, bonds?
If we were to do bonds, yes, but this is just...
But, but they gave us, they gave us a whole picture of every option...
Yes.
To, to fund a capital project.
They did, yes, but we're looking at just right financing for this, so we didn't talk about bonds, they're ready for bonds, maybe different, but we were just talking about bank borrowing.
I mean, I think, I think Jamie's right, money's so cheap right now, and I think to Joe's point, when he's talking about real estate, I think what, I think, Joe, if I'm misspeaking for you, tell me, but I think what he's saying is, we need somebody, like, as we're trying to negotiate these things, like, if we, if we end up on working with Mr. Venture and on that corner, we could, we could utilize an outside source that can help us negotiate, you know, the, the contract with them, with like, the roads and when they take things over and things like that. Is that something that they can do, or?
First Tryon is just financial advisors, however, upcoming on your agenda is an initiative with Development Finance Institute, which is a school of government, and they have experience doing those things. I don't know if you know, you know this right yet, but they, they have done that with municipalities that I've worked with in the past.
So they can come in, like, on our behalf, we tell them what we want, and then they can help kind of negotiate things?
Yes.
I mean, I think we need, I mean...
It's not in our scope.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, and, well, and we're going to be dealing with a developer who's going to be looking out for their best interests, so we need a representative on our best interests that understands it. I don't think the guy is crooked, but...
I don't either.
But...
But I, but I don't know, because I don't do it. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is, we walked away from the last conversation we had, and we're scratching our heads, why didn't they see that at 50,000 feet, the public-private partnership that we could, and I've had so many people that had listened to it, whether on this or heard about this, this idea over there, and again, nothing against Venture, and I like the idea that he's offering something probably be easier to build over there, but at the end of the day, was there a miss? And I'm certainly not going to go talk to these individuals on my own and stuff, and we haven't done any of that, but at the 50,000...
But like, mutual third party that has no emotional...
Yeah, that understands our interests, and hopefully can see theirs and marry that up to whatever it is, but I just don't want to pass over an opportunity just because they said, no, we're not interested in, in giving you land, when in the end, they see, they could see the value where obviously Mr. Venture was, and again, some of the things that I'm anxious to see what they come back with, too. And then we have a couple decisions, not just, oh, we're down to one, we have to go with this, or we're back on the corner.
So two, two separate issues here. Number one, DFI and getting them to hold our hand through this public-private partnership agreement, whatever that consists of. We'll get with DFI, get a separate contract quote on it, so that we can talk about that and see how y'all want to enter that, and we'll have that at the next regular meeting. Second thing is, first try on, $10,000 to $15,000 for holding our hand through the RFP process, the LGC approval for Village Hall.
I would, I would have them quote out if we add doing the roundabout at the same time.
And we can...
And just find out what the numbers are.
We can get, you know, we can get that added into the contract and have it presented at the regular meeting, and y'all can make that out or not, but is everybody in agreement that they want to have first try on the other hands through this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Bob, you good with that? Okay.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have discussion of timeline.
So, did I put this in the notes packet?
It is.
Okay, I put it in my notes packet. So included in your agenda packet is the timeline that we have kind of merged out with some of the expectations that Council has set forth with some of the things that have to be done. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, if, we're basically going to make a groundbreaking by the summer of next year, we're going to need to know roughly the next meeting, where it's going to be, and we're going to have to start on some design work. But just wanted to show you guys what this tentative timeline looks like, we may have to push some things back, contingent upon when, you know, when Village Hall is decided, but this is roughly what we're looking at.
It's well fought out, and as you said, it's, it's aggressive, you know, but I think it's doable, depends on what our motivations are when you get this done.
Well, again, I think we've got enough of the right people surrounding us, you know, you know, we start talking about first try on, and as long as we have the, the right people around us that can help us and guide us, and it's, then it's decision-making on our side, you know, when I, when I first looked at it, I was pretty excited about it, because, again, I don't think that you can go into a project without a plan and without a timeline, because it's just accountability. I didn't see anything that scared, that scared me about it, because I think our, I think our, our focus is to get, get this pushed along, and if something has to be pushed out, it's not like we've got to absolutely just die on this, so.
It's a guideline, and it's, and it's an aggressive guideline, and we know that there are, and that's the thing, construction, anything like that, there are always a delay here, a delay there, or whatever, so...
Weather.
But yeah, there's all, all kinds of factors that fall into play, but if we follow an aggressive timeline that just keeps us moving forward, that's the big thing. Just don't get disappointed when things don't happen in the timeline, that's the only thing, but...
Well, I think, I think it'll hold us accountable...
Yeah.
To keep it moving forward. Christina, why would we have to get a new civil engineer contract?
Because the location is going to change, and we have to get new civil plans, or if the site stays the same at where we, where we have existing...
But why would that take two months to get a new civil engineer's contract?
Well, because of the cost of contract. We may have to bid it out. If it exceeds $50,000, then we're going to have to bid it out, which is going to be a little bit of a lengthy process.
Okay.
There, there's some things that I'm working on in the background that may alleviate having it out.
That was, that was my only question about the whole thing, besides that, I think it looks great.
Either way, we look at it, if, if we get it, we have to do new civil period, period location, but if we stay at the current site, it's, it's a quicker process, we could just update the plans, however, the only unfortunate thing is, our civil engineer has switched firms, so we would kind of be starting, not really starting over, because somebody's taken over the, the position of our project, but they don't have that institutional knowledge that we've had with our existing civil, so we, you know, that's a decision that we've got to make at a, at a later date, once we figure out what we're going.
So you think it's better to follow that person, or stick with the same firm that we've been dealing with and take the replacement?
It depends on the location that we pick, but I, I really enjoyed our civil engineer, and he understands, you know, the dynamic here and what we're looking at, so it's just, it's whatever y'all want to do, but, I mean, we'll do whatever Council desires, you know, the engineering firm to work with, but we do have experience with our existing ones, so.
It sounds to me like, especially if we change locations, you just follow that particular guy, because then it's starting over anyway, so, but it makes sense to, to stay with somebody that you're familiar with.
Have the knowledge, yeah.
Knows what's going on out here.
Right, and at the end of the day, it's all going to be driven by the dollar amount of the contract, so we're, we're working on that, but that's just, that's worst-case scenario, that it would take a couple months.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions on the timeline in general, just understanding that the tentative?
No, I thought, I thought it was great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next up, discussion of authorizing memorandum of understanding. All right, next up, discussion of authorizing memorandum of understanding.
And I just threw this out here, because you all had discussed at one of your special meetings to authorize the attorney to come up with an MOU for any of this that's going on, if we're going to do a Fenter property. But if we're going to have DFI come in and look at some of this stuff, they can do that process instead of the attorney. So I don't know if it's more-
Well, can DFI do it as quickly as I think we're going to want it done, as Chaplain can do it?
We'd have to ask what their workload is, but they-
Their workload is pretty available right now.
Okay, and they probably have a lot more expertise at this than you, John.
Well, because like, if they come back and they say, "Yeah, we want to go", then I don't want to sit there and have to wait three months for DFI to be able to get something together and blah, 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 or even a month, like I don't want to-
What's DFI's acronym for again?
Development Finances Institute.
Initiative.
Initiative.
Oh.
Sorry.
That's fine.
What?
What's your thinking?
That was a good point. I was just going to say, you know, is it worth just reaching out to them and saying, "Hey, we're on it. Here's our timeline, provide that to them and say, 'Are you okay with that?'"
To... No, to who, to who?
To DFI.
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
Provide DFI this timeline and go, "Do you see any issues with it?"
Yeah.
As your part in it. And I, because I think this should be handed out to all the actors and players involved.
Relevant parties, yeah, I agree.
And go, "Do you see an issue with it?"
Yeah, I agree.
So they would basically be... I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to contract, work it out by the regular meeting, and then we'll work out a timeline with them, they sign this, we'll try to work it out.
But again, I just don't want to slow it down. If Mr. Fenter comes back and says, "Yeah, we've got some plans, we've got some ideas", and then DFI's, you know, they're, I don't know anything about them, I just don't want that to slow us down. So if we have to get Chaplain involved to do the memorandum of understanding, because DFI can't get it done as quick as we want it, then we just have to be willing to kind of change paths pretty quickly.
We can do that at the regular meeting, either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the items of discussion. Discussion, consideration, planning quotes, and authorize administrator executed agreement with vendors DVD.
This is so good!
Before Derek starts, what I wanted to mention to you guys is, in your capital improvement plan that was approved beginning of this year, we subsequently funded a project that we would have one roundabout planting in this year, we would have another roundabout planting next year, and then another one in the following year. So you kind of long-term plan to do one roundabout per year for the next three years. We had based an initial estimate on, estimate of $15,000 per roundabout, and that's kind of what we generally expected it to cost. Through Derek's diligence and hard work, he has actually got some really good news for you guys.
Woo!
So I'll kind of let him-
Saying about diligence and hard work, but I'll take that. So yeah, this price threshold requires me to get three written quotes. I have two and a half written quotes. If you count this, I have a third. This is a vendor who told me that, "I just finished up the estimate, it's $18,400. I will get it typed up and sent to you in a few." And I don't have it typed up and sent to me in a few.
That's three, though.
But I can still get that and submit it to her before she signs off on the contract.
Okay.
So just those-
Is that one, Christina?
I have the original one, that was at $8,900 for one roundabout. And then I have this one, which I'm excited about, which is a bigger group, which is why I think they can do things at a little bit less cost per item. And that's obviously $10,800, $8,900. And he did confirm with me this morning that that was for both roundabouts. If you look at the numbers, I double-checked the math, that does include the roundabouts.
And you're familiar with Summit?
And, uh, do they go familiar with them? I mean, I've never like hired them for anything. I see them all over the place. I've never heard anything negative about them. I know they're a fairly large outfit. Used to be in Fort Mill, just moved to Rockville.
That's a very precious.
Yeah, and this is, um-
Anytime I see a price that's that much lower than everybody else, it makes me wonder. And with my experience, 30 years in landscaping, prices aren't that drastically different between what a large company and a medium-sized or small company can buy wholesale plant plants in for. So, you know, there is some savings, but not, you know, a third of the cost. That's why it scares me a little bit that they're that much lower.
Right, there's now warranties, usually when I have my landscaper do my work, he guarantees my plants for at least a year, or so he can take them back and stuff like that. Is that in this contract even?
Not currently.
It should be.
Almost every landscaper that does, I know for the homes, I'd assume for a commercial or government, that they're going to stand behind their plants.
Well, they're getting away from that, but anytime I bid any kind of commercial, even with Union County Public Schools, they required a 12-month warranty on the plants. They're starting to get away from it on residential, because the nurseries aren't providing a warranty. But the, but all of the commercial stuff that they're doing, they're getting warranties, so they just require-
It gives them more reason to do it right, plant it at the right depth, make sure the watering is going on and stuff, that these plants should do well in this area, but-
And with a warranty, they're going to manage the watering for the first 12 months. So that's something that's off of your plate in that warranty, because they're not going to want to depend on you. They're going to want to depend on their own to make sure it's done the way they want it done.
Did the one with $8,900 have the warranty?
Again, the quote I got was just, was for the plantings.
Correct.
And that was for one roundabout.
I was just seeing if any of the other two offered up a warranty.
I don't need to add all of it into the contract.
Seventeen, $18,000 for two, and this is under $11,000 for two, that's, or $11,000 for two. That's why it concerns me, there's a huge price difference.
Well, it may be the labor, because if you've got, you know, you're doing two, they're cutting down on the labor costs because they're already out there.
So when you bid these jobs, and this is why it's itemized like this, the labor is in the cost of the plant, per plant. That's built into the cost per plant. So it's not a separate line item like-
It's going to take us X amount of time to do this.
Right, so I mean, they all have equipment and all that stuff, and I mean, I could, I could go back and look this up and get prices, but the only, it just throws up a flag that when you have two of them that are hovering around one price, and another one's like, "Here", that just throws up a red flag. I would investigate that further to see if that is, if they missed something, if they did something on the bid that makes it so much lower.
So maybe two things we do, Derek, if it's okay with you, and maybe we put this as part of the acceptance, is number one, confirm they have a one-year warranty on the plants. And then two, provide three references, commercial references, for us to, you know, say, they're just, we'd want a reference, so what was your experience? We can go to XYZ Company and say, "Yeah, they did this landscaping, did a great job", or, you know, and go back. I mean, I know it's a little extra burden, but to Andy's point, it's, uh, it does throw a flag up, but not that, you know, it's not a great number and stuff, and I'm excited about it, too, because if we can do this, and this, I assume will be done soon, because that's the time.
Yeah, it's good.
So are you guys all in agreement that if he gets, if there's no discussion on if he gets, again, confirmation that they would warranty the plants for a year, and then also maybe a couple handful of recommendations or-
I mean, that might have been a price without a warranty. And you know, and that's when typically you price a plant to cover a warranty if you have anything to die, or the extra labor to babysit them. So that may be why they're at what they're at, because there's no warranty by the other two.
But he's not sure the other ones have a warranty.
Right, and that's the thing, but I'm just saying, that could possibly be a difference in the price. A $1,000 or $2,000 price difference, I wouldn't even fathom my ass.
So what we could do is make the motion contingent upon having a contingency for Derek, just so you can have some wiggle room to negotiate if there's, you know, a cost for adding on a couple different warranties or whatnot. Because we need to act on this contract, we can't wait.
Sure.
So, and this is not even a contract, so when y'all make the motion, we're going to-
This is a bid.
Yeah, we're going to need to actually allow me to enter the contract, contingent upon attorney review, along with those things that y'all have mentioned. I've prepared something here, if y'all want to move forward with it, but you can give Derek a contingency amount of $3,000, $4,000 that he can, you know, wiggle as negotiating, if it's needed.
We have 15 budgeted.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the only thing I see that's not in here. Who is doing the drip system and like adding water?
I'm not adding it. We don't have a water source.
You have to, I know, but you, isn't this going to need some sort of-
We don't have a tap, Joe.
Okay, so everything that's on here is-
Drought maintenance.
And if it's maintained for the first year, that's when it's most critical to get it watered.
Under warranty, it's under water for the first year.
Without fail, or they're going to replace plants, and they're not going to do that. So, once we get past the first year and they get established root systems, it won't be as bad. Now, and then we also have a year to come up with an irrigation system. Because they're going to get watered for the next 12 months.
We also talked about bringing in a water truck to water it. Like, does nobody remember?
Right, but that's what we're saying, is that if they warranty it, they'll water.
All right, I forgot that part.
They'll water it for the first year to make sure that the plants live under their warranty situation. That's just, that's part of-
Yeah, they're going to rely on us.
Right. So we got a year to get an irrigation system installed.
All right, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to make a motion to accept the text quote as a formal quote to constitute the three quotes per our purchase policy. So I'm going to make that first motion.
So, all those in favor?
Aye. Wait for you to do your job.
What was I supposed to do?
Okay. Second, I'm going to make a motion to allow the administrator to enter and execute an agreement with Summit Landscape Group, not to exceed $11,000 with a contingency of $3,000, contingent upon attorney review, that is going to have a guarantee for three years and three success, I'm sorry, for one year with three successful reference shots.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Will we have to shut anything down for them to be able to do that?
I had that thought this morning. My thought was, I'm going to defer to rope it.
Throw his, like, what?
I know that they'll have, I mean, they'll need equipment, right? Their plan is to pull up der and load it in the back of a truck and haul it off.
Yeah, typically, they would, here's what I would think would happen, is they would put cones out, pull a truck up on the berm and stuff, and unload the stuff in the center. And if all cones are there, and, you know-
They can be on the apron, and if they're on this side, the north side of the traffic circle, where there's a double lane, then trucks can get by without the apron being an issue. They're up on the apron, they're out of traffic, that should be okay. But they are going to have to have some people out there with us and stuff and pay attention.
I'm a huge proponent, and I did, I actually did something at graduate school on this. I'm a huge proponent of this kind of stuff being done at night. I know you pay your people a little more, but-
We just don't have any lights out there, be nice if we had some lights out there.
No, you can rent, you can rent a light. If these guys are out there working from 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock, you can get a lot of stuff done.
Even nine-
If they work at night.
All right, smarter or harder, I don't care. This is all you're getting.
And then, well, and there's the other thing, is like, you know, do we get some off-duty law enforcement out there to sit and wait with them, which a lot of times they do that with DOT work.
It'll all be prompted by DOT, so they'll tell us what all we have to do.
Yeah. When we submit our encroachment agreement, that's going to be part of the discussion, the construction and safety plan, that's part of what they agree to. So are we a little premature on these bids, then? Because if they incur a cost, or are we just going to incur the cost for whatever DOT requires? If they, say they require an officer to sit there, somebody's got to pay that officer. Are they going to be responsible, or?
Well, if we have $15,000 appropriated for each roundabout, and we're getting it for 11, we'll have a little extra money.
We can come back and ask for it. We have the money budgeted to pay for it, so if we have to pay for it, we can.
So we just have, then we can just add whatever safety measures on top.
We wouldn't change the contract. The contract would be what it is, based on his, up to contingency amount. And then if anything exceeds that, we could come back and get additional action if it's needed, but we would absorb that as-
I guess, yeah, that makes sense. Wouldn't the traffic be a different contract altogether, not included in the planting?
It would, it would be something that would be with us, not the contract.
Right, right.
I can't wait to get it, I can't wait to see it.
Me, too.
Yeah, it looks exciting.
Could be so pretty.
Nice job. Yes.
Thank you, Derek.
Did that pass?
Yes. I didn't pay any attention!
Summary did pass, yes.
Long story short, did it pass, great, there, come out.
All right, um, next up, Jamie, you sure you want to do this?
This is your last chance.
Are you guys okay if my husband listens in?
Sure.
Please.
It's a public meeting.
Okay. I just didn't want to-
Are we swearing in?
He can log in and watch.
He can log in.
Yeah, I can FaceTime.
He's actually the-
I can FaceTime him.
You can FaceTime him?
Yeah, I'm just going to FaceTime him with your thing, so.
Yeah.
So once you make the motion, I'll swear in.
All right, so I need to make a motion to consider the appointment of Jamie Probusnak-
Uh-huh.
Chair as Budget Officer and fulfill duties of Finance Officer as defined in NCG S-15924-25, and to be added as signatories on all accounts.
So move.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye, I'm just waiting, always paying attention.
Okay, let's swear in.
Swearing, hurry before she changes her mind.
We're pausing to get a little FaceTime action here.
Hey, you do realize this is your last chance.
This is my last chance, okay?
Stop it, stop it.
Raise your hand.
We're a lot better now.
Throw his.
We are.
You're going to repeat it to you, right?
Yes, I am, okay.
Okay, I didn't memorize it.
That's okay. I, Jamie Probusnak, Chair-
I, Jamie Probusnak, Chair-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm. I, no, I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution-
That I will support and maintain the Constitution-
And laws of the United States-
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina-
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith-
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office-
As Budget Officer and Finance Officer-
As Budget Officer and Finance Officer.
Of the Village of Marvin, North Carolina.
Of the Village of Marvin in North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my actions as the Budget Officer and Finance Officer-
And that I will not allow the actions, that I will not allow my actions as Budget Officer and Finance Officer.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations.
To be influenced by political or personal friendships or obligations.
So have me go.
So have me go.
Very good.
Official.
Good job!
I took some pictures on my phone all of a sudden to you.
See, now she's trans.
Now you're in. Congratulations.
And Jamie?
Official, wow.
Jamie, you want to sign this?
Got to sign it.
Mm-hmm, in the proper spot.
Moving on, we got someone to spend our money now. Okay, next up, we have discussion and consideration of referendum education.
So included in your agenda packets is a couple of quick facts regarding the charter change and the mayoral vote. The attorney has reviewed this, so if y'all are okay with what's presented here, we would finish out just as we had done the other ones previously.
So were these different than the other ones?
Slightly, yes.
Okay. Can, on the first one, the charter change, the last question, can we put, are there opinions and factors? That one, can we say something like, "Call or email your counsel, you know, invite two of us to come to your HOA meetings, like, we want, you know, if you've got questions, reach out to us, like, just, you know, keep inviting people to do things."
Okay.
And these have already been attorney reviewed, correct?
They have, yes. So we'll get him to review that, but I'm assuming that-
All right, I'm sure that that will be just one. So you need a motion to approve these?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the referendum education as amended per pending attorney review.
So move.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, it's zoomed in, let's do it. Next up, we have discussion and consideration of revised job titles and respective job duties as recommended by CCOG.
So included in your agenda packets, if you recall, a few months back, we did a personnel study with COG, basically to answer the question of, "Are we understaffed?", and that question came in, answered that, yes, we are understaffed, and they did recommend the hiring of a couple of different people, but they also recommended the changing of a few different titles, which coincided with job descriptions that needed to be changed. That was part of the contract with them, that they would make these recommendations and change the reflective job titles and descriptions, and to also provide us a salary recommendation based on 2019 data that was collected from other municipalities. That was not in your agenda packet, because they actually just finalized that and gave it to me via email. I will be presenting that to you guys at a later date to see how you want to respond to these salary recommendations. I will tell you that our staff that we have currently are underpaid associated with what they've recommended. So we will need to figure out how y'all want to address that, if any. But we'll have that presented at another meeting. So we will need to figure out how y'all want to address that, if any, uh, but we'll have that presented at another meeting. And I'm asking you guys to look at the job titles and the respective job duties that are associated here and to adopt these new job titles that we can change.
Can we make one change?
We can.
Can you remove the word fingering in every single one of these, because I think it's offensive?
I can, thank you.
Wait, what?
It's a formality on job descriptions in local government, it's just a term fingering they use to associate with typing, using calculations. Um, so we'll move, it's, it's very common, but we will remove it, it's in the physical requirement.
Every single one of them.
Didn't work. I missed that one, so.
So, um.
Must be able to fit at the very bottom, must be able to physically perform basic life operations, of standing, walking, fingering, talking.
Sorry, just.
That is pretty bad.
Are you have on the top would see contract in 21, 22?
So, yeah, the, the, there's a couple positions that we would not fulfill, obviously. We're not asking for fulfillment of anything that's not been budgeted, we're just merely asking for these changes in job titles and descriptions. And they had recommended, um, a code enforcement specialist to be hired, and we would look at that in our next fiscal year. So we're not asking for any type of appropriation on that, we're just asking that y'all agree with these job titles, that you take action on the job titles. We would look into code enforcement specialist, and a communication specialist, and a planning technician for fiscal year 21, 22.
So we'd start working on the budgeting of that at, like, in January?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's nothing to do with contracts for individual staff members?
No.
Okay.
These are new positions.
All right.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised job titles and respective job duties as recommended by COG with the amended removal of one word.
And all.
With the amended.
All of them.
With the amended removal of one word.
Yeah.
You wanna say that word?
Nope, not again.
Say it in the fifth.
Want to say that again?
She made a motion.
Removal of one word in the physical requirement section.
We're good? Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have discussion and consideration of adoption of traffic calming policy.
So, um, let's see, so the only thing you did was take out all the stuff and.
Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry, you're gonna pop, sorry.
No, I was just gonna mention, y'all had discussed this at the last, one of the last meetings. We're asking for consideration on this policy, because we've actually done everything that y'all had suggested, unless y'all have other recommendations on changes.
So the only thing that I would recommend is make this map that's on page two a full page.
Okay.
Because it's really hard to see. Besides that, I think it's great, it looks really good, you guys did a good job on that.
I have two concerns. Number one, on page two, very top first paragraph, HOA official letter or neighborhood within HOA have support 20% of their, 25% of their households. I believe that because each, every HOA is different, there is a threshold, correct me if I'm wrong, for you to get something that everyone agrees with, whether it's a fence or whatever, it's, they have their own HOA thresholds. It's not 25%, it's usually 70% of the quorum or whatever it is.
Well, that's fine, ours just requires 25, they can have their own, what we require is 25.
Our basic.
This is.
But if they say they get 25%, then they can go back to their neighborhood and say, well, we got what the ordinance requires, and, no, but, now hear me out, Kim, because if you have a big HOA of 300 people or 300 homes, and they're saying, we didn't want that, we didn't ask for that, you, you're not following our own HOAs, then it gets into a mess. It's just follow your own HOA rules, if, if, isn't that fair?
Well, we, we're not gonna police that, so we have to set our own standard, whatever, whatever you have with your HOAs between you and your HOA. We need to have our own standard, whatever that is, and we adhere to our own standard. The only reason that we put this in here is that so just one person couldn't come and ask us for some type of recommendation. We wanted to have some level of community buy-in that supported that level of whatever it was. We have a lot of requests, this is, this is what we do, we have a lot of requests that come in almost weekly of, hey, can you put a stop sign up? Can you put a speed sign up? Can you, can you do this? And so what we're asking for is that community, whatever the request, you know, wherever the request comes from, is that they have more buy-in than just one person coming and asking for it, because we're gonna expend a lot of staff resources to go out and investigate if, if it warrants, you know, whatever it is they're asking for, and so we, what we need is, y'all can change it to the HOA if you want to, but we just want some level of.
But in this, you already said the representative has to be an HOA officer before we consider anything, doesn't it say that in here?
Or having.
Or in neighborhoods without an HOA have the support, and I would change the wording to the support of at least 25%, which then.
But that, but that's.
But that's, that's our, that, that projects that that's our minimum, but that's not the, the necessary requirement, but it's at least the villages. And that actually more applies to neighborhoods without an HOA versus the ones with an HOA.
Okay, but was 25% a majority of a neighborhood?
Without an HOA.
I, it doesn't matter with or without, is 25% the majority of a neighborhood?
I don't know, it's not.
It is not.
80% would be.
But does it have to be the majority?
If you want something, you bought in a place, you all have your own deed to that home, you signed an agreement with the HOA agrees on and stuff, that they're not gonna do that. So I know it was a little bit of hurdles to even get our road speed humps in, in our neighborhood. And it required, number one, we do everything we're doing here, where, you know, make sure that there is an issue, try to mitigate it in other ways before we spend money, but in the end of the day, it, you had to have the buy-in based on the HOA.
So what do you wanna change to? 55%?
I, I, no, I'd say 50% or more, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, because I wanna know a significant majority of that community wants this to happen, not 25%.
50%.
So we're gonna strike 25, put 50% at least in front of it, the word at least.
At least 50%. Yeah.
Make the map bigger, and if y'all wanna take action on that, contend upon those changes.
Or do you wanna say 51%?
The only other, the only other thing is, it doesn't talk about who pays for this.
It does, it, it does in the front.
It did? Ever look at?
Probably.
It's all paid by the, um, well, hang on a second.
By the HOA?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, hang on, let's see, last section, section six. Village engineer responsible for looking at it. All costs in this form are responsibility of the HOA.
Okay, typo.
Where, where at?
Increasing the safety for non-motorized use of the streets.
How about where are you at?
First page.
Oh, we're on the last page.
I just, well, I flipped back and it just, like, jumped out at me.
Can you, can you point out where you're at, because I'm.
For B, second dot down.
Increasing.
Changing.
Safety for.
Non-motorized.
Non.
We won't change that.
Good job, I messed up.
Okay, and then on the last page, you're saying.
All costs incurred is responsibility of HOA, all costs incurred is HOA, HOA.
Last two sentences of both type one and type two state that all costs are responsible to HOA.
Okay.
So in this year's budget, we did budget $15,000 in revenue for, um, what we expected to be requests coming in and monies coming in for HOAs requesting speed humps or speed tables, and we also put $15,000 for expenditures. So we have not, just so we're clear, we have not as a village appropriated any money in traffic.
There.
Calming devices.
Section six, implementation, evaluation of funding. Okay, I.
So just to reiterate.
Sorry, I tried to give him.
Yeah, no, just to reiterate, we as a village have not appropriated any money for any HOAs, uh, for traffic calming devices. If each HOA wants to have a traffic calming device, it's their responsibility to come in and pay for it, and then we will.
So you need a motion? Need a motion to approve or to adopt the traffic calming policy as amended?
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Um, next up we have consider adoption of general fund balance, but, fund budget ordinance, OR-2020-09-03 as presented.
Is this additional?
No.
Or just, you're just moving it around?
Well, so what, what happened with this is we had, we entered into contract in last fiscal year, and I don't remember exactly right now, I think it was $25,000. We entered that contract, and we only paid about $2,000 or $3,000 out of that contract in last year's budget. So when that year closes out, which we're being audited on right now, that money will go back into fund balance. So what we're doing with this is we're taking money out of your contingency and moving it to this year's, um, website costs. What we have anticipated by the end of last year as far as work completion did not happen, obviously, because of COVID.
So you moved it into fund balance, and now we're just pulling it back out?
It has not been into, it has not moved into fund balance yet, because the year hasn't officially closed out.
But it would.
It will.
Okay, so this is just not an extra $8,000?
It's not an extra, yeah.
Just moving money around.
But what you will notice is it's gonna come out of contingency, so it's gonna look like it's extra money, but it's gonna go back, the money that wasn't spent last year.
Will go back into contingency once it's balanced.
Reimburse it, basically, so we just kinda borrow money.
If you want to appropriate money for fund balance, when you get, you know, when that, when that happens, we can do that, but it hasn't been officially put in there yet, because the year hasn't closed out.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, moving it makes sense, because then you can keep things moving forward, and as long as it goes back, it doesn't matter.
So at the end of the day, our contingency decreases.
But it'll get added back to it.
Well, unless, it won't get added back unless we do another budget amendment. But fund balance, our savings account will be plucked up.
Oh, well, that's fine, okay, all right. So then if we need to move it into contingency later, we can.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
All right, so we need to make a motion to adopt the general fund budget ordinance, OR-20200903 as presented.
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Uh, next up, seven, accept the work of and dissolve the website committee.
Okay, so in your, I was gonna say, so in your packet, you have the draft website design, you have an email from Jared, our consultant with Grant, Scott, explaining what's left to do, our timeline leading to the website's launch. He has, he has since received the last feedback from the committee, and they have completed their work. So.
So November launch, is that what I'm?
That is my understanding, yes.
Great job. This is.
It'll take me three years to do it, but a great job.
Been in the works for a while and much needed.
Okay.
Any discussion on it?
No, so we need to make a motion to accept the work of and dissolve the website committee.
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Whenever we do our communications, we'll send a thank you out to the website committee for the work.
We have not to the blurbs yet.
I'm sneaking up.
Next up, number eight, we have discussion and consider adoption of outside funding.
So this is the, this is the policy that you all recommended last time, to basically say, we're not gonna fund outside organizations, that we're just gonna provide support through communications, including email and social media, uh, pretty self-explanatory. Uh, I will say that if you guys ever decide to revisit this topic down the road, most municipalities or at the county level, they will have an entire commission or board set up to review, uh, requests, and basically they would have, they have autonomy in that. If you wanna ever return to this topic down the road.
So we have lots of extra money that we.
Yeah, once we, once you have money, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so need to make a motion to adopt the outside funding policy?
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And, uh, discussion and consider adoption of communication policy.
Kim, aren't you happy we're getting all these policies done?
I love it, I love, I love me a good policy.
Uh, once again, this is a, a communication policy that you all recommended. Uh, it's basically just, we basically just transcribed what we've been doing in practice, getting topics from you all, sharing them through our channels throughout the month, using staff discretion as to when we schedule them, adding additional topics based on the administrator or the administrator's, uh, opinion, your opinion, whatever else is really needed.
So when, if and when we hire a communication specialist, that would be the designated staff member, so we wouldn't even have to change this?
No, and that, and we, whenever we have someone on for this, I'll be the backup on this, so either way, this would still work.
Just keeping in mind, given it's communication and stuff and stuff that we wanna put out, if it's politically charged, we gotta do that on our own.
Yeah, you can't do that.
We can, because it would be, well, when you say politically charged, I mean, like.
Well, if we have.
Minus, minus the referendum stuff, what else are you saying? Support this candidate?
Don't know what, yeah, yeah, that would be a perfect example.
I don't think we can do that.
No, I'm just saying, anything related to issues that, um, there may be another thing that we want to do as a, a body, and somebody says, uh, I'm gonna sign a petition to prevent you from doing that, and then we go back into the same thing on a referendum or whatever it is. And we, it, it becomes, just keep in mind for council members, that staff time can't be included in any of that writing of it and that kind of stuff.
But that, but I mean, I feel like that's like, I mean, maybe you wanna add something like per attorney.
We don't have everything attorney reviewed, though, just because it's not, not applicable to every topic.
Well, we know, I mean, we know that, and other councils will just have to be educated on this, you can't set it out.
Yeah.
Because you can't use.
That's already established law, so.
Okay, all right. So you need to make a motion to?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, or to adopt the communication policy as presented.
So move. So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob has left the building.
Bob, you there, buddy?
Elvis.
All right, I was just saying, you just signed up for something.
Give me some of that. All right.
Go ahead.
Uh, you, uh, you in favor of that motion?
Did you approve communication?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have a discussion of purchase.
And consideration, we added consideration, sorry, sorry.
Discussion and consideration of purchase of services from Archive Social.
Okay, so this is a service that will archive our social media down to the level of metadata, just to show that we are complying with public records law, it's just a good practice to have. The service is used by Weddington Waxahaw and even is org, even organizations as large as the Department of Justice. They are the standard, they're a North Carolina-based company, and by adding consideration to today, we will receive a free month of service. There's no contract, it's month to month.
Okay.
And that's annually cost of?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three eighty-eight.
Okay, and the other bid was what?
That, the other one is a paraded cost, because they're gonna match it to our fiscal year. So that would be for the remaining of the year, and that would actually be less, considering we have a month of free service.
So everything you basically do a data dump into them and they, or they.
They au, they automat, once they link into our, uh, accounts, they automatically archive everything, everything that's ever been posted.
That's, uh, using money, right? And I don't know enough about that, but it's, to your point, as long as.
Well, they gotta have some tax recovery systems.
Right.
To.
But you've done the vetting, like you said, this is.
This is a very good company.
Chat about that. Any other questions or concerns from council?
Nope.
All right, so need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to purchase the services from Archive Social as presented.
So move. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Called CYA. Um, okay, next up, we have discussion of memorial plaques and proclamations for families of former mayor John Kerr and.
Carr.
Carr.
Former, Carr and former councilman and mayor Proten, and mayor Nick.
I would say that I have contacted, uh, both families, they both, uh, the Carr family, I talked to Paulette, she loved the, the, the draft language for the plaques, that really didn't change, she loved that we had, we had the quote on there that was his favorite. Um, and she's also reviewed the proclamation, she loved that as well. I talked to the dispensary family, and, uh, they gave me the, they told me to put the 23rd Psalm as the quote on the plaque. As far as, as far as the proclamation, she told me to use my best judgment, she was, when I spoke over the phone, so I didn't wanna press that too, too much.
I know he's a, he's a very involved member of St. Matthews Church, and was a member of Knights of Columbus as well, so I don't know if we'd wanna put that in there or not, but he's, he was a. but he's, he was a.
Sure, I would.
He was a very, uh.
Where, say that again?
So under whereas, ad, what was he Knights of Columbus?
He was a, a member of Knights of Columbus as well as a, a, um.
Dedicated parishner.
Long-standing, you know, parishner of St. Matthews Church.
It's not Matthews, it's St. Matthew.
St. Matthews, and he has a.
Saint Ma, Saint Matthews.
Matthew Church.
And something like, he was guided by his faith, I mean, he was always asking me if I was going to church on the certain Mass days that I seem to sometimes forget it's a day of obligation and stuff, and he goes, you going to Mass? And I'm like, I didn't know.
And this is why I wanted to defer to you all on this, because you know, you know Nick, I didn't, I didn't know Nick, but I know you would have something to add.
Yeah, but he was a quiet, a quiet spoken, but when he spoke, you know.
I was told he's very kind-hearted.
So do we want to ask our families what day they should, like, if we're doing a?
I've already, I've already been in contact, and they said they love the idea of having a day, and I think that.
Just pick it?
Yeah, it could be up to you, and they're, they are willing to come to meetings. I have, need to read my email, but I think they would, I think Paulette said that she would prefer to come to the November meeting, and that, and Nick's wife just told me to tell her when the meeting is, so.
Okay.
How about this, um, let's pick the day of, the day of their birth.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we wanted to do that.
I don't know what their birthdays are, but.
Or that would be a little emotional, a little too.
But it's, I don't think they'd remember, I mean, either that.
I don't know, huh, without, I mean, it's just like, you know, Lincoln's birthday, or.
Right.
Yeah, versus the.
January nineteenth, November sixth.
Well, no, I was just wondering, like, if somebody has like a favorite season, you know, if they've, you know. But yeah, I think doing it on their birthday is great, we'll have that days, and then we can do those proclamations on that day, and then, um, we can have them come in for the November meeting and present them with the plaques.
So you do present plaques in November meetings and have proclamations.
On their birthday as their, the Don Carr Day, and then it just gets Zier Day. That's good. So you're going to need to find that.
It's fine, I've already got their birthdays on the plaques here, so. So we can, I'll just get, I'll just get back in touch with them and let them know that.
Oh, so we've got, oh, November sixth, wait, is that when our meeting is now?
Uh, no, you're, it's November tenth, but it's, we can put it on, we'll put it on the October session for the proclamation, so that, so the proclamation will be active at the November meeting when they get the plaque.
Perfect.
Okay, so they're coming in November, correct?
November, the November tenth meeting for the, for the plaques.
Okay.
And then we'll have it in January.
Because we only have one meeting on that month.
So Nick's proclamation will be on the, you'll receive it the October.
Work session.
Work session, sounds good, okay.
And then Mr. Carr's will do in the January regular meeting.
Or you can do it at the end of December for the work, oh, you don't have the work session in December, so yeah, it's the January.
All right, so we need to make a motion to approve the plaques and proclamations as amended for former mayors, Mr. Don Carr, Mr. Nick Dispenzier.
So moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you for that. Um, next up, we have, uh, consider adoption of proclamation two oh two oh dash nine dash one to proclaim the month of October as domestic filing.
So moved.
Okay.
What are you doing, Mr. Ford, you do this every year?
You do this every year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't need to talk about it, we do it every year, so let's just, so move it.
All right. Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Don't you have to make a motion to do proclamation? We just, it says consider.
You did, you just did it.
All right.
So I said moved you.
Okay. Next up. Okay, next up, we have discussion remaining twenty twenty, topic with council dates.
I can do either time in November, I cannot do either day in December.
How was, uh?
I was gonna ask one.
Last week's.
Yeah, how was Tuesday? Monday's Tuesdays.
Correct.
Yeah, I realized that.
I switched with Bob.
And you were here for good night, right? So you spent two hours here?
No, I had, it was the evening, one six to seven.
It was.
Had, had the, um, family that's right down here on the corner, on Newtown Road.
Daniels.
And they were talking about the proposed path, uh, the walking path, and said that would be extremely dangerous, and we just went, I just went through the whole, this was a, it's proposed.
Is that Melinda Daniels?
Yeah.
That family, okay, she's on their planning board, yeah, okay. She's in front row on our meeting. Yeah, she's in, very nice, yeah.
Yes, and, um, so, I, we just explained that, Rugged did a great job too, we got the map out, and we just explained that there's a process we go through to make sure that's, it's proposed, and that's what it is, as, and as a matter of fact, we would probably reconsider changing the path where it's not even near Newtown Road, because they were afraid that people going, running off the road, and they're treading down their fence all the time, God forbid we had people walking while they're trying to walk off the road.
It seems to be a common theme around here, everybody's concerned about paths because of traffic.
Well, we lower the speed limit, too, we're slowed down, we get trucks off of it, you're money.
I explained all that, we had a great conversation.
So, I'm glad someone showed up for you then, but just so you know, Bob, and all council members, and Rohit's not here, but we, years ago, it got real dicey when one individual as a council member was talking to not just developers, even landowners, which became crazy, like, you couldn't have a conversation about what's going on in the town. However, since this is a set meeting, the only thing I'd recommend, because I got a call, someone had some schedule changes, and, and if we can fill it in, let's fill it in, and let's try to do our best of getting two council members always here. If not, having a staff member here is okay, too, so if you're the only one here, you at least have someone to, as a witness, that what you said, what you didn't said, so we don't get, or you don't get, it's more to protect yourselves, but, um, and I know last minute things come up, and again, I encourage council members, I had another event that night, that's why I couldn't make it, but we are still okay to have something like that, with Rohit being here, and he's probably the one sometimes answering some of the questions anyways, because he's.
Yeah, he did, he did a great job.
Well, excuse me, Jimmy, thank you for, uh, jumping in there. I already, uh, spoke with Austin, and I'll take your, uh, six to seven that you were scheduled for October twenty-seventh, uh, I'm doing it with Andy, so you're off the boat for October.
Let me see, October in here?
It's not, we've already extended.
You were scheduled October twenty-seventh.
I was gonna ask.
You and I are on the first, buddy.
October first?
Yep.
I wanted to ask you all, do you still want to do two dates for November and December, since you don't do a work session normally? Okay, I was thinking if you had conflicts with holidays and everything.
October first.
So I don't have it on the twenty-seventh, then, right?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're done, you're, you're gonna have.
You're done, Jamie, you're done.
They're done.
Done with you.
I enjoy doing it.
I don't get, I don't get anyone that comes.
Don't, don't read too much into that.
All right.
This is a double beverage juice with the apples.
All right, so I can do either day in November, but I cannot do either day in December.
Um, November's, Thursday the fifth.
With me on the fifth.
So, y'all just need to have it.
I'll be the fifth.
With me?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the fifth is Jamie and Kim.
Yeah.
Okay. I have nothing, so if something comes up, I'll, um, be available to, six, seven, that's the twenty-fourth?
Mm-hmm, that's the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, boy. And that's in the evening?
That one is in the evening. That's why I asked you all if you wanted, with the holidays.
I mean, we've got school till, till Tuesday, so I'm, I mean, I'm here, so I can do it.
I, I can do the, I can do it then.
So Joe and?
Me, sure.
Tuesday. We may be traveling, so, that's a.
Well, I'll do it, who wants to do it with me?
Austin, put me down for, uh, December twenty-second.
December twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just may be traveling, we haven't decided or.
My schedule is so, I don't know.
I know you're, yeah.
I don't know, I don't ever know. I'm just gonna make, I'm just gonna put October for. But then past that, I don't know what we got going on.
And, you know, this isn't set in stone, if something comes up, you guys just let me know, I'm gonna figure it out.
So Kim and Jamie are on the fifth.
Remember fifth. And then Joe and Kim, you guys are twenty-fourth, or someone else?
Yeah, I mean, I could go, I just, I, I could, it, tomorrow, and I learned that I'm gonna be up in Pennsylvania for.
Just let me know, because I.
Okay. You'll be around?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so me and Joe on the twenty-fourth.
With Jamie as backup.
Will you send us that link, or we just, it just, I don't know?
Yep, I'll, I'll, I'll send out calendar invites.
Okay.
And then for December, December third and the twenty-second, Bob's for the twenty-second.
I'll go at the third, that matters to me.
Jamie on the third.
I, you can put me down, but then I just, but.
You want to take the third for now?
For now.
Okay.
Put me down for now, and we'll, we'll go from there.
So one other person on the twenty-second.
Um, who's on the third?
Jamie and Andy. And the twenty-second is Bob and?
Why don't we do it the week before, the fifteenth? Bob, can you still do the fifteenth in December instead of the twenty-second? It's in the week of, like, school's out that week.
Bob and myself on the twenty-second of October. And when do you guys, or when's your holiday?
Twenty-seventh.
The what?
When's twenty-seventh? What's staff holiday, when's that kicking?
Uh, we are clo, we, it's New Year's, uh, not New Year's, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, so we're, we're here for Wednesday.
So Bob and Kim on the fifteenth?
No, no, I can't do it.
Oh, wait.
I'm just saying, move it to the fifteenth because the week of the twenty-second.
That's gonna be a hectic week.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bob and.
Actually, I can do it. Actually, I can do it then.
So Bob and Kim?
Yeah. Bob, I'll do it with you, buddy.
All right.
Very good.
And that's December fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
The sixth of September, yeah. Okay.
Um, just real quick, I'm, I'm waiting for a callback from UNC Charlotte, so if I grab the phone and walk out, it's UNC Charlotte.
That's fine.
Move. Okay.
Um, at our regular meeting on the eighth, um, December.
December, even if the twenty-one date started.
Let's do, let, uh, hold January, February, March calendars.
You'll go into April, too?
No. Too far out.
As he said, that's the December eighth meeting.
All right, so we, we don't need to vote on that, right?
If they decide if we're doing any, maybe traveling again for spring break.
All right.
All right, next up, uh, discussion of employee statement of economic interest, statement of economic. Employee statement of economic interest, statement of economic interest, and code of ethics forms. And then to.
There you go. So just wanted to share this with you all, because I don't think you've seen this in a while, this is just the list of who have, who's giving me their forms and who hasn't.
So how long have you asked these people for this stuff?
Uh, Will Owens is on the, the new committee, I've only asked him once, passed the initial application.
Okay.
Um, the other, other person's Mark Peterson, um, I've been trying since I came on, and I know Barbie was trying before that some.
Well, I mean, if Mark can't get it to us, we gotta pull him off, like, he's gotta have it. It's, I mean, it's ridiculous, like, you can't fill out a form, have it printed out, who's, who does planning board?
Rohit.
Have Rohit print it out and give it to him at the next planning board meeting.
They, they all attend virtually.
Well, then somebody take it to his house and stick it in his mailbox and tell him.
I, I've mailed it.
Mailed it, you've mailed, Card got me mailed it, Andy mailed it.
I have.
Then if he can't, if he will not fill it out, then he can't.
Then we have to remove him.
Just maybe reach out to him on a phone call.
And explain.
And say, look, the council has, um, this is a policy, this is a policy, this has to be done, or, um, you know, you risk removing, being removed from the position, just because it's, it's a policy, everybody has to do it, we're not.
And everybody's done it except you and a new guy, we'll give the new guy some slack, but we're.
Including us has, have all done these things, and we all have, it's not, yeah, and it is what it is, so.
Yeah.
If, if, if you, if you, put it on, please. Please put this on October's regular meeting, and if it has not been done, then I'm prepared to remove him from planning board.
Yeah.
It's been months since we've been requesting this information.
Also, can I bring up that, uh, Austin, since we're talking about punch lists, um, I have, um, in, uh, Nick's formula, formula, formerly L. Flunier, um, I've got, um, where the mayor itself, um, Councilman Lyon and Ortman need to take an ethics training that is required for newly elected and appointed, re-elected officials, and only offered as an on-demand webinar. Now, Barbie, at the time, when she sent this on July first, said, uh, you know, we need to take an on-demand webinar before the thirty-first, so maybe you might be able to look into this. I, I guess, the ethics training, I can, I can forward this to you?
Yeah, please, I was unaware of this.
Yeah, sit, send it to Austin, Bob, and he'll get together with whoever needs to take it and get them taking it.
I mean, I don't know, I'm bored, if there's a.
Oh, it's very.
It's not on there, there's something Bobby brought up.
It's very important.
Where's she see that?
He's, he saw, he saw something on the stall about it, that Barbie sent out, okay.
Is that a continuously run by the school government or something like that? That they, I don't know how often they, that they do it, but.
It's newly elected or re-elected, so like, I don't have to take it except every four years if I get re-elected, you have to take it every two years, and new people, newly appointed, new people.
Apparently, I lose my way after two years in.
Okay, you got it, Austin.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank, thank you, Bob, so Austin, you take a look at that, figure out who needs to do it and get up with them.
Ethics training, yeah.
Now seem to remember that, I think I was told that, and I just never followed up with it, so, my bad.
All right.
I'm still very ethical.
I know. All right, let's go.
All right, we get there, everybody? All right, thank you, Austin.
Mm-hmm.
Next up, discussion fifteen, discussion consideration of Villas Center District Strategic Plan Committee applications.
Okay, this is, this is short, there's only one application left and one vacancy, Mr.?
FYI, just for the record and stuff, I was at a fundraising event for David Willis, in there I ran into a resident of Meadowlark, and I talked to her about it, and, um, I don't know if I have her phone number or anything, but maybe, I think she was involved at some point, but she said she was interested.
Well, she did put her application in, we have an application, we have one spot, so.
It's up to her to do, that's what she's saying, so, okay. If we're looking to fill it, if it's a, a, again, another resident rather than a developer.
Well, this isn't a developer, this is a resident that you have an application for.
We live in Rising Road, right across the street.
Yeah, did, did we, didn't we have a deadline for this, though?
Their, their first meeting is, is October first.
Yeah, so.
All right, yeah.
Basically, this meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And, and if she wants to put in her application, we may have to remove somebody because they can't get their form, so.
Okay, sure.
We'll have a backup. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jake Filling.
Filling.
Filling, to the Villas Center District Strategic Plan Committee.
And on the website, how is it listed for her to pull up that application, is it specific for this?
It's just, we, just a general application, or you write what you want to apply to on it? It's just, we, just a general application, or you write what you wanna apply to on it?
So, moved. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um.
Okay, listen for it.
I'm getting ready.
Next, consider a call for a public hearing for CUP application number two oh dash one two five one oh, three thou- addresses three thousand Rocky Hollow Drive, pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard to be held on October thirteenth at Village Hall at six thirty P.M.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'll get ready for the next one.
Get ready.
And, uh, number seventeen, consider a call for a public hearing for CUP application number two oh dash one two five one three, address being eight four oh five Vanuie, pool in a rear yard that abuts a side yard to be held on October thirteenth at Village Hall at six thirty P.M.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and move along. Next up, eighteen, discussion of O R dash two oh two oh dash oh nine dash oh four, amending chapter seventy-four, traffic schedules for modified speed limits within subdivisions in Village, Maryland, North Carolina.
Okay, and this was something that we discussed a few months back, um.
Did we lower any of these, or these are just now, like, in our order?
This is codified, remember?
It's official.
We had recognized that our residential neighborhoods were twenty-five, that was our default speed limit.
Okay.
And so, council had requested to make sure that all of our subdivisions were twenty-five, and that's what this text.
Do we have signs?
We, uh.
Do we have cute little Marvin signs?
Work in progress.
Yeah, we're work, no, they're not, they're the Marvin's.
Not the speed limit.
Will we, will we require the neighborhoods to have those signs in?
We're gonna do that.
Can't we have cute little Marvin signs?
Maybe they don't want them.
For the speed limit signs.
Doesn't matter, there are roads.
I, I understand, but.
Just like DOT.
From aesthetic standpoint, some people don't.
It's like, we're DOT now, damn it.
It's what you call.
From our.
Or V O M, DOT.
So, a couple of things, from our standpoint, our roads that we own, we're gonna put up speed limit signs, that's the only way that we can actually enforce traffic citations in that, in that area.
Okay.
Speed traffic citations.
So, I would recommend that.
Can we get cute little Marvin signs?
They have to be DOT.
DOT.
Well, can't we get them approved?
Not if they're not standard.
Not speed limits, we can do, we're, we're, we've got the subdivision signs that we're working on that we're gonna do at the same time, so we can get some cost savings on it all.
But once it's our road, we can do it, right?
We can't change speed limit signs, like, we, they have to be DOT.
Why DOT doesn't own them?
They own the roads.
In order for our law enforcement to enforce.
So, that is an issue right there, too.
What do you, what do you mean?
We were talking about it in the.
We take over that road, if it's not a DOT stamped sign, we can't enforce twenty-five mile an hour.
That's correct, but our, all of our signs are gonna be DOT approved, because that's what we adhere to our spec manual, is DOT approved signs.
Okay, fine.
So, we would order DOT signs.
All right.
We don't have, we don't have an issue there, we would order those approved signs.
You guys stay, nobody's fine.
So, the other thing I'd recommend to save costs, too, is at the front entrance of every, and that's it.
That's it, that's all we're doing to this.
Yeah, like a subdivision-wide.
Yeah, and only on our roads that we currently own.
And that's the full list of the roads that we own.
So, you'll do front entrance and back entrance of Weddington Chase?
Weddington Chase already has them.
Oh, okay.
So, then, what would be tricky is Marvin Creek, which we're not taking over all at the same time, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So.
Does it have some extras on hand for whenever?
Well, it's just.
We may just want to do with.
It, it wouldn't hurt to, you know, we're taking over the entrance of all the, if we're taking over those roads, then they just maybe assume that every road within that development is under the twenty-five, which technically it wouldn't be. Um, so if they got them on one road at thirty, you know, you know.
They can only enforce it on roads that we can enforce it on.
So, to your point, can someone.
Well, no, they still enforce it on regular roads.
Not if it's thirty-five, and say they're going thirty-five miles an hour, and he dings them for thirty-five, and a twenty-five. If they're on a road that is not owned by, the way I'm understanding it.
Oh, right, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
That we don't own.
You can put a subdivision sign that says all roads, but if it's not a road that we own, they can't enforce twenty-five.
I got you, I thought you meant, like, out here, like, yeah, okay.
No.
So, we, our spec manual refers back to DOT's manual of uniformed traffic control devices, um, and that's where their standards come in to play with the signs, and so, our, basically, our ordinance in a nutshell says that we have to have those signs, so.
So, let me ask you this, can HOA supersede our speed limit?
Not if we own the streets.
Not officially?
Yeah.
If we own the streets, no, now, they can put up a sign, but it's not enforceable.
Uh, I'd also wanna say that Marvin Creek, other roads are twenty-five miles an hour, just for, even though they're DOT roads, so.
Oh, okay, so, we're.
So, they're all already twenty-five. Yeah, they're all ready.
Maybe some other large developers.
So, it's enforceable, then, so, that's not a big deal.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to place O R two oh two oh oh nine oh four, an ordinance amending chapter seventy-four traffic schedules on the consent agenda for October thirteenth, twenty twenty.
We're changing the ordinance, I wonder if we're getting any pushback from the community? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Petitions. If I could just say something before we move on, would this, the list in this ordinance would just merge into what we already have in chapter seventy-four? So, it wouldn't, uh, remove roads that are.
Already in there.
Already twenty-five, but not.
I think there are, I think the new list is all those additionally, I think there, those aren't, that the, the list in here is also what's in there.
But it's just amending, it doesn't mean that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just, it's just sliding, sliding what, if, the new stuff in, and if it's already in there, then it stays in there.
Perfect.
Okay, um, I think I said all of us in favor, correct?
Yeah, we already did the motion.
Motion passed, unanimously. Uh, next up, we have update of federal and CRTPO grants for developments.
Okay, um, so, I've talked to Bjorn about this, and he's saying that the federal aid comes through CRTPO applications, which is not something I knew when I introduced this idea last, uh, work session. Um, so, in the application, in the, sorry, in the packet, there is the CRTPO call for applications for the fall of twenty twenty, and that is due on October sixteenth, um, and I just wanted to, uh, get, uh, I wanna tell you a little bit about it. Basically, we would estimate how much, uh, well, what trail we wanna apply for, we would apply for the Marvin Loop, because that's the one that's most likely that it will be awarded.
Yeah.
And how much ever it costs, we can ask them for that much money if we put twenty percent, um, match.
But they're not gonna match until twenty-four?
Yeah, so, they won't.
If, if we get it.
Right, if we are awarded the money, they'll get, they'll be, will be awarded in twenty-four.
Okay.
If you get awarded money, is there any chance that they, it's delayed or anything like that, or is that?
I'm sure there's a chance, or at least.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a chance, but I can't speak to that.
Is it tied to DOTs?
When would we find out if we got it or not?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question.
Could you find out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Beginning of two thousand and fourteen.
Um.
Now, we're just wrapping up some planning, but we can do this annually, every year, if we don't get it this year, we apply it again.
Yeah, we can apply next year, um, the application is kinda multiple choice mostly, um, so I.
Do you need help with it?
Um, I mean, more help the better, um, but Dan Wilson's from the PR and G Board, um, he has, he owns an engineering firm, he's already reached out to us, saying he wants to help us apply for this grant, so.
I was actually gonna recommend the PR and G Board to.
Right.
To help with it, but if Dan wants to help with it, I think that's great.
Did, did, uh, they say anything, or he give you any idea of the percentage of these that get some sort of funding, if any?
Um, they rank the, uh, the projects based on, uh, the score, and, uh, the, how much of the money they have, they'll take the top, you know, the top of the list up until they have enough money.
Yeah, 'cause I'm looking at these, the rankings and stuff, if you're filling in the things, mixed youth center, town center, major employment, transit center, we're, we're scoring zero on a lot of these.
That's all right.
Um, I mean, I would say that when I apply for these, we would.
We should get a light rail.
Just kidding, just kidding, calm down, everybody.
We would say that it would tie the village center in.
What dress?
And later, if, you know, say we don't build a village center, then we don't take the money.
Got it, okay, all right, well, that's fine, and they can reward it to somebody else.
Right.
All right, cool, so, do you need direction, or just, uh, hey, keep going with it?
Direction to apply for the CRTPO, um.
Grant for greenways?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to Director Rohit to apply for the federal and CRTPO grants for greenways.
Sure.
So moved.
Thanks.
Thomas area.
Real quick, uh, you're, you're gonna know, you're gonna know the funding is a stated amount of funding request, so you, you work with, just based on what the.
Yeah.
Rohit'll know a lot.
Dan and I, and probably Mike, too, uh, will work together to figure out, but we already have a two-point-two million dollar estimate from the, uh, Parks and Greenway master plan, so, it shouldn't be too much different from that.
All right, all, uh, for discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, next up, we have discussion to officially name the Village Center District as the Marvin Heritage.
Hi, this is cute little sign.
Yeah, so.
See sign, I like signs.
So, I put, I put my name in the agenda, but, uh, this is, uh, Councilman Mark Alisa's item, so, um.
Oh, Bob, you get to talk, not too long, though.
No, I won't talk as long as Joe, I promise.
I'm, I'm right here, I can hear you, um, but, I mean, I could, I mean, I could kick it off. Basically, the Village Center District, you know, if you think about it, it's not really a name, it's a district in the center of the village, it should have a name, and, uh, we've been recommended by Scott Lett to choose this one, and, uh, it's, it's, it's really cute, it, it ties everything together, it's got Marvin in its name. Heritage is, uh, is just a word that kind of enforces that that's the priority when we go forward with this district, uh, preserve, um, and, uh, to make new development look like old development, um, so, that's the name being recommended, and if, uh, if the motion, uh, to officially name this district passes today, then we would go ahead and name, to call, to refer everything that we, you know, refer this district as this name going forward.
Including the committee?
Yeah, including the committee, so, I think it would be in a future, um, maybe the motion, it could be a motion today, but to rename the committee to Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee.
Maybe an all-encompassing motion?
Yeah, yeah.
And just a quick comment, the, uh, with my involvement of the, with the National Trust for Historic Preservation and, and the main committee, uh, everybody around the country names their areas historic district, and it's overused. Um, the idea that, you know, if you go, I pass often Belmont, you see Belmont's Historic District, and what it kind of evokes by saying historic is all the buildings are all, they're all turn of the century, they're all whatever they are. Whereas, here we are, we're in the process of putting a village district together, you know, putting a, 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 a commercial area together, but it's not, it's only a couple places that are historic, so, we just figured that heritage evokes the feeling, the, the, what we wanna bring to the residents, uh, the, the area, so, heritage is more in-depth, uh, it's, it, it, it refers to something more than buildings, it's referring to our attitude, and that's the major reason.
I love it, I think it's great. All right, so, I'd like to make a motion to name the Village Center District officially the Marvin Heritage District, and consider the use of the ta- and use the tagline as shown, and switch to using the Marvin Heritage District in all instru- instances of the district, and any references.
Including the committee.
Including the strategic committee.
Sure.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's great. Cute.
Thank you.
Next up, that's, that's, that's great, I like that one, next up, we have discussion Amber Meadows, Amber Meadows' maintenance request.
Um, so, I had a meeting with the Amber Meadows, uh, HOA, uh, a little while ago, and, uh, there are several things that, uh, they're asking for, so, I mean, I think it would be easy to just, um, to just break them down in, uh, in the, the list as presented. Um, one thing is that they love the trail, it's great, but the problem is that other people love the trail, and, uh, people are riding motorized vehicles up into it, and they don't, it's not that they don't like it, but they want us to have an agreement that, uh, that we repair and maintain the greenway at our expense, and hold Amber Meadows harmless for any accidents or any damages that occur on the greenway.
I mean, don't we have that anyway?
I mean, that's certainly reasonable, it's our greenway.
It's our greenway, like.
They just happen to be adjacent to it.
Yeah.
All right, it's village-owned property, it's not theirs, so, there should be, should be no liability to them.
Um, that's probably true, but then they pulled out that Tullamore, we actually have a physical agreement that says that, and we don't have anything like that for Amber Meadows.
We're there.
So, we just draft one up similar to that one and sign it, and have, have, uh, Chaplain review it, make sure it's, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Chaplain about it, and just.
Okay.
That's, that should be straightforward, and, and actually, moving forward, we should probably just draft a, an agreement for all neighborhoods that are bar greenways, that we can have that, you know, just like a generic one for moving forward, so we don't have to, you know, this, this won't come up again, it's just a whole.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I guess this is a little different than their neighborhood abutting the greenway, because the greenway is in their property, and we have an easement to have a greenway there.
But then it's our property, and it's our easement, right?
Yeah, and it's ours, too.
I think it's their easement.
No, no, it's, it's their, it's still their property, it's still their property.
We're just allowing you to use it.
Yeah, easements are just a green for use, but it's also covers maintenance, so, like, the power line easements, they have to maintain that, it's not the property owner.
Right.
Okay, so then, I would get, I would get up with Derek, figure out what Tullamore's agreement is, and then get up with Chaplain, and then make sure that it's just kinda all encompassing, 'cause I'm, I mean, I'm fine with that, it's our greenways.
Yeah, we need to maintain it, it's.
Tull, Tullamore's agreement that we, it's their land, but we take care of it, and we don't hold them, we hold them harmless, or whatever.
We, we don't hurt them.
Liability agreement or whatever, they're liable for anything.
I understand their concern, it's on their own at the end of the day and stuff, but.
I agree with that, that's reasonable.
Liability?
Yeah, we have, we basically have a, a deed of easement that has language in Tullamore's trail that holds them harmless for any damages, and Amber Meadows wants.
The same thing.
The same thing, and we don't have that with them.
So, the good news I hear from this is that people are using it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, you get up with Derek and Chaplain, and then.
Okay.
You bring it back to us, and we'll.
So, that's a, that's a yes.
Yeah.
All right, um, so, the second thing, hey, Derek?
Yep. Hey, Derek.
Derek, I need you for this one, okay, so, um, so, Amber Meadows also wants to, um, not completely block access, but block it in a way that prevents bikes and full-size golf carts or anything to come through the little stub that they have to connect the greenway to the middle area of their neighborhood. Um, they may also want to just remove that stub, uh, from our easement altogether, um, but what they definitely want to do is on their property, like, on their part of the sidewalk, that's not in their easement, put, like, bollards, so that they can control access.
I have no idea where you're talking about, what, I mean, I see the line, but I don't know what it looks like.
Okay, uh, on the next page, I have the whole, uh, the whole.
You're talking about.
Yeah, but I still don't know, like, what are they talk, like, I don't know, like, what you're talking about there.
There is a, there's a, that's, that's a stub that connects into their neighborhood, basically, there's a sidewalk on their, their sidewalk.
Is that where, yeah, is that where you go down the incline?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, 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 sidewalk?
Yeah.
I think that, that's what they're calling that stub, it's, but.
And then that's what hooks up to, so, what do they wanna do?
They wanna, they want us to remove that section, but at minimum, they wanna be allowed to restrict access through that entrance.
So, if you can walk through there.
But don't they wanna?
You can probably get a bike through this, I don't know how you restrict bikes.
They just need to put up a gate that's, with a sign that says, you know.
Yeah, that's not my, I mean, that's not our job to do that.
Okay, so, so, my hearing, keep the easement, but allow them to restrict access?
If they wanna restrict access, they can do that themselves.
Yeah, 'cause if there's a.
Easement, such.
But I don't know why they would wanna do that if there were people wanted to walk on there.
They're saying that they would rather walk up to Tom Short and come onto the greenway that way, if it means that the, the rowdy people driving motorized vehicles don't have an avenue to drive into their neighborhood.
There shouldn't be people in motorized vehicles on our trails anyway, that's not. That's not allowed.
Yeah, I think that's what their, their.
Well, this is, this is, this is at their property, they can do whatever they wanna do at their property. If we want to restrict the motorized vehicle crap that's going on, then we'll put something up on Tom Short.
Don't we have a sign there already?
Yeah, but the sign's not gonna do diddly shit.
Well, we need law enforcement to go over there and catch a couple of them, or citations, that'll deter it.
I mean, the way you, I know in our neighborhood down in Seabrook, what they, to prevent the golf carts.
I'm gonna start charging you Seabrook and, and, uh, our door.
Golf cart, that's okay, I like candy, um, they put in a post that can be removed to get access for a vehicle if they have to go do maintenance.
Isn't that what we did at Tullamore? We put, like, a thing in so golf carts and four, four-wheelers couldn't go into Tullamore's?
Yeah, but you, you gotta have access back there.
Yeah, they have a bollard that fits inside of a sleeve that's in the ground with a pin that locks, so that authorized people can get on there for maintenance, but other people can't.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we wanna present, that, I mean, I, I'd start with.
Hold on, we have two conversations going on, and I've been listening to meetings online, and when this happens, it's really annoying, so, one person has a conversation.
But I was saying that we have, less is more, we start with a sign, if that mitigates it, then we're not spending money we don't need to, but if we're still continuing to hear a problem, then we move to the next mitigation step, which is putting a sleeve with a lock that only allows access for maintenance vehicles, and those that are authorized get back there, that's where I would start. But if, if, 'cause we don't know if they're gonna have, if we put a simple sign up there that says no motorized vehicles, and it's being violated, then we, we go to the next step.
Okay, I'm in agreement with that, as long as it can be a cute sign.
You can do whatever.
You can have a cute sign, if you want bunnies on it, that's fine.
I don't want bunnies on it, I just want the Villas Marvin on it.
Villas Marvin mode.
Not on Amber Meadows. But, yeah, the other thing is, make law enforcement aware that they're over there.
Yeah.
Carrying up the trail, and then let them catch them, I mean, that.
But.
So, here's the thing, they're saying, with Amber Meadows, we have a, an issue at the entrance, right? There's a big wide open area for the county sewer easement, so.
Where are, off of Tom Short?
Yeah, off of Tom Short, it's about fifty feet to the left of their trail entrance. The trail entrance has a post in the middle of it, right?
Oh, so, they're using the sewer easement.
So, going around there. Yeah, so, they're using the sewer easement access, so, we've reached out to the county and asked them, you know, what can we do, can we put up an additional gate? I had the trail builder go out there and do some extra work, taking some of the rocks and boulders, and trying to, you know, strategically position those to block, 'cause, I don't know if you knew, during the construction process, we had some dumping going, got back to landscape trailer up there, dumped all this debris from doing an irrigation project in Amber Meadows, um, and, you know, and then hit their truck, hit one of their pieces of equipment, and, you know, took off, whatever, so, I was like, dude, put some, take some of these rocks, you know, let's move them as much as we can.
And that's unique.
Until we can work out, yeah, until we can work out something with the county, they've gotta be able to cross the trail and get down to the sewer easement down there by the creek.
Can we put up something just past the easement?[1777.01]
Thing is, so you have
In the middle of the trail?
So they have to have some way of accessing it. So they have to The trail lies like this and the, and their path to get to the gate lies like this.
So just go just past that and put up a thing in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea. Like in the trail, but past where the easement
Just pass where they're crossing it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just do that.
Yeah.
Stick a thing in the thing and do it right in the middle, just past their easement.
Two things in the thing?
Yeah.
Two things in the thing.
You guys understood that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Just do that. There you go. And in terms of their Jasper Lane thing, if they want to block it off, that's fine by us, but they're gonna have to pay for it. We're not gonna do that. And I'm not getting rid of the little thingy thingy.
The stub, just keep it. Okay. So what I'm, okay, so that was a lot of stuff. So what I'm gathering is we install signs that restrict motorized vehicles. We make law enforcement aware that motorized vehicles are entering our trail and tell them, um, you know, to enforce that.
Part of the policing process, let me go through it.
We add a bollard on the trail past where the sewer easement intersects.
Do we have one at the beginning of ours?
We do.
I would take that out and just move it because there's no point in having that one there.
We'll go start using that though.
Well, yeah, but
But then they'll only get like
Five feet, whatever, until you get to the other one. And there's no point in having that one there.
And if you've got signs that say it's prohibited and then you get in there and you still can't go anywhere, people are gonna stop.
Yeah.
People are gonna turn around.
Is everybody okay with that?
And we have an ordinance that enforces that for law enforcement to go back and if they are violating that.
Yeah, I guess we have to have some, some type of
We gotta have some meat behind it if they, you know, I mean, if there's no ordinance for, you know, allowing the
Yeah, we have to ask with Chaplain.
Can we make a policy for it?
We could put it in the legal agreement that we're doing in bullet point number one, potentially.
Yeah.
So we don't have to have an ordinance.
I just, I just want some meat behind it.
We should have a, those wide ordinance that there's no
You guys figure that out.
No motorcycles or things like that allow on any of our trails.
We allow golf carts, but we still see today underage kids driving golf carts.
We don't allow them on our trails though. We allow them on the streets.
I, I understand.
I'm asking.
Well, and you know, that presents another thing altogether is like as we build this trail system and people are traversing to the downtown district from down, way down the road. You know, but would we rather have a golf cart on, on those trails or on the road? Much rather have on, on a trail.
Yeah.
So it, it, but, but it needs to be limited to golf carts, not side-by-sides and four-wheelers and motorcycles and stuff that are dangerous.
And you'll get the segways before you know it, all that.
Yeah, but I mean, you've gotta have
I say no motorized. Get out and walk. Get some exercise.
Well, let's cross that bridge when we get to it. We have like trails that actually go somewhere.
It is a walking trail.
But we've got to come up with some ordinance in village-wide for vehicular access so that they can enforce it. Otherwise, they can't enforce it.
Right.
So you guys got that?
Yeah.
So direction is to have, to grant an ordinance?
So yeah.
Or figure out what needs to be done.
In addition to the other things that I just said, but and then also go back to Amber Meadows and tell them they can block, not fully block, I guess, but whatever they want to do, they can do it on their property, but we're not removing the stub.
I mean, there's a great, like you go down that incline, there's a great spot there that they can just put up a gate with like a code for their residents. They want to go in and out.
Yeah, yeah. That's easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
No, 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 we got two more, we got two more things.
Stabilize signs.
Yeah, we got, we got two more integrations for maintenance on Tom Short sidewalks.
Yeah, this is a big one. Um, so we've been going back and forth for over a year. Where nobody knows who is responsible for the sidewalks on Tom Short Road between Marvin Creek and Ray Road. DOT doesn't claim responsibility. We don't claim responsibility.
Who built it?
Toll Brothers built the, the whole road when they built Marvin Creek, but they don't have anything to do with it anymore. And Marvin Creek doesn't, like their HOA is not responsible for it solely. So Amber Meadows, you know, the people are getting fed up. There are cracks in the sidewalk. The trees, roots are lifting up the sidewalk. They're older folks, so you know, they need smoother sidewalks to walk. And we need to have some sort of
How long is the road? The state still?
It is a DOT road, but DOT does not take responsibility for any sidewalks. So what's, what needs to happen at some point, and this is gonna be a tough conversation, but someone needs to own the sidewalks, even if it is the neighborhood.
It's, it's not in the maintenance agreements.
It's not. Not Tom Short sidewalks.
It needs to be whoever, whoever's property it's on. The HOA's property at the sidewalk needs to maintain the sidewalk.
It would be in the right of way. It would be in DOT's right of way.
It would.
But it's still their property.
That's, that's, I don't think that's their property.
Cause they, they have to maintain
Who owns that?
I can look that up.
I think that Marvin does not own that, so I'm not sure that that's a discussion that needs to be had with Marvin.
Will we ever be taking over Tom Short Road?
Probably not the section that is the state road between Marvin Creek and Ray Road.
Okay.
Cause it's not a neighborhood road.
Yeah.
Unless you want to slow the speed limit down again.
It's already supposed to be twenty-five through there.
I would just, I just, I would just say we find out who
Sidewalk looks like it's well outside their property.
So they don't even own it. So DOT actually owns that property? They don't just have a right of way?
Yeah, and DOT owns it, then they're responsible for it. It's on their property. But they, they've maintained, they're, they're maintaining that we don't do any sidewalks, even if the sidewalk is on their property.
Yeah, but we can't do anything with it. We don't own it.
Cause it's not, it's, it's, it's not on our property.
Oh, I know.
It's super easy. Contact DOT and see who that did the encroachment agreement because the encroachment agreement should define who is to maintain it.
Right, but we already did that and they said they don't have an encroachment agreement on file. That's why we're stuck. Because that would have been the answer otherwise.
No, I mean, we're not stuck.
I mean, we as a community are stuck on who's supposed to, to fix the sidewalk.
Unfortunately, if Amber Meadows is concerned about that, then they're gonna have to be the ones that, that figure it out. It, this is, it's not Marvin's property. It's not Marvin's road. I mean
Yeah, I don't know if we could legally even do anything on there if it's not our property.
Just let them know that we, we, we can't help them with that. Let's just keep it simple.
So just inform Amber Meadows?
Okay.
Just stabilize the street sign.
Yeah, what is this, what is this?
That's, that's a pretty quick one and I hope that we should just, um, we should just authorize maintenance of it. The street signs are tilting. They're kind of not like, they're, I, I tried to take a picture that made it clear. These street signs are tilted at about like ten, fifteen degree angle. Um, and
So they've been hit maybe?
I don't know if they've been hit because both of them are tilted the same way.
Could they, is it the ground settling?
It's like this every time.
Yeah, something. They didn't do a good enough job on the concrete footer and it's
That's not gonna help.
That's the bottom line. So it needs to have a new footer board.
So are we responsible for their signs now?
That, yeah, they are roads, so.
Okay, so just fix them then.
Then who fixes, who fixes?
Well, we haven't turned firethorn over yet. So that's technically a DOT thing.
Well, we have actually, as of last month, we did.
Fired? We, we did the whole, the whole last round research thing, turn them over? Okay.
So then footers need to be reset on those areas. Cause we have one in our neighborhood that, that hits right up the road.
Well, I mean, if they, I mean, if they're all residents responsible for the street signs, we need to fix it. So just go fix it.
Why don't we just get Mike to do an assessment of all
And All signs, like
Just to see, yeah.
Neighborhood wide?
Well, that makes sense. That, that way we can
We can pull the money from Powell and fix it.
A large number of them, we're gonna get a discount on, on the work. So let's just get it all done.
Well, there's one most central and firethorn club drive.
We're getting ready to do new street signs anyways, so.
Yeah, you can have it done at the same time. Yeah, it's a good time.
Did Amber Meadows sign up for that?
They have not responded to my emails.
Get them on it? Okay.
There you go.
If they want their stuff fixed.
Marvin Creek said no, by the way. They're, they're the latest one.
To what?
They, they don't want in on the signs yet. They said it's inconsistent with their style.
Well, if they have not, uh,
Inconsistent with their style?
With the style of their signs and posts.
It would be kind of spotty in that area anyways.
Yeah, because we, yeah.
You don't want
But, if, if they want, uh, then they need to sign up for our signs.
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
Seriously, if they can't even respond, I mean, I'm sorry if you're listening and you live in Amber Meadows, but we've asked you questions. You're asking us for help for stuff. You can't respond to emails or phone calls or whatever. But yet you're asking for a whole bunch of stuff from us and we're responding in a timely fashion?
Okay.
Okay, that's all for that.
So do you need, do you need any
I wonder what those signs were.
I don't think that's
Yeah, you can see.
Thank you. That was a lot, covered a lot in a short amount of time.
Discussion and Marvin Gardens Ribbon comes in.
Okay.
I got a note from somebody in the public relations, but I haven't responded because I didn't know what.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about, yeah, we'll talk about it, um, right now. Um, so they, uh, they're trying to limit, um, public attendance, but they're happy to do something with us. Um, so
Oh, I mean, they don't want us there. That's fine. I mean, I'd like to do it.
No, they want, they want to do something with us. They just don't want like it to be a public event where people are coming. So they said, you know, the mayor, maybe a council member or two and then a couple of staff. And then maybe we can stream it on like WebEx or something if we want to do that.
Oh, they're, they're trying to
They're trying to limit the people.
Go along with the COVID thing.
Yeah, yeah, they're trying to limit the people.
That makes sense. And then that's how you present it and
Yeah, um, and they said they usually, uh, usually open, they don't have a date yet, but it's usually on Wednesdays. So this would be on a Tuesday afternoon. They're fine with having this ceremony the day before their opening as I discussed at the last meeting. Um, everyone will have to wear masks, even if it's outside and, uh,
Do they have to provide the scissors?
Um, they'll, I, I asked them, I told them we don't have anything. They said they'll provide everything. And they asked me, what's your normal procedure for these things? I said, this is our first time doing it.
Well, we actually did one, but it wasn't for Marvin. It was for the bund cakes. I did a grand opening when they opened the bund cakes next to, um, thing, but it wasn't, that wasn't in Marvin, but they wanted me to
Marvin adjacent.
Yeah, it was this thing to Marvin.
So, and we have no idea yet when?
Uh, no, well, not no idea. It's, it's coming soon, maybe in a month or so, but not, not an official date yet.
So no official dates been set?
No dates been set.
All right.
But yeah, this is more
If you leave one in my car.
Oh, and, um,
It happened to be like
No, I dress happens.
If you want to just deliver, there's nothing official, but Okay, so we're good there. So you're just gonna notify us it'll be, you think in November or October?
Um, I can't say yet. Um, they're almost done, but I can't, I mean, it'll be
And then just, keep in mind, we'd probably just notice a quorum being present and stuff like that. We're gonna be talking business. But please, you probably need to put that out there too.
You wanted to say something else or anything?
Yeah, I wanted to ask who, yeah, who would be interested in coming.
I'd go.
I'd go?
I'd go.
It's our first commercial
I think it's
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a big deal for council to be there and support the village and this nice development that's wanted.
Yeah, so just give them information when they have something on their address.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it's gonna be a little while.
Mr. Marvin, we're gonna show up and We can all do it together.
All right, come on, let's go.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a discussion on development finance initiative, DFI, contract for economic feasibility study of the
Uh, okay, great. So in your packet, you have the first draft of the contract. Um, there, there have been a couple of minor revisions since then, just to, to clarify some things. But, um, basically, uh, DFI is a group that's based out of UNC School of Government, um, where they basically specialize in this kind of thing, economic feasibility, uh, private-public partnerships and, uh, you know, how can municipalities, you know, go forward with these kinds of projects? Um, they do a lot more than what we're asking. Um, so that's what the last paragraph is about. But the, the big, I, I, I've just learned about them, but Christina has a lot of great things to say about them. But the big draw for us to choose them is that since UNC is a state school, the state allows us to not have to bid for projects that we award to state departments.
So because we talked about this earlier when we were talking about Villatall, obviously the contract needs to be adjusted.
Or we could have a new contract, I think. That's, that's what we're gonna do because they've come out of different budget.
Okay. So do you need us to approve this or is, or is this ready to go yet?
No, it's not ready to go. We still have some language to work out with the attorney as well, but just wanted to show you guys the scope of services to better understand exactly what it is we're doing.
Great.
Make sure you agree with it and that, you know, let you know the fee is fifteen thousand dollars, which is right out of what we budgeted.
Perfect.
Yeah. So the scope is basically that they would give us six weeks of their full attention, come to a few of the committee meetings and board meetings. And we work together to collect the inputs that they put into their models. And then they would run the models and determine whether based on our density and uses, et cetera, um, if the district is feasible and they will also advise on adjustments to those parameters if it's found to not be feasible.
Okay, so then you guys will work on entering into a separate agreement for the other stuff that we talked about earlier.
But by the end of this, we will come out knowing if the district is feasible or not economically.
Perfect. Fabulous.
And if it's not, what do we do?
Well, if it's not, they, they'll provide their recommendations. Yeah, like say, for example, if you need to increase the density to make it feasible, they'll advise on several different things we could do and provide a model for one of those recommendations as part of their scope.
Okay.
If they found that the parameters we gave them made the district infeasible.
Here it goes.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't want to open up and then only for failure.
Right, right. That's why we're doing this before we even officially
Well, just so the community knows, we're investing in a company that does this, that determines if this can work or not. And the last thing we want is empty shops if, or whatever, if we do. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Uh, discussion of annexation planning.
Okay, so the, uh, I think this is just gonna be a quick update, um, because we have just received the kind of finished products in the application. We have this letter that's kind of been spruced up a little bit uh, between, you know, the draft that I gave. And, uh, what I want to talk about is how do we then distribute the materials that, uh, that come out of, uh, this, uh, this project?
Well, first off, okay, I'm not sure why they did it with this, but just looking at this, it's hard to read.
It is hard to read.
So
So we will work with the, the transparency to make, this is, this is gonna be a, like a glossy kind of magazine flyer. And what we'll do is we'll work with the transparency to fade the picture out a little bit. It's the way that it printed.
Okay.
But you'll be able to read the text. The picture will be faded a lot more than what you see here and we'll make sure that you can, you know, it's easily readable.
So
I mean, I like how it's like that.
Yeah, I like, I like what you're saying there. A couple of things I would add. Uh, representation at the very end, last state and says, on top of that being together in the village of Marvin gives a strong lobbying power to address various issues at the state level. I would like to include state and local level because we're dealing with Union County as well. You need to let them know that's where you get your representation. If you have to go to the county, they're probably not gonna go to the state on things. They're more likely to go to the county. So we need to include that.
So it's a count and county?
State and local level. Cause local means us too.
Yeah.
You got lobbying power with us. I mean, that, that's, you know, hey, this, this is what we want. You come to our town halls and stuff. And the only thing I'd ask, I'd ask you to change too, because I didn't kind of like the wording at the very, very end. It says, if you'd like to start the fast and free process of annexation. Obviously it's not
Not really free.
It's not really free, so look, that's, that's kind of a misnomer there. Fast? It may not be fast because it, it, we gotta take it in walks.
The process of annexation.
To begin the process, uh, police contact, to begin this process, to become a part of Marvin, whatever we order.
I, I think I'll just remove fast and free.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So what's gonna happen next is we're gonna get these printed. If everybody likes this and the changes that have made, we're gonna get them printed. And then we just, we want to go ahead and send these out to the
The neighborhoods that are highlighted on this page.
Are you just gonna send them out or are you gonna like call and say they're coming to like the HOA president? Or how are you going to go about that? Or is that what you want us to tell you?
So what we're planning on doing is sending, sending them out, um, to the HOAs, like all the members of the HOAs, also contacting
So everybody in the neighborhood's gonna get one?
Also contacting the HOA president beforehand, letting them know that they're coming and that we're more than welcome to come to one of their meetings to talk about it and to see if they have any questions. We've got fly, um, we've got posters that are printed out that have nice, pretty pictures and basically highlights these things. so if we go to one of the meetings, it'll kind of be like the town hall day, where we've got some images set up. We're also gonna send home like a little lookbook with them.
Perfect.
Um, at the event, if they have one, but if no one, you know, wants to have an event, then, then it's just the letters, unless you have other permission.
So, the only thing that I'm concerned about, and it's just again because of our policy and how we take it, we can take them by the block and, and sections of blocks and stuff like that. I, I think we need to revisit that, because we're touting that we're gonna take over the roads, right? Well, then it becomes an HOA issue, we found a Weddington Chase that, uh, you know, if, out of the ten people that want to be, you know, it has to be consistent, but then it may ju- jump a few homes, and then start up again where, you know, uh, and, and you may have situations like we have at Weddington Chase when we go to repair their roads. And if you have that, then that goes back on them, and says, they need to pony up and stuff, so, I'm, just a consideration is, we, we really need to think about the policy of how we take in a, a Marvin, as a Marvin resident, if we're gonna take it in by the block, and then we can say, well, we do this block as a road, and then this is the end.
We're not saying, we're not saying anything in here about taking over your roads.
Well, but that's what we offer.
Well, and it's not in this flyer.
The roads will be completed truly separate, because then we have to adhere to our road acceptance policy, which adheres back to the spec manual, and we have to go out and pour it, so it's a completely separate issue.
And we're not, and we're not talking about taking over your roads in this flyer.
Well, I, I know, but that's one of the things, that's why you wanna be Marvin, is because you're gonna get faster response on your road.
Right, I understand that, but we're not advertising that, so if they still wanna come in, and then it has to be a block, or whatever it has to be, then we can go from there, but that's not what we're advertising.
So, it's all about adding services, and we're saying, okay, well, if you want that service, then you gotta get the rest of your community to jump on board.
Right, but we're not telling them that, so that's not what we're advertising. We're not, we're not using it as a, hey, you should come on into Marvin because you're a road, it's not in here anywhere.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but again, we always talked about, why are, do you wanna be a part of Marvin? Why do you wanna be a part of Marvin? What, what benefit? Because there's, there's no benefit.
There's zoning, and there's traffic mitigation.
And there's also, we offer roads, and that's our goal.
But we're not talking about the roads.
Well, okay, but unfortunately, without the roads, they're already getting all those services, they're already getting the traffic mitigation, they're already getting all of this stuff, so really, they don't have any benefit to annex and paying more taxes than the kind of taxes they're paying, unless they're getting something physical, like garbage pickup, or roads taken care of, or those physical things, so they're already getting it by default.
I'm getting, like, it's all this other than representation. You know, I'm in the community already, I go to Marvin schools, um, you know what, that officer, yes, we have, it's good to know that we have two officers there, because he's still gonna respond to a call that goes into the neighborhood that's unincorporated, we've already determined that through the thing.
Oh, yeah, there's, it's all over next door, that somebody from the Timneys, Timneys of Marvin is like, well, it took like two hours for somebody to respond, and I'm like, well, you don't have an officer, we get their call amazing.
We, the, the whole issue with, with neighbors, as we talked in the past, is what are we bringing to the table?
Okay, so what do you wanna do different?
Can I, can I say one thing wrong?
I did listen to you, but you can offer up a suggestion.
Yeah, it says, "We need to consider how we are gonna take over," um.
So, give me a suggestion.
Well, how are we gonna take over roads, that we're not, we're not, we're not gonna get, we can't take over, or maybe we take over lots of roads, meaning that, uh, yes, we can take you over, you need to talk to your neighbors up into this street. Um, and because then, then that's where you can end the road pavement, because you can't hop over from one house to another to do the road. And then for the next session, I, I don't know how it gets ordered and stuff, I'm just telling you, it's gonna be a nightmare, because once they become Marvin, think about this, once they become Marvin, if we're getting it over to all these other neighbors, they're gonna be asking, why aren't we getting our roads done?
Because your neighbor's not Marvin, get your neighbor to join Marvin, and then you can get your roads done.
So, are we doing this individual house by house, because I thought it was.
That's how you do my subdivision.
You can.
Well, no, 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 I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you can do it as long as it attaches and it's.
Right, so you can.
Contingent, and, and.
So, you can.
You, you can, but you, do, do you guys not see the, the problem that we are creating? Because if I'm gonna start paying a tax, I wanna know what Marvin is offering me, and if Marvin's offering roads to this community, this neighborhood, why aren't they doing it in my neighborhood? And we have to go back and explain, well, you didn't read the fine, fine print here, that, um, yeah, you're, you get this, this, and this, open the roads, yeah, that has to be, your whole community has to be.
So, per our, our road acceptance, we're talking about two different things. Per our road acceptance policy, a road has to be up to a certain standard before we accept it. So, what the selling point for these HOAs is gonna be, yeah, we will at some point love to take over your roads, but that's not gonna happen until either, one, DOT resurfaces it, or two, the HOA costs up the money to resurface it. Then we would take them over, and they would become a part of our regular maintenance, which is a higher quality.
But, 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 but again, you're, you're, you're missing the point, well, what we ran into at, at, at Weddington Chase. You had homes, because not everybody in that community is a Marvin resident, so you'll have situations when we go to pave that, say we get to all that, and we get the HOA to pony up the money to get to the level, now it's time for us to come in, well, guess what? This guy right here chose not to be a part of Marvin, so, but we're gonna continue that road end, so we go back to the old, okay, HOA, you have to file whatever they filed, and, and I think we got an agreement, ninety percent of them, but for the other percentages, that's up to the HOA to figure it out, because it becomes a problem down the road, is what I'm saying.
It's an assessment, it's an assessment.
I, I think this is not nearly as big of an issue as you, you might think, because we did take over the whole road, and what they did is the HOA would bill the property owner for the cost of the road, for their proportional, like, road frontage cost.
I'm just saying, eyes wide open, you, you need a reason to bring me in, if I'm, if I'm on the outside looking in, what do I get? That's what they've always said, what am I getting for my five hundred dollars a year? And what does Marvin get right now? I would expect the same at some point, but then if I know if I'm gonna have to jump over future hurdles and stuff, then we're really not.
So, do we, so, do we add a column of, of infrastructure? And just say, and, and just say, that is part, because again, you, you.
Maybe.
The biggest word in here is process. Beginning the process, so if someone says, we wanna bring, bring in the process, then what I would recommend is having council go to that HOA, and let, then have that discussion, and the discussion should be consistent. The consistency would be, is the process of when the roads issue came up, to say, we would, we would, we're going to do this in blocks. Now, let me explain blocks, because we can't do every other house. That's not, that's not how to do it, so it's a, put the burden back on the HOA to say, either yes, or no. We've lived with it this long, we're, we're reaching out to you to bring you in, and it has to be kind of a, you know, to, as a matter of fact, it's a kind of one-size-fits-all.
Right.
It has to be a neighborhood, it's not, be, because that is part of the process. The process is inviting council to come in and say, this is what the process looks like, and, and addressing the, the, what do I get for my six cent? Okay, well, all the things listed here, and someone's gonna say, what about roads? Well, that's a great question, glad you brought that up. Roads is a, is a, it's a tricky, tricky.
Separate animal.
Separate animal, and yes, at some point in time, we would, we're gonna want to bring all of those in. However, the issue strikes as this, and then we address.
The process of.
Or say, unless, you know, and, and from a road policy standpoint, somehow we explain, I just want everyone to be on the same page, road policy standpoint, unless the whole community, um, doesn't, you know, or something.
I, I, quite honestly, I know we've got our, I know we've got, but quite honestly, I, I don't, I don't see that there's a way of going into this, step one going into this, without the assumption that if you're Providence Downs, you can't have twenty percent of Providence Downs, nope, we're out.
Well, we already have that.
We're out.
Whereas eighty percent, this.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I agree with that.
So, that was a sense field too.
And you know what, because here's, here's the thing, Joe, to your point, and I, and I'm agreeing with you. But to your point is, we, you know, we're just gonna, we're gonna be bludgeoned to death over trying to figure, you know, find the pieces of the puzzle, no, you go to your HOA, you're either in or you're out. However you wanna vote for that, and if it's a fifty-one, if it's a seventy-five, however you guys whatsoever in your HOA policy, however that is, you determine, we're here to say we want to bring you in, and if it's roads, we'll, we'll address the roads with you.
Well, a couple of things on that point, so if you're talking about Providence Downs has a gate, well, that's a policy, boom. That, you, you're not gonna get road because you have gates. I think we all agreed on that, that if it's behind their gate, that's on them to do that, that we wouldn't take it over. However, there are neighborhoods that don't have gates, and again, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm just trying to look at it from the other side, if I'm looking at this, it's like, what am I really getting?
So, there's, so there's two on this list that we'd have to worry about, Rosecliff and the Timneys, the rest of them have gates. So, we'd have two neighborhoods, we'd have to talk to them about roads, the rest, no.
I think we keep it simple, we're, we're, we're looking at the annexation, I totally agree with you, Joe.
Okay.
But I think it has to be, you can, I, I don't know, at some point, you can put in there infrastructure, um, and just put some, you know, as part of, part of the process of integrating your neighborhood into Marvin, the Village of Marvin, you will have representation from an infrastructure standpoint, there's words around that.
And if they want roads taken care of, and they annex, and they wanna get rid of their gate, and have the roads in lieu of their gate, then so be it, but that's their decision to make.
Right, so, it, it's basically in lieu of, it's a great point, hey, not all are equal here. Because Providence Downs, they have a gate, we can't take those over, you guys can take the gate down, and we can take them over, or you can leave the gate up, and then they're on yours, so, we can't, it's not a one-size-fits-all for this standpoint, because, because we're, they are different.
Again, I'm looking at this through the lens of, if I'm on the outside looking in, what am I getting, and why am I, yeah, why am I getting?
Well, I, I would say.
Okay, can I, can I, can I summarize what potentially could happen? So, on the net, to your point, we don't have anything about road acceptance or anything like, like that on this, this flyer. The only thing that we're trying to do at this time is to get approval on this flyer, so that we can send it out and start the process. Now, if we're gonna get a discussion on roads, we can prepare that, but for purposes of today's action, let's look at this letter, and on the back, where it says, "Ongoing traffic mitigation," on the very last, um, sentence, we can insert this sentence, and I'm getting it ready to read, um, additionally, we could initiate the process with your HOA to begin maintenance of your roads if desired, something along those lines. That kind of lets them know that it would be a mutual.
It's on the table, but it's takes discussion.
If desired and applicable, because if you've got a gate, it's not, you're not applicable.
I, I, and, and on the flyer, I don't know that I wouldn't recommend, but a flip-flopping representation and lowest taxes in our neighborhood, in our, as, of our neighbors. It's representation, to me, as we go out and we talk to an, an HOA, we're saying, you're, you're getting representation, because today, if something goes on in your HOA, good luck. Good luck addressing it with the county or the state.
Or us.
Your voice, your voice is tiny.
Or us.
Yeah, and I, I, I would go so far to say, is I just spoke to an individual who moved from our neighborhood to Providence Downs South, and he was convinced he was Waxaw, I said, you are not Waxaw, you don't wanna be Waxaw for the thirty-eight cent reason, you know, versus a six cent reason, and he had, he had, he was out, so I think there's an educational thing going on here too, that you're, you're part of a, of, you know, you're in the nowhere land that the state, the people that live in the chimneys.
And, 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 and let's hope that those towns, that they don't fear us.
Those, many of those. If they ever go back to forced annexation, they're gonna be screaming to become part of Marvin, or Weddington, someone with a low tax versus Waxaw taking them over, and some point it comes to the border, um, properties.
Okay, to sum it up, on this flyer, we're gonna flip representation to number two, we're gonna put lowest taxes to number four. On the back, we're gonna insert a sentence under ongoing traffic mitigation that talks about initiating, initiating the process of beginning to take over roads with your HOA if desired and applicable. We're also gonna take out the words fast and free, and, um, then we're gonna add local level to the representation. Is everybody in agreement with that?
And adjust the transparency and, uh.
Well, yeah, I am, and make sure, of course, this is small, I mean, the Village Center District, we would change to the heritage.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's not small, that's big, the catch.
Yes, catch, Bob.
I, I will tell you, I, I'm, I'm listening to everybody here, and it's interesting, because I had a motorcycle class that was attended by residents of Providence Downs. And, uh, during the process of the, the initial discussion of where they're from and why they're taken in class, uh, the gentleman identified himself as Waxaw. Well, as we got talking, and as it's a two-year class, as we got through, uh, he started saying about where he lives specifically. And I said, oh, I said, well, okay, small world, I said, I'm a, a councilman for the Village of Marvin. Oh, yeah, I know Mayor Joe, how's he doing these days, that kind of thing. And I actually went, the conversation, this was interesting, I went into the conversation, I said, yeah, it'd be good to get you guys on board and, and have representation, you know, and, and be part of everything. Well, yeah, it's kind of funny how things like this happen, and he, and he kinda was like, I'm not an interested in this conversation kind of conversation. And, um, and then I'm kicking off with the proposal that was given by, you know, um, Fenter. We've got a neighborhood community that's not gonna have representation, and we've got another residence that's affected by a certain subdivision that's going in, uh, down, uh, Bonsgrove Church Road, and it's sort of like, I, I don't know if that's a selling point of saying, you know, you really need, this stuff is happening, and if you're sticking with, with just one entity, Waxaw, will they have your best interest in heart? Will they even care? Um, just a thought, I, I don't know if this should be integrated in there, we don't want any sacrificial lands that, you know, we say, see, see what's happening over here, don't let this happen to you kind of thing, but, um, you know, this is important. I, I agree with what Joe was saying, that, I don't know, I'm gonna ask just quickly, the DOT, if we, if P, and let's say, for example, I'm just saying, uh, a community, uh, that's not gated, um, becomes a part of us, is there some sort of red flag that goes to the DOT in that very moment? I, I'm just asking, or, or they, until we tell the DOT, this is part of us, or is it automatic? I don't know, legally, where are we at with that? Just asking.
It stays with them, I think, until we take it over.
Yeah, they, it, they're completely unrelated, they, they, they could cancel us if we are incorporated, if that is incorporated to us or not.
Okay.
I, I, and to your point, and that's a very good point, Bob, they, I would like, and if we were to rewrite anything as in that Village Heritage District, uh, Pleasant and Pleasant Resort Recreation, be, uh, an opportunity to be a voice in the ongoing planned project, or something like that, because that's what that gives them. If they are right next door, and we are, and that's what I tell, that's what I told this guy, says, you better hope this town gets it right every election, because if you get developer-friendly that wanna go high-density, you know what, we don't really have to listen to you, because you're not, you're not, we're not representing you, we're representing us. So, that was always my point, is, so somewhere in there, if it could be saying, in, in the Marvin Heritage District and Recreation, have, it, it gives, it gives you the opportunity to be a part of the decision-making process. They can get on boards, they can run for office for all that matter, all those things tie into that, which is a great point, which is what I've always said from the very beginning, let's hope we get it right, let's, you know, um, based on what's out there. So, if that is able to be changed a little bit.
Okay, so I'm going to go over all the changes again, and then I'm gonna go over the next steps, and make sure everybody's in agreement with both items of the flyer and the next steps. Again, the changes on the flyer would be to put representation number two, add the words local level to the last sentence, put lowest taxes to number four, change heritage district, and the first sentence of that paragraph would then read, opportunity to be a part of the planned project, to deliver thoughtful economic. Is everybody good with those?
Hmm.
Okay. The next page, the next page, under ongoing traffic mitigation, add a sentence that talks about additionally being able to initiate the process with your HOA to begin maintenance of roads if desired and applicable, somewhere in that paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Take out the words fast and free.
Yep.
That's it.
Add local.
That was on the first page.
Yeah.
That was on the local, uh, state and local level.
Is everybody in agreement with the flyer changes?
Yep.
Sure.
So, the next steps in that case would be for us to look at this map, and we're gonna send this letter out, that we're gonna revise, to all of the representative communities here that are in color, and the, um, non-subdivision parcels. We would do that in the months of October through November, we would also try to schedule an HOA meeting with them, and invite a council member to go with us from October to December. We would get a statement prepared, staff would get a statement prepared about roads, so that a council member could address that consistently with all the HOAs at that meeting, and then we would hopefully, um, have a HOA petition done and executed by the first of the year, and we would let the HOA lead that whole process.
Just one question, and I don't mean to be dragging this out, but is it, it's my understanding that the houses in Sedgefield that are along Waxaw Marvin Road are actually annexed into Marvin already?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Because it wasn't representative on this map, that's why I was just questioning.
What? Let me, can I do that?
Is everybody in agreement with the next steps? Or?
Yep.
Yeah, I see. I just accidentally left the whole neighborhood polygon on the map, but yes, part of Sedgefield.
So, so, so just FYI, just on the side note, you've got all of these to go, is it an extra $600,000 in our bucket?
622, I counted.
Think about that. I mean, they want this road done and stuff like that, $600,000 more, to be able to not, I mean, we'd be able to do that road easily and pay for it in two years. So.
So yes, we're all good on all those steps.
Yep.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Sure.
Motion to change the verbiage that you, per your recommendation that council has agreed on, on the, what do we call this?
Annexation.
Annexation letter.
Somebody wants.
So moved. Further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Not that was painful.
But it's, you've got to do it right. We're going to do this, we're going to do this one. I, you know, I don't want to miss steps on here, I mean, we're supposed to be on the same page. Next.
All have to be on the same page.
Next up, we have update on roundabout lighting.
This is the stupidest thing that I've ever read in my entire life. This is dumb.
Duly noted.
How do you really do it?
I mean, they're, they want a survey for a light on a pole that's already there.
Yes.
Sorry, Christina.
No, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, you can read the email for yourself. I mean, it, basically, this has been a year-long process, and now they're coming back and saying that they want us to call Sharon a survey for what exactly we're doing. I basically said why. We said that this is something new. He was going to get back to us on the quote, and that hasn't happened yet. So that's where we're at.
Go get some lights and throw them up on there and see who says anything. Seriously, this is stupid. This is a waste of money.
So, the only thing I would have to ask is, do we, do we ask every time we see something publicly wrong, as a publicly, public safety issue, do we have a sur, do we do a survey? Because that's the, that's the topic that we're talking about here. Not having a light around there is a public safety issue. We're adding a light, we're requesting to add a light, and all they have to do is put it in. I don't, for the life of me, I can't see doing a survey on a public safety issue.
I mean, it's, it's not like it's resident asking for it, it's the village.
Well, and that's the thing, Christina, it says here that the streetlights and subdivisions are not DOD, NTDOT streets when the lights are installed, this is part of the dedication process. We're not talking about a subdivision light, why is he even bringing up subdivision roads?
Because I, because I was basically, if you read my question, I said, why is, why we have to do this? Do other subdivisions have to, like subdivisions have to do this? It just, typically, when you go and request a light, you just get to go put it up, and you don't have to go through all these steps, you know, it's trying to.
Like, they came back requiring a drawing that included pole locations, you're putting a light on it. Like, the pole's there, we're not moving the pole. Somebody, call somebody, I mean, this is stupid. This is, I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous. People, once those roundabouts were put in, people have been requesting the streetlights there because it is so dark. This is, I mean, this is absolutely asinine.
How many people have called and asked for it? There's your survey.
Let me see if Mike can get.
No, they want, they want like a physical survey done, like a drawing done.
Oh, a.
Not like a, like, they want like a.
Are you saying that they're.
Here's the pole, here's the pole.
May not be properly installed at the right areas, so they would.
Well, that's their own fault, they just, they just moved them when they felt the roundabout.
DOT is the one that did.
I think, I think somehow along the way, because.
The wire is done and then they.
Sublands, I think.
They don't, you know.
There's got to be, when I first read this, I thought that there was a miscommunication.
Hang on, hang on.
I thought there was a miscommunication.
Yeah, because it's dumb.
We were talking about X, and they were applying it to Y. Then, so that's just my take on it. I think there's, because that's, that's absurd.
This individual, Mike, Matt Balkum, is the one that actually came up with the plan to use the existing poles. So I get what you're saying, like, maybe they think we're going to put up poles, but he's the one that came up with the plan, so I don't.
Here's what needs to happen, you, Rohit, Mike, Matt, and whoever from DOT need to get on the phone at the same time and figure it out. This is absolutely ridiculous. I'll, I will be on that phone call.
Okay.
This is stupid. I mean, the residents need it, it's dangerous, it is dangerous.
Yeah, I like going back there.
I'm not yelling at you guys, because I know you're trying.
An accident happens.
So you are firing up an NTDOT.
I'm telling you, you guys need to, all of you need to get on the same phone call. I'll get on there if you guys want me, which you probably don't, but I'm just saying, I want.
Should be like, I break your legs, give me my lights.
Something Guido over there, you don't get this done.
Nice southern girl over there.
Okay. We're good there?
Yeah.
All right, next up, we're discussing Village Center detailed timeline.
Okay, so we have, last, maybe not last, a couple of meetings ago, I presented like a four-line timeline with these categories that I have, but just more generally, and then Christina says, you know, let's break it down, you know, we have contracts, we have, you know, lengths, we got to make sure that everything that needs to happen before something else happens, you know, is arranged properly. So I made this Gantt chart, which shows pretty much every step that we need to make sure it's feasible and develop all the details, and then all the things that need to be established, adopted, et cetera, for us to have a foundation for property owners to be submitting site plans by, you know, the start of the next fiscal year. This is the timeline, Christina says it's ambitious but feasible, and I just wanted to present it to council to show you guys that, you know, this is what we're envisioning. So far, we're on schedule, but it is still the beginning, but, yeah, so far, we're on schedule, we have the committee, they're going to be talking about all the different factors of the district in each of the meetings that I put out there. If you guys want a bigger version of this, I can also, like, print it out, 11 by 17, it's a lot on one piece of paper.
So some of the stuff, a lot of the stuff is going to be happening simultaneously.
Yes, yes.
And the HCD.
MHD.
No, the Heritage Center District.
Marvin Heritage District.
Marvin, is that what we're calling it?
Yeah.
Marvin Heritage District?
Yeah.
So the MCDS.
MHD.
MH.
What's MHD?
Marvin Heritage District.
But the MSD is Municipal Service District.
Yeah, no, the MHD.
SP Committee.
Yes, SPC. Yeah.
Don't be a mouth.
We're going to need a short, short phrase.
So, anyway, so they're going to, they are going to be starting to look at all of this stuff and working on it during that. Now, since we have a new committee, that's kind of like a board, but not really a board, but kind of like a board, do you want a council liaison there?
I was actually going to ask that, in my planner's report, but since we're talking about it, that would be, yes.
What do they meet?
They meet on the first Thursday of the month, 7 o'clock for the first few meetings, and then 6:30 starting next year.
In the evening, I hope.
No, send me in the morning, early for coffee.
6:30, 7? Seriously?
I'm happy that time.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you what.
I'm not an Andy.
I am throwing my hand, hat in the pot for that liaison.
The, what's safe was if you'd gone to the restroom like what's happened to me, I'd be up front about it.
You've got to strategically take your bathroom breaks in a meeting.
Just one thing I'd point out, Rohit, as I look at this timeline schedule, there's no Village Council discussion for establishing zoning district, you don't show that on here.
Is it not? Is it in?
It's not in dark blue anywhere.
It's going to hap, so.
We're already going to have establish the zoning district when we approve the land use plan, correct?
No, no.
No, not at all. That's a.
Where it says establish municipal service district, where it says the dark blue final, those are all canceled.
Oh, it's like way, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I don't see any, because once we figure out that, yes, it's going to work, then we implement the thing, but you don't have.
But it's really not that far down, it's June of next year, it's on there.
Yes, it's in there. It's the second to last category, category adopt zoning district and rezone, planning board and council review zoning district.
So you have it as adopt, so establish and adopt, okay, two separate things, okay.
And I'll make one note real fast, because there was a comment made in the planning board meeting about wanting to have some level of planning board involvement with the strategic, I don't, whatever y'all call that acronym. But there is also a, what's the name of that board? Design Review Board, which is the planning board.
Which is planning board, right?
So they will also have another step in there as.
So they'll be fine.
We were also talking about writing rules and procedure for this committee, just because it's, this is a big topic. We want to make sure that they stay within their boundaries, and we're just highly organized.
And again, do you see any changes in zoning if we really want, or we really care about what materials are and can we get it to that point? If the state doesn't allow it.
I think, I think you misunderstood that. The state doesn't allow us to regulate architecture for single-family houses, so.
Commercial we can.
Commercial we can, yeah. Commercial we can, and multi.
Right. And, but the thing is, is, and this is what we discussed with Mr. Venture, is that we want to be able to stay within a financially achievable.
Right.
You know, materialist, because we don't want to get to the point where we're too fancy and it's prohibitive in cost, because we are talking about smaller, square-footage type of buildings.
I think, I think we want to go with kind of the feel of what's already here, and we don't have a lot of brick. We've got more like siding, clap.
Clapboard siding.
That kind of stuff, so I don't see.
Maybe some stone, some foundation.
Right, but I don't see us being like, it's got to be a full brick all the way around with, you know.
I tell you, brick's the last thing I want.
Yeah.
Me too.
And, you know, with modern materials now, the, the hardy siding that looks like clapboard, it's very, very durable, and it is, is cost-effective.
It's breathable, yeah.
And it looks nice. I mean, it just really does look nice.
We can regulate that. I think, yeah, I think you misunderstood what the state was not allowing us to do. And that will all be determined in the course of this committee. If, I could, I guess, the planning board wanted to see if you would give consensus for the planning board to have monthly oversight of what the committee discusses, so that at each planning board meeting, they could go back and review what the committee did at last, at their last meeting.
They're going to have final review anyways, as the design.
Yeah, I don't.
And then half of the planning boards on this committee.
Yeah, I mean, that's a bunch of redundancy.
Redundancy, okay.
That I don't, I don't see necessary, because ultimately, it's not their decision.
In terms of decision-making, I mean, it would be really hard for the planning board to come back and make recommendations, but if they can let the committee do its job, then let them do their job based on what the recommendation of the committee is. And if that's different, then that would be a more streamlined decision.
They just seem to be a little territory over, but.
Planning board always has.
So the committee, the committee's enacted for a purpose, to come up with recommendations. Those recommendations then go to the planning board for consideration. So at that point in time, the planning board can change whatever that recommendation is based on what their recommendation is going to be. Right? And then the design review board has to review and make that recommendation, which is the same board that then goes to council.
I mean, I'd rather keep them out of it.
Will you sign this? That's that proclamation.
I mean, and again, we've got like two or three people that are on, three, okay, that are on the planning board. So I'd kind of rather have all the planning boards kind of look at it with fresh eyes as the design review board.
They will, they will have done that anyways at the end.
They don't need to do a monthly, no, the answer's no.
Thank you.
And I can explain it better, once we come back to the planning board.
Sure.
By the way, if I can add a comment, this is metamorphosizing exactly like what's supposed to happen. Per the Main Street Committee nationally, what happens is that there will be, you've got the strategic committee, the strategic committee could become, and Rohit, you can take notes on this, because I know you've been exposed to this, the strategic committee will eventually become what would be the Heritage District Board. And that, what will emerge from that will be, and four other additional committees, and now we've talked about this before, one of which would be the design committee. The design committee will be involved, as I've been involved, through my experience, that this is where the fun begins, this is actually a fun committee, where you actually go to these Main Street conferences and you start linking up with vendors, because I know, I foresee what will be, will it be agreeing on lampposts, or the design committee will start talking about lampposts? You'll start having the design committee design banners that go onto the lampposts. You'll have then the business committee that will come out of it, the business committee will be the one to emerge and talk about the businesses, the type of businesses. You'll have a promotion committee, that's the fun one as well, that starts talking about street festivals and putting together farmers' markets. This is going to be a natural flow. So as you're keeping track here and keeping score, this is the way it works, okay? Just Mike, you said.
So.
Good information, Bob, thank you.
Councilman Vanderburg's question was, well, don't we have a design review board? But I think what you're saying is, the Main Street program will have a Village Center specific design board.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's going to be, it's going to be, you're going to have four committees, and as I mentioned, the other one is called the organization committee. The organization committee is the one that kind of will happen, that you'll start to get.
Organize the stuff?
Representation of the property owners. They're the ones that, the organization committee helps to deal with nuts and bolts. For example, one of the things was the design of a logo. Next meeting that I'll attend, I'll wear the logo that I wore for the town that I came from, that was designed by that committee. So you're going to start to have more committees starting to flow just of the Heritage District.
But that's like next.
Like, we are so far away from that right now.
So we are, did I hear correctly, they want to have a third board, though, that's going to just be.
Here comes our.
Focused on the Heritage District only?
Yeah, and that's, that's a part of, yeah, that's a part of the Main Street program that.
So they, they walked through that process.
Okay, that's cool. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
I'm just going to say that what will happen is, if it's done right, as I've seen it, the council starts to take a step back. We're in it now, but the capital starts to take, take a step back, and the strategic committee, which will become the board, becomes more the front and center. In fact, the town meetings will be starting to be conducted by the strategic committee. And the strategic committee will start saying, of all these folks, the representative citizens, will say, now, we'll be there, but they're kind of saying, all right, it's almost like what's happening with the planning board, hey, this is what we're thinking, let me show you some pictures, let me show you some phone boards. And this is where the public starts to realize this is coming together. Okay, now you guys, I mean, it's up to the board, but it's you guys, like, why did you put that style lamppost? Why are you thinking of that kind of entryway into this particular business? And it is going to be, the public will, will start to see the input, and, and that's the way it normally happens. The council then is just sort of, okay, what's the recommendation? You know, that kind of thing.
Okay, cool. You good, Rohit?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I want the, I guess, come back to the timeline. Wanted to run this by you and see if there's anything that stood out, you know, as, you know, either not right, or anything you found missing, or.
I, I think after you have like two meetings with your, whatever it's called, then you may want to revise it and come back to us, because we've never done this, I've never done this, so I don't know what's missing, because I've never done it, so. I'd say, get a couple meetings into it, and then revise it if you need to.
If I will be able to get to and see some steps.
And I should be able to look at it.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on that? Thank you, Rowhead. All right.
Before we move on, our lunch is here.
Yeah, so I said we take a quick recess, grab our lunch, and then we can do minutes. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm.
Take a quick recess, and in five minutes, we'll be back. Bob, where do you want your lunch to deliver?
You going to bring it?
I'll scoop my sandwich.
Do you need a motion for recess?
Motion to recess?
So move.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to move back into open session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, I have a meeting. Oh, you are? You're on the Bill of Council's minutes from six, nine, twenty, regular meeting, six twenty-five, twenty, work session. Eight twenty-seven, twenty, work session, eight twenty-eight, twenty, special meeting, nine eight, twenty, regular meeting, nine eleven, twenty, special meeting, and nine fifteen, twenty, special meeting.
What, wait, hold on. Oh, yeah, give me one minute.
Great job, by the way, getting all talked to. I was like, wow, we are absolutely current.
Mm-hmm.
No complaints there.
Been running on all cylinders here.
Nice job.
Rowhead said, oh, we're going to the special meeting, I just looked at him, saying, you're killing me here.
Yeah, buzzkill.
I don't think I had any changes on any of those.
All right, what's the first name?
Six, six, June ninth, and then June twenty-fifth. Those are the earliest ones. I'm good with that, Kim. I have a pretty good system for this stuff.
The other change I have on the first one, it's just on my comments, it's just clarification.
Sure.
Add the word, as you say, in the second or third sentence in my comments. We're, we're at, this is the first one.
Yeah, but hang on, Rowhead's still trying to pull them up.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'll get you guys all there while he's getting it. Bill's council meeting, June ninth, we're looking at. The only thing I had, looked through it all, I think seems good.
What was, what was the change?
Right after Marvin Ridge Middle School for Helping with the Eighth Grade Drive-Thru Graduation.
It's his comments.
It would be eighth grade neighborhood drive-thru graduation. It's like, you know. Neighborhoods are neighborhood, just add that, just for clarification. Made it sound like everyone was getting their degrees in a pull-up session, which, that happened when they had to clean their lockers out, by the way. They had to schedule time, they drove up in a car, teacher would come out and have all their stuff for them, and stuff was just crazy.
Right there, add neighborhood, drive-thru. Okay.
Anybody else have any?
Nope.
I'm good.
Motion to approve the.
You just do one big motion.
Okay.
That fine?
See, next up, we are on to June twenty-fifth work session.
You do want to make it?
Yeah.
I do not show anything. For that one, for me, anybody else? We'll have a chance to look at them. All right. Nobody has any changes on that?
No.
Okay. Next up is, we're looking at August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Work session.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Page six of six.
Okay. Page sixty-six.
My council comments, he congratulated two, is spelled wrong, two, the number two newly appointed board members.
Oh, yeah, T W O. Okay, pretty good.
I have to sum up all your comments, Jay.
What's that?
I have to find a way to sum up all your comments.
I got it, but I got to spell it.
I got you.
Are you like talking into it? It's not wordsmithing you?
I don't know if it matters.
That's all I have.
LiAR is an acronym.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, tape, make it, make it, just change it to all caps then. Thanks, mentioned up above, and the others, Milton's up above, too.
Anybody else on anything?
I'm good.
Good catch.
So next up, we have August twenty-eighth special call meeting. I do not show anything for that. Anybody else?
Nope.
I'm good.
September eighth meeting, two thousand twenty, for your meeting.
Thanks again for the no verbatim minutes.
Yeah.
Nice and easy.
I don't want to read verbatim minutes.
Well, you don't have to do them anyway.
I don't want to write them verbatim. That's on the councilmen to do that.
That's the fun thing, and it's not fun. That's when you really get ticked up, when multiple conversations are on. You can't understand.
What do you say?
Any changes on those?
What the? Oh, I think I'm on still in the right one. Page fourteen or fifteen?
Just fourteen or fifteen.
I don't like the term feeling unwell. I just wasn't feeling well. How about that? Feeling unwell.
Okay, I guess, have to add my, my comments there, yeah.
I'm just practicing social distancing. Feeling well. Okay, that was all good, moving on. September eleventh, special call meeting. I don't show anything for that. Any council members have anything?
Nope.
Pretty quick. Next one's September fourteenth, special call meeting. Mr. Fincher. I'm not showing anything with that. Pipe in if you have anything, Bob.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Last one I show, September fifteenth, special call meeting, which was our town council. That was recorded as well, correct?
Yeah, it's recorded. Fun thing is, the recording I used was actually from this, and I was sitting right by a speaker, so I picked everything up.
I'm good. I, I did hear some feedback from. Yeah, we weren't clear, but after, I think you had me having.
Yeah, we made some adjustments.
Yeah, this is something we need to do, but, other than that, so, someone wants to make a motion and list all of these. Go back to our.
Yeah, I'll do it. Ready? I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve the minutes as amended from six, nine, twenty, six twenty-five, twenty, eight twenty-seven, twenty, eight twenty-eight, twenty, nine eight, twenty, nine eleven, twenty, nine fifteen, twenty.
Further discussion?
Hang on, hang on, I know, I felt like I missed one.
You just want to repeat, start the motion over?
And nine fourteen, twenty, because it was not on the.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, I forgot, it's not on the title there. Good point.
That's what I was reading, sorry.
Not bad.
Don't worry about that.
Okay, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, open topics. Does anyone have any?
Nope, you have a new number twenty-eight.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't here.
So, letter in response to misinformation put out by citizen.
Okay, so we have letter to respond.
To misinformation put out by citizen.
Okay. I started to read it, and then.
What is this now?
So this is something that we are, we are doing on our own, because we can't technically take staff time. So Kim brought to my attention an email that went out, and a lot of the misinformation, again, it's, it goes on and on. Where he's, the gentleman is, again, providing a lot of, in, in my view, certainly misinformation, and Kim's as well. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read it or not, if anyone's getting it.
Do you have a copy of this?
Not yet.
No, this is just a draft.
I'll give it to him when we're ready. Get him when we're ready.
Yeah.
It just needs to go in the minutes.
Right. So, and, and looking at it, I, first off, I'm just going to go ahead and say, I think we're giving this individual too much credit. I know he has probably a big reach, but I think with what we're doing, and putting the information out, I think we focus more on not necessarily what specifically was said. Because this, this, quite frankly, is kind of long, too, and it just gets into the, to the weeds of, you know, what are we trying to get across? But maybe downing it in very specific about, you know, highlighting everything from what we feel, and encouraging people to go to the website that explains this, again, and if we have it, it's almost like we keep explaining it. But in my view, and no offense, Kim, because I know you, you spent some time on this, but in my view, it's like, it's almost like, I think we're giving him too much credit. He, he was saying his thing was blowing up, you know, maybe that's ten emails he got, or something like that, or half a dozen people that got. What's that?
Is this the same guy that does the questionnaire election?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
But he sent something out, I got it, I started reading, and I just, you get lost, because it's so long, and it, and it's, I don't know if anybody reads.
Wrong. Like, I'm in, I'm in the middle of it, and I, and I know what is actually accurate, and I cannot even put, follow the dots of where he's trying to lead people. And I know what's going on.
Right.
So my thought is, and I understand what you're saying, is you're giving too much credence to what he's saying, but at the same time, we have to, we have to combat it. If there, if there is a void of information out there, and I understand that we're putting out the, you know, the yes, no stuff, but it doesn't show our point of view on why we're trying to do it.
So, again, as I read this, I'm.
Again, it's long.
It is, it is.
We can take some stuff out, we can adjust it. This was a, this was a first pass at it.
See, my thing is, because I, I don't want to get him, it's like, well, what was this email, and all of a sudden, people getting interested to find out what he actually really said, and digging into that. Because I don't, again, want to give anyone any reason to look at it that's not automatically getting, because I'm always questioning the people who tend to get it, and they're like, yeah, I started reading it, and I just, I gave up on it, because he was so, he was so off point, and so many points, as well as a, a thing. But I, I think as you take the issues, instead of quote, in, in my view, this is the opinion of one, instead of taking his exact quotes, is, you know, let's just address the issues that he misquoted, rather than take his exact quotes out, and say, look, clarification on this is the fact that no one, at no time was that done. Whatever you want to say, where we're not putting in the misleading information from the email, we're just restating the key facts that we want to make sure the public is clear about.
Okay, so, so, okay, so that's Joe. So, Bob, I know you had a chance to read it, and Jamie had a chance to read it. Andy, I know you sort of had a chance to start with it, yeah. And again, this is.
I read it, you know, and, and last night, and I, I thought your response was hitting everything that, you know, he was addressing, and you succinctly, you know, addressed it. You know, again, here we are, as Joe is referring to, is the optics. I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know if a, if, I, I don't know the, the legal ramifications that if a citizen sends out information and the government responds. I don't know what that means. In other words, is, are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to retort and respond, you know, directly to a citizen's thing? Or Joe was saying, maybe make it more generic and round the corner, round the edges a little bit, so it doesn't sound like we're specifically kicking on a citizen. I don't know. I, I don't know. You may have prior experience with that.
This email was directed directly at council, though, right?
Yeah.
So should we not have an opportunity to respond to something that was directed specifically to us?
Yes. Now, legally, we're not asking staff to do it, except to send it out, and we're going to check with chapel to make sure that that's okay. But, I mean, legally, yeah, we can respond to anything. Council can put out anything, as long as we vote on it, and there's a majority.
All right, I'll keep bumping you. I think they called us out, and I think you did a great job of responding to it. I think this time, we go into the length of responding to it specifically, this time. I would only add in there, just because I am the cynical one, that says, based on, based on your information that you provided, once again, this is propaganda and non-factual information. Based on that information, I would, I would, council questions the validity of the, the, and I don't know that I would put that in the very front. Based on what you put in here, the council, if it's unanimous, maybe it's not, questions the validity of the referendum that was put up, because as we can tell from what you put out, it's based on false information and misleading information. Hence the reason we have all transparenc, all venues to be transparent for what we do. I would, if it were me sending it out to the masses, I would also include, I find it funny, I find it ironic, that Mr. Geible, Geible, Gleable, whatever his name is, has never once attended a coffee with council, is never, didn't attend the town hall meeting, that we know of, he could have personally come in there and asked us these questions. I believe the only way you shut this all up is you hold them accountable. And, and once you do it once, we've already dampened this, because we're transparent, because we are putting out communications, because we do have coffee with council. So I agree with you one hundred percent, and I agree with Joe one hundred percent, from the standpoint that, that, you know, do we need to get in the weeds every time? I don't, I don't think so. This time, I agree. Next time, I think it should be a blanket statement that says, if you, Mr. Gleable, if you have concerns that you want to address with the community, please attend a coffee with council, and everyone else is welcome and invited to attend a coffee with council, have a, invite us to an H O A. We're going to have another town hall meeting. You feel free to come to any of the town hall meetings, and then let it be a blanket statement.
I, I was just going to say, I, I think it's, to Jamie's point, it's, we individually reach out to individuals that are, are, I guess, inclined to put out information that they don't even get the verbiage right at some point. Then we do nothing more than just reach out to them, so they'd be happy to meet. If these dates and times don't work with you, is there a time that works with you? Because they're happy to sit down with council.
And, and I, and I put that in there. I said, we invite our village council meeting's coffee with council, or any time you would like to sit down and talk with us.
But I'm, I'm just saying, because there could be, number one, as we get closer to the election time, and there, there may be more information that comes out.
There, there is.
I'm sure there is. It's in the works and stuff, but, again, I think we did a nice job on, you know, it's, it doesn't take a side necessarily, it just explains the issue. And I think we, we need to encourage people to make sure their sources are right. And when an individual is out there saying, and he can't even get the verbiage right on what kind of form of government.
Mayor, manager.
Mayor, manager, or whatever it is that doesn't even exist, it should throw a flag up to you, which, again, you know, the information's out there in a very, I don't know if you were platonic way, where it's not one side or the other, it's, it's just, it's stating a fact. We're doing this, the whole reason for the, I think we can just reiterate, the whole reason for the change of form of government is because we are growing at, you know, unlike what's been set out there, we are going at the fastest pace, or up until now, we have been at the fastest pace, and we need to take this action. When we have all these different things going on, you can't expect the mayor and council to be running that. You have to have an administrator, and, and with that comes staff, and with that comes direction, and, and what makes sense for good business practices. And, and that's what this does, and that's what this is trying to accomplish. Reaffirm that it's, it's not forever, and other councils come in and change it, they have every right to come in and change it. The mayor vote, again, it's, it was, in my belief, was there for unique reasons, where, you know, we could keep government going on, and, and you couldn't, you know, say if there were sides and stuff, you couldn't sabotage the sides while one individual was out and stuff. So you'll, and, and you get, and they could do that easily when you have small councils, which is what we have. which is what we have, because we're a small town. So, it addresses that, and addresses that, but at the end of the day, whether they're on record, whether the mayor votes or not, I personally don't care, but I know that I would like to know how my mayor feels about situations. And yes, I can express myself, but I still am not on record for the vote.
Right. And just, just a quick question on this, what's everybody's feedback about this? Because what my, what my feedback has been right along is that I don't find too many people challenging the, the council manager change. I see people questioning more the mayor or vote.
I do, too.
And because these two things are riding together, they're getting kind of...
Well, luckily, they're two separate on the actual referendum.
Right. But I mean, because they're being voted on at the same time, I think people are kind of lumping them together as one thing, and I think that most people are fine with the, with the one change, it's the mayor or vote that people are questioning, and...
And, and I agree, but yet, in his email, it's just all wrong. Like, we're not trying to hide behind anything, we're still the ones that are making the decision, the managers are not, they're only making the personnel decisions, it's just...
Which is so right to do.
Yes.
I mean, we don't spend time with staff day to day. It's unfair for us to make these types of decisions.
They're allowing you to come in and stuff, like, take up their time.
I wasn't paying attention, just get volunteered for something.
One couple instances, he put, "public outrage." I, I just find it funny, public outrage.
What public outrage?
What? We, we're here all the time, we, oh, we opened it up? I've had one person come in and talk about that.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree with you, but I just believe that we've done such an amazing job, being on offense rather than defense, and the one time that we have to be, I'm not one to be put on defense, but I, but I don't look at this as defense, I look at it as accountability. And if we could just say, okay, you know what, we're, we are going to respond, however, we've given everyone plenty of opportunity to voice their opinion, whether coffee with council, town hall, whatever, but we are going to address these because it's important, and, because this council has been called out.
And whatever you all believe in individually and stuff, we all have our own avenues to, I mean, we did a phenomenal job of doing a writing campaign, as we saw and stuff, and I'd say, I'd encourage all council members to go back to those individuals and get that message out to them, and, and say, hey, look, this is, this is the only local issue you're going to be voting on, here's where the council stands, or maybe individuals can make specific points about that, which doesn't take up any staff time or thing, but, but it's, it's something that, you know, again, the, the information is so off the charts that someone came to me who's sort of in the know, and he's like, well, doesn't that, if they change this form of government, then there no longer is a mayor? I'm like, no, no, no.
Oh, no, no.
It's, it's over the top, I mean, where people just reading stuff, so, I just don't want to get, I don't want to get so involved in this where we're repeating specific stuff that they're saying, so maybe we can focus on some of these comments that they said, and just, again, clarification from misinformation that's out there is this, rather than repeating it, if that makes any sense.
Now, listen, if you guys want to do something, here, here is a draft, we can change it, we cannot do something, it's up to you guys, but I, I feel very strongly, obviously, because I took the time to do this, but I felt very strongly that we needed to respond to this, because, again, in the absence of information, people are going to look at the only information that has been presented to them.
Well, and I think it's important that we respond to this particular individual, given the history of his involvement as a voice in this community.
Well, he's making everything very public.
Right, well, and, but, he's the guy that always asks all the questions of council members leading up to elections, so, his name is out there, his name is familiar to these people, and if he goes out there and puts misinformation out there, people have a tendency to recognize the name as a source that they might want to pay attention to, and if it's misleading, and it's wrong, they're going to take misleading, wrong information and run with it, and I think it's important that we respond to this particular one and get ahead of it.
I guess it's, it's like any news organization, when they, oh, time over time again, mislead you, mislead you, I stop watching that news.
Yeah, because it's just like, what do you, what do you believe? But to that point, that's what we're doing.
Right.
We're, we're pointing out that there, he's, the next time you get an email from Rob Glebel, it is false propaganda, misinformation, because he's going to, it's going to be cited on one side. Listen, if he had an issue, he had a problem, why didn't he come to town council? Why didn't he come to the, to the town, town hall meeting and hold us accountable signal? You know why? You wrote by just as well as I do, because he knew he was going to get called on, and there was going to, and there was, and there was going to be a response. He's hoping now there won't be a response. He's hoping that, maybe that we're not strong enough or backboneed enough to respond. Hell, no. I want a, I want a response, and I want to call him out on it, so the next time we do get something back from Rob Glebel, who we already know is fake news propagandist that, that puts it out there, that, you know what?
He doesn't have any...
Please feel free, at any time, to come to coffee with council, village hall meeting, and ask us these questions that have been presented as misinformation. I don't know how much more transparent we could possibly be, without exception, doing coffee with council every day from 9:00 to 10:00.
Right, for you, yeah.
That's a big dada.
That's a big dada.
I, I just, all I'm saying is, I'm not sure, looking at this just as it's the format and stuff, so, is, can it be cleaned up? I would say...
Well, I took, so here's what I did, I took out a couple of the, from email for misinformation being circulated, I took out two of those, and beside each of our responses, just so it was a little clearer, I just wrote "our" response, just so it was a little more clear. But I didn't take out his quotes or anything like that, because I feel like that information needs to be there so that they know what we're responding to.
So, again, if, whether we want to work it out right now, exactly what would be said, or do you want to, or you expect, is that what you're expecting?
I mean, kind of, because we're not going to get that together, and we need to have a response, and, and all, all of this is going to be contingent upon attorney's review that we, that staff can send it out for us.
But, if, in fairness...
Well, actually, we, hold on.
Go ahead.
He probably, we're not telling people how to vote, so we should be able to.
I would assume.
Because you sent out Joe's.
Information, right?
Because you sent out Joe's.
Well, it's information that's based on approval of the council, so you're getting back to the point, are we, can't we get to something that, that, whatever we write, and, and maybe if it was worked on and passed out individually, and you give it the stamp, and then come to the next meeting, we just say, because keep in mind, that's going to still be before...
It's been four weeks, though, Joe, like, I don't want wait two weeks.
But that's still before the election, and it's, it gives us thoughtful, because this thing just came out, and there was a response, I'm just concerned that, looking at this as it is, and again, willing to sit here and spend the time that kind of cleaned it up, and we could do that, but, doing it...
Yeah, you have early voting going on right now.
Um, you have vote about mail going on.
Or in two weeks.
Yeah. Early voting information's already been sent out to people over our channels, by the way.
I, I will just say that it's, like, I'm not sure what I'm looking at and what you're asking for, because there's a lot of stuff in there, and again, every time you put his quote in there, it just gives them almost like credit what they're saying, I would just have a hit on the points, saying, take, highlight misinformation regarding the referendum, boom, okay, in the community, instead of, our emails to debunk these critical pieces, instead of just saying that, it's just, just to clarify why we're doing what we're doing, and then go back to the main points, there's, there was, you know, if you want to take the first one, for instance, there's a difference in time, the public stepped up to the highly unusual action gathering signatures, referendum on the issue. That's from the email being circulated. Our responses may or not be associated with the fact that a lot of effort was generated to oppose such change from a private group that zero effort was given to council, was given from council in support of the changes. She could have been swayed misinformation, so it's, it's just, again, does that really need to be in there? Because people are going to believe what they're going to believe, what we're saying is, okay, so what?
But if we're giving them the truth, then they're only going to believe the lie.
Right, right, but if, all they did is, they're, they're responding to, which they have every right to demand a petition and stuff.
Sure.
You know...
But, but what, but my point is, they're like, there was a unusual action of gathering signatures, or highly unusual, well, that's because they put together a, a valiant effort to do so. We didn't. I wasn't out there saying, oh, don't sign the petition, don't do that.
We didn't, because we can't, really, because...
I can.
Well, I know we can individually, but you can't...
Right, but I could have gone out door to door to all my neighbors and all the people in the house.
That's why I said, put in there, based on, based on the information that you provided, that we've already recognized as propaganda and misleading, misleading information, I personally, council aligned, questions the validity of when you say in here, more people signed the petition to get, to get a vote than voted for mayor. Well, I question the validity of it, because you went out, if I told you that the, the mayor wants Marvin to be annexed into Waxall, that's the truth. If I put that out there, and they go, and you don't want that to happen, do you? Oh, no, I don't, well, sign right here. You've never said that. I guarantee you, I would bet, I would bet my life, they knocked on every door. If you think for a second that they told the truth about any of this...
They wouldn't have gotten that signature.
You're, you're crazy.
Right, no, I, I agree with you.
Oh, I mean, I've talked to people, they're like, yeah, that's not what I was told.
No, that's not what I was told.
Yeah, and that's the thing.
And, and again, as I said, and as, as I said in the, in the town hall meeting, I'm just blown away. We've had less than 20 people show up for a coffee with council, we've had, but we had 800 signatures. If I were that pissed off about this stuff, guess what I would do? I'd be at every coffee with council, I would have been at the town hall meeting, I would have come in here at village hall meeting, every time going, all right, what, give me the truth.
Yeah, and it's, it's unawarey people that, that generally don't pay attention to what's going on in the village, that they went and told them a story, and they said, oh, well, I don't really want that, so, yeah, I'll sign the petition, and I have no clue what goes on day to day in the village, none whatsoever.
I could get a petition, I could get a petition together that says that Mayor Polino wants, because he's on this board, this, this, that we're going to consolidate, we're going to become one town. Do you want that? I wouldn't want that if I were, lived in the village of Marvin, I was going to be something else. Just sign right here.
Yeah.
They, they sign it, they're like, yeah, man, I can't believe that's happening. Well, that's just what happened, because they were fed false, false information. All the people that signed that were, signed it under false, false pretense.
I, I think we all agree with that, here on council, because we're in the know, and that's, you know, but...
All right, so what do you guys want to do? Bob, what do you want to do?
I, you know, the way, you know, I don't, I don't like the way that we're getting attacked when we are doing so good for the village department. I feel like we've done a great job with communication, which is what we wanted to get at in the beginning, informing everybody. So, now here's a specific instance, I think you did a good job in addressing each of the issues, okay? The only question I had was, I wouldn't mind something going out that would address, there has been some misinformation recently that we want to address, okay, and it could be in the same fashion that it was. I just, I just only asked the question, are we allowed to do that? I'm just saying, is, or is there a legal aspect, can we do that? That's all.
I, I think the answer...
I have a problem with spots.
Well, I think the answer is, yes, we can, but we'll double check with chaplain before we send anything out. Because we're, because we're not trying to sway people from voting one way or the other, what we're trying to do is give them accurate information, based on the lies.
And that's the, that's the tightrope, you know, you walk, you know, you want to make sure, are we pushing our point by saying, hey, let's straighten this out? Or do you let it fly and let the information go out there? I mean, obviously, you know, right up front, the form of government is totally not even existed. It's like, you, you, it wasn't even, it wasn't even correct going out, you know?
Yep.
So, anyway, but I, I'm not saying we put our head to the sand, I'm saying that maybe, that's why I said, maybe we can round the edges, come out with, you know, kind of in another way through a backdoor, sort of inform the public. But again, I don't know about the tightrope we're walking, are we trying to convince people about yes, or are we just giving them information? We just have to watch that, that's all.
I, I'm just giving them information about what's false, and I even said the end, I'm glad this guy put something out, but it needs to be factual.
But I think, but I think we can kill two birds with one stone. One is, fact, getting it factualized, if that's such a word, but the second part is identifying who is putting out false information. The next time I get, the next time I get an email from Rob Glebel, I know, based on this previous email, it's false information. Because, do you think I go to CNN? I nev, why would I go to CNN to get factual information about President Trump? That, that would be called insanity. It just would.
Yeah, so, are you guys good putting this out with some changes, or do you want, I mean, what do you guys want to do? I'm kind of like...
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with putting this out, but from the changes standpoint, I'm just like the, here's what, I don't, I don't want to get caught up into the, and again, without saying names and stuff, but the people will do it, it becomes so long and so involved, and it's like, what are we even asking for? Let's just simplify this and focus on the point. So, I was highlighting here, as you guys were talking, you know, going to saying, I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight misinformation regarding the referendum.
I love how Joe's, like, it needs to be shorter, like, of all people.
Well, when I'm reading it, stuff, you can get lost, and it's like, then you lose me when I'm reading it, I can get lost really quick when you're reading, but, but, would you, would you rather have it long?
No.
That's what you're saying?
No. No, I'm just saying, this is my first, this is my first white matter.
I understand, and I appreciate the effort. What are you doing there?
How big is the mask?
It's catching it, how much fence?
It's ice. It was almost empty, anyway. Huh? Pick the ice up. What do you just let it, it don't...
As you consider, as you consider these, these referendums, instead of thank you for your time, as you consider these referendums, we also invite you to our village council meetings. So, I took the first thing you said, hello, friends and neighbors, your village council would like to take a few minutes of your time to highlight misinformation regarding the referendum that has been posted.
Okay, has any of that changed?
You guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
That has been posted.
Okay, is that good?
Yeah.
Has that changed?
That's changed.
Okay, well, hold on, let me...
You want to do it?
I'll do it while I'm...
We got to go into who has been posted by and all that stuff, it's out there, and I, I don't need anybody looking up his name to find out what he's sending out, because all of a sudden they'll get on his email. So, hello, friends and neighbors, your village council would like to take a few minutes of your time to highlight misinformation that hit, about our refer, the upcoming referendum that has been posted or emailed.
Hold on, highlight misinformation that is...
It's your first sentence.
Regarding the referendum. That's all I got.
That has been posted or emailed.
That has been what?
Posted or emailed, like, I don't know if you want to take, post it out, because I've only seen it emailed.
Yeah, has been emailed.
Emailed.
To the community, here.
Okay.
Sorry?
You know, our email we use now, we're going to have to go into all that stuff, we will go through email point to point, we have to talk about that. Thank you for your consideration, the last sentence, thank you for your consideration when voting, and we always invite you to, encourage you, or invite you to village council meetings, coffee with council, you know, or any, anything, so, let them know that we're available. Thank you for your time for considering this, this, you know, your thoughtful decision on this referendum, and, again, we always invite you to our village council meetings, coffee with council... And, again, we always invite you to our village council meetings, coffee with council, or, you know.
No, I don't know where you are, and I don't know what you're wanting to say.
I'm still in the first paragraph.
I know, I'm, I'm on the second sentence, our email to you, okay, so is that, are we taking that out?
I'm telling you to get rid of all that.
Okay.
Our email to you is to debunk these.
Get rid of that, okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's, you know.
Okay, we will always, okay, we will, no, you don't want that? Okay?
Right, well, I, yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, they go to where you start, thank you. Thank you for your, for your thoughtful consideration on this referendum.
Thank you for your, hold on, hold on. Like, you, like, you like, start talking, and then like, you like, half-sentence shit, and I have no idea what you're saying or where you're.
Just a fast thinker, Joe.
Thank you for your consideration, what?
For your thoughtful consideration on our upcoming re- referendum.
Okay.
Again, we invite you to our regular council meetings, coffee with council, however you wanna word that, to, um, to get, to get the real facts, um, you know, to get the real facts. Because this is coming from a third source, you know. If they're believing what they read, it's obviously not from us. So how do you wanna say that? And I'm asking.
But have we invited you to our village council meetings, coffee with council, or anytime you'd like to sit down and talk with us regarding factual activity in the village?
Factual information in the village. It's funny how I. On the second page.
Yeah.
Let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of a topic, um, next issue, mayor manager structure from the full email.
Yep.
And the first thing says, first, there is, that shouldn't be.
Yeah, there is no such thing.
There is no such thing as a mayor manager.
Thank you. All right, Joe, what else do you wanna take out from that?
Okay, so, going on to the first bullet point. Regarding the referendum and the mayor vote. Simple statement. A lot of effort was generated to oppose such a change from a private group, yet no effort.
So do you want me to change the response and leave everything out?
Yeah, like, why, why put in all that stuff? I don't wanna go into.
Okay, okay, okay.
We're quoting him, semi-quoting him, or whatever. Why do that? I mean, we're, we're pointing out that, again, we're clarifying, what's the issue? He's saying mayor votes for whatever he's saying, whatever he's saying.
Okay, so after I say factual information in the village, what do you want the next thing to say?
Factual information for the village. Um, okay, that's on the first paragraph, okay.
So you want me to leave in first?
In regards to, in regards to the mayor vote, here's what I'd suggest. Oh, a great deal of effort was generated to oppose this change from a private group.
Okay, so tell me what you want me to remove.
Everything, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm just telling you what to write next. And, and everything from, from the email, information being circulated per the email, that there's a difference this time, the public stepped up to highly unusual action of gathering, all that stuff. Go right, then you go into our response. This may or may not be associated with the fact that, so it's, again, make it very easy to read and clear and concise.
I think that's gonna confuse the shit out of people, because they're gonna, not gonna know what I'm talking about.
No, they're not. So they're, because you're saying, you're, you're just going back to the fact. I don't, I don't think so. I think it's, you're, you're getting in such into the weeds in this, and it's taking forever to get into this, and all I'm saying is, focus on the issue. The issue is the referendum and the mayor vote. Instead of what he's saying out there, let's get back to the facts. Just to be clear, a lot of information was opposed, so you may have got misinformation because we didn't take any effort as a council, or as a village, to put any information out there. Maybe that's our bad and our miscommunication, but you could have likely been misled because a private group where no effort was out there, and I certainly didn't do anything out there, you know, to do that, so that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But if you wanna put his stuff in there, this is my suggestion.
Yeah, but, yeah, but then, but then, we, we don't get this out until next.
Because I, because this is, this is literally, I'm gonna have to stay here and reformat the whole thing, and I don't feel like sitting here doing it right now.
If you send it to me in a word, then I'll, I can.
But then we have to vote on it.
But you're still doing it before the, before the voting, before the main, November 3rd comes.
I mean, I just, I, I think that, I think that if I started.
Probably something else that comes by then.
We invite you to our village council meetings, coffee with council, or anytime you'd like to sit down and talk with us regarding factual information. The mayor's vote, our response to this is that it may, or private group, like, they don't know what I'm talking about. They don't know what the false piece of information was in the email to know.
It, it doesn't matter, we're, we're stating as a fact of, you could say, to Jamie's point earlier, you say just about anything. It doesn't matter what they say. The fact is, regarding the mayor's vote, it's this, there was no effort to, you know.
But, Joe, I think what Kim, I think.
I understand.
What I think what Kim is saying is, goes back to the first sentence, we'd like to take a few minutes of your time to, to highlight misinformation regarding the referendum. We're pointing out the misinformation and addressing it directly. I, I, I see what you're saying, because I.
Listen, I get it. I, I don't wanna get into the weeds either, but I feel like you gotta give them some sort of context.
But even, like, going into Councilman Dispenza, where Drew supported action duty, think about this, read this out loud and say, Councilman Dispenza, where Drew supported the action duty and ten, out across the public. He proposed that if council wanted to change the charter for the mayor to vote, that should be done through a public vote, not a quick vote by a few council members. Councilman Vandenberg and the mayor agreed on the record. Then you say, from the email being served, per the adopted minutes, Mayor Proton and Councilman, both the ver-, and the affirmative, so the information emailed is false. So, didn't they say we voted on the record to?
We did, but we didn't agree. We voted yes to pass it.
But you're not saying that, in my view.
We both voted in the affirmative, so the information is false. He said, it says he proposed that if the council wanted to change the charter for the ma-, vote for the mayor, that it should be done in a public vote, not by a quick vote of a few council members. Mayor Vandenberg, Councilman Vandenberg and the mayor agreed, but we didn't agree. Nick, you, you didn't even vote on that!
Right, right, I, I, I agree. I, I know that, because I don't vote, but it's, it's, again, it's, it's misinformation. At no point, maybe you simplified it, there's information out there, there was a vote on it. At no point was it a, a vote on that, is what you, again, clarify on that.
But I'm using his words, and then combining them with the me-, with the minutes.
Okay.
Nick and I voted in the affirmative, okay, hold on, in the affirmative, to pass the ordinance to change the charter. Because that's what happened. We voted in the affirmative to change the ordinance. Not, you and I didn't agree to not do.
I know, but in the end, didn't Nick say he didn't want that?
Not, in this meeting, he didn't.
Okay, but, but that's, but, but, but he's surmising a bunch of different meetings and stuff where Nick came back and said.
That doesn't matter, that's not what happened in this meeting.
Okay, okay. And, and again, if you're really involved in.
Okay, so, this is, this is.
Listen, I, here, here's my thing, we can go around, around, around about this, in a million different ways, and we can pick it apart. We have to, we just have to decide whether, because I believe we can't wait, because then if someone reads it, they're like, well, this happened a month ago. Why are they just getting into it now? And they don't understand, they don't understand the government, be so. I would just say, someone.
I, I'm more than happy to, Joe and I can sit down and work on this, or he can send me notes, and him and I can go back and forth, and then I'm more than happy to, I guess it's out now, so we gotta put it on public record, I can email it to you guys, and you guys can send me your changes, and then I can combine all the changes, and send it back out to you, and you can let Christina know.
Well, it sort of says you can make a motion to, based on, all of us separately reviewing the letter, and the changes made that, you know, the way of the final draft, and, and we, we, we can direct, we can make a motion to direct after the final draft, has been approved individually by each council member, that it is sent out and stuff.
Because I don't think anyone, and I, Bob, I'm, I'm asking, I don't think anyone's opposed to a response going out.
No. So, in fairness, Bob voted no on, originally, on the mayor thing, so he may not believe that, but the majority of council believes that's why we're sending out, to be clear.
Right, I get that, but, but what we're, the topic now is that a response needs to go out.
Yes, yes. So, so instead of trying to beat around and trying to, and I get what you're trying to get to, I just say, you get so far into the weeds that you get lost in this.
Oh, listen, I, listen, I, I, I don't believe more than 20 people read this.
I don't either, and that's why, when you draw attention to it and send it out and all our thing, it's just like.
However, the second, second bird is the one I wanna kill. Is the fact that, when I, the next time I get one from this person, I go, well, I ain't gonna believe that, because they've already debunked it. And I, and I just, I'm, I'm tired of giving.
Are we gonna?
Why, the next time, next time I get it, next time I get an email from this guy right here, I'm going to the next coffee with council, and I'm gonna ask them, I'm gonna take this in there, and I'm gonna say, is that true?
Right, but, from a, and I don't know what the answer is, because you, we've already said his name in public and stuff, but, or we mentioned his, his name in this email?
No, I don't think you have to. I, I, I think, I think she did a good job. I think, I think she had, she did a good job saying, um, misinformation regarding the referendum. Whoever, whoever got it.
All right, you know, again, we, we're, we gotta be careful what we're saying and what we're putting out there and stuff, especially when we're dealing with Joe public. You know, because they're just public, and they have a right to say, and it's like, you know, and we have a right to defend our, our case and stuff, but it's like, you know, I think there's a, there's a fine line we gotta be careful of, that we're not. Um, but he's, he's saying what he's saying, we're just saying it's not true. So, um, does someone wanna make that motion then? Bob was asking something.
No, I have a question for Christina. Um, is she there? Hi, is I can, okay. Christina, just curious, uh, you know, you have a background, the experience of working with different city governments and, uh, you know, listening to, you know, how to deal with this. In other, your experience with another municipality, um, I assume larger municipalities, there's all sorts of stuff like letters to the editor, you know, all sorts of people complaining about how government works in that particular municipality. Do, do, curious, if, if we can reply back, I mean, how, how have you, from your experience, you ever be, like, how, do you, do you respond to every letter to the editor? Do you, um, respond to emails, people sharing stuff on social media? How, how do others do it? Just curious.
I've never been involved with a municipality that had a referendum where, that was education in one way or another, so I don't have direct experience with referendums, and that's a little bit different in terms of the use of.
Well, I'm talking not in general, like, in other words, a, a city council makes some sort of decision, or the mayor makes a sort of decision. What in the, what have you been experienced that when they go out to using the First Amendment, what, we were plugging, I mean, have you seen government respond to try to correct things, or what, what's in your?
I, I've seen individual council members respond, I've, I've never seen, like, a collaborative response, but I don't, I mean, that's just not something that I've had experience with.
I don't know why you're shaking your head. You sent out a letter that you wanted us all to sign off on, so why are you shaking your head, like, oh, yeah, we, we couldn't be doing this?
No, 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 I'm shaking my head because I, I agree to something, if, if the mayor has a voice, we can all speak freely on our own and stuff. We gotta be very careful calling out people's.
I didn't call out anybody's name.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm saying is, um, I, I agree with you, and I think we, we, what we are facing is a small village, here's the problem, the, the 800-pound elephant. We have, unfortunately, someone who's already admitted to obtaining a list of the village's list, okay? They admitted to that on public. Now, where that list and whose hands it's in, we don't know. So there's a huge disadvantage of, we don't know how far reaching this is, and how, how far this goes. All we can do is guess, is this message getting out of there? I go to talk to so many different people and stuff, so, and we're responding to this, and it doesn't even give them credence just by mentioning it and stuff, well, I'm gonna go back and take a look at that. And I, I agree with you 100%, that everything is, most of the stuff that's in there is absolutely, it's, it's, it's one-sided, and unfortunately, government as a group, as a whole, doesn't have the nimbleness that an individual would have, because we do things by committee. And that's why I'm saying, we just gotta be careful what we're sending out, and, you know, that we're not gonna get, um, any, um, there's not gonna be any legal ramifications. I think if you have the whole council on board with something that was presented, reviewed, and stuff, I personally, in, in fact, I wish I would have had, I got this yesterday, I wish I'd have had a little more time to look at it.
I just did it.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it's like.
Half of you guys didn't even get his email or read it.
I didn't get his email. Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll step aside and let you guys decide what you wanna put or how you wanna go.
Well, just as a deep breath, I would say, let's figure out a motion to handle this, because I do think a response is, is adequate.
I have put, I have put my information that I would like to see go out, Joe, you can handle it and rewrite it and get it out to everybody else. I'm done, I washed my hands of it, I'm finished.
Okay.
I've given you the information that I think needs to go out, and it should go out, and if you guys wanna change it, feel free to change it, and I'll sign up on it. How about that?
Um, send me it in a word document, so I can pull out and make it easier for me, or I'm not rewriting it, because I think, I, I, I just personally think that.
No, you rewrite it.
No, you can send me the word document, can't you?
I can, it doesn't mean I'm going to.
Well, I'm asking you to.
So, what, what's the expectation of getting it rewritten to be sent out? Is that by tomorrow? Friday's not really a good time to send something out, because nobody's gonna read it, or maybe can it be sent out on Monday? Is that an expectation?
I, I don't think there's any, I'm, I'll, I'll wait to hear it, whatever your expectation is. If you want me to work on this, it would be easier if I worked on it through a.
What's the thing?
Word, that I could, okay, eliminate this, add this, eliminate this, and it'd be my recommendation, and then get it approved separately from you, 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 and we already have an agreement, once we get confirmation, you guys have all come in, I'm good with it, I'm good with that, I'm good with it, then it could be sent out.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, so that's the motion, essentially.
It needs Chaplin's review as well, so we need to give him some time to look at it.
Yeah, so let's look at Monday or Tuesday.
Even if it's Tuesday, but no, I, I wouldn't like it to be later than Tuesday, because then the, the splash is, the tree falling in the woods, and nobody's there.
Right.
So. I'd like, did I like to make a motion that, um, that, uh, the response is reworded, wordsmithed by the mayor? And once his final draft is completed, since that.
And changes are made with council.
That, changes are made with, um, with council, that it's.
Approved.
Approved. And. It'd be sent out to the residents on the list with the logo.
Okay.
That it, so it's an official response.
Okay, so, so basically, it's gonna be reworded, everyone individually will get a copy, staff isn't involved in any of that work, to be clear.
Correct.
And it's gonna be revised and approved individually, and each individual council member will get back to Christina. Give her a thumbs up?
Yeah, somebody's gonna give me one final version, I'm gonna send that final version.
We'll all go back to you, and then you submit it to Christina.
Right.
Okay, I'll submit it to Christina, and then she will have Chaplin review it.
Review it, and then.
Review it before it's sent out.
And once, once it's reviewed by Chaplin, it can then be disseminated to the public, to the residents on the list with the logo.
Okay.
Okay?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, um, next up we have, uh. Discussion, uh, no, no, open topics, uh, Wuma, I, that's the only thing I have, real quick, um, does anybody have anything else before going? Because we can add an open topic right here, right? And it's just informational.
I've got nothing.
Okay, so I just had Wuma, the meeting is today, in the agenda, they're discussing the next, um, location, um, I don't know the dates yet, but it's usually the last Thursday of the month.
Can you get them to, can you ask them to send me the stuff earlier? I literally got it like la- like last, like yesterday, and it's just not enough time for me to put it out to the public.
Right, well, it's, it's, it's not gonna be for another month, I mean.
I'm saying, they gave me the stuff for this meet, tonight's meeting yesterday, so I haven't been able to put out a notice or anything, so no.
Right, right, they gotta, let them know, because we, we, all we're doing is trying to provide information out there, so you can actually send it out, it's not, there's no legal meeting on, so you don't have to send it. You can take that information and just send it out tonight, because all it is is a meeting, and it's not a meeting that involves any quorum.
Okay.
As, as far as the village goes, so there's no, they're sending out a meeting that we're having a town meeting, there's, the quorum is met and whatever we decide on that, there's no, that meeting was set a long time ago, but what they are gonna discuss is the next location, which we all agreed that we would offer up this town hall?
I think we're up in December and May.
Okay, so I don't know what that is, and if that's the case, that's fine, if they've already sent that to you, if, if they have, see, I haven't seen any of that.
Do you want me to CC you on things about it?
You, you should, because it'd be good to know, just, you know, all I'm telling is everyone is the Wuma meeting is tonight.
Me too, on the ultimate.
Right, okay, um, we both plan to be there, but, um, I just want to make sure, as long as I'm hearing coordination is going through you, so you know that you're up for that meeting, that's great, that it, because I don't want you having to be here because it goes till five and you may have another meeting scheduled or something else, and, and then you'll be responsible, as you know, for that, the minutes for that time, that, the clerkies and stuff, so, okay? All right, that's all I have on that.
Whenever we have it here, we'll probably have to have it at Banks, because we don't have enough space in here.
Yeah, we'll see how many people go there, but that's, that's.
How many people are actually representative in the meeting?
I'm gonna say there were 10 people there at the last meeting.
It's getting closer in here.
Yeah, as it gets, as it gets bigger and more people may show up, I don't know, it'll be interesting to see who comes today.
Yeah, you'll be.
We'll be at one end of the winter, so.
Today, so.
Okay, um. Next up, the communication topic email blurbs, discussion consideration of October communications, does anybody have anything?
I was gonna say, I have, you guys have the draft list in front of you, things I thought about, definitely want to get information about vote by mail out there, since that's already started. What am I giving you? I need that. Um, and. Definitely get stuff about vote by mail out, and we probably want to ramp up how often the referendum stuff goes out, I can start putting bits in the weekly newsletter too.
Do you have to like save this time until October?
We just passed a resolution saying we oppose it. Okay, I'll put that down.
The only, I would, you know, um, is what, to piggyback on, uh, Austin, you sent out regarding early voting. So, they put on there October 15th, you know, early voting at, uh, I think it was Marvin Ridge.
Yeah, there's two, there's two locations that are really close to here, two or three actually, but. But yeah, that, that early voting information I'll send back out this month when we get, when we get a little closer.
Halloween safety, HOA invite council member to annual meetings, because a lot of the annual meetings are coming up, and Daylight Savings is November 1st.
What was that thing you said about HOA?
A lot of the annual HOA meetings are in the fall, the end of the year.
Holiday time.
And I do, I do have a topic in there about council HOA meetings, I can revise that and just play around with the wording to emphasize the annual nature of those meetings.
Well, I know you had it in September.
Mm-hmm, and it'll go out again, it'll go out again this month, and I can include it every week.
Okay.
Now, I don't, as far as other things coming up, and again, I don't know if, uh, I know the CDC is out there with saying they shouldn't have Halloween and stuff, so you just, are we gonna take a stance on it as a village or the state?
Maybe, maybe just, maybe just say that, I mean, we, I don't know, we, we don't have the, the right to regulate that, but I mean, you could just say that take, take caution, be careful, you know, we can, we can provide the CDC recommendations, but.
I mean, that's, that's from the.
At that point, you might as well just.
Federal government, if you will, then you'll have the state, God knows what he's gonna do and suggest and stuff, and then it goes down to the county and towns and stuff, and then it.
Maybe just, maybe just general caution.
Neighborhoods, and maybe just a note to the HOAs that goes out that, you know, it's, we're gonna leave it up to your discretion if you want to, you know, because it's the neighbors that are gonna be feeling comfortable, but it's. Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there because it's a very public event, everyone, by the way, is wearing masks anyway, so.
Maybe just err on the caution of safety and just encourage if you are doing anything for Halloween, take caution, do this, do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd kind of wait and see what, what the, the state level is, is saying, because.
And things about Halloween won't go out to the, to the latter half of the month anyway, so, yeah.
Before they probably make an actual decision, it's just something to think about.
And we'll, we'll have another council meeting before then, so if something urgent comes up that you want to talk about, we can fit on the agenda there.
Um, okay, then, anything else?
Kim, am I getting, am I getting better at predicting what you're gonna want to go out?
Yep, you did a great job.
Communication topic, we have those, that's almost done, so these are the dates they're going, SM, S, what's SM stand for?
Uh, social media.
Social media date, okay. Newsletter date, okay, most of the stuff that's gone out already, they're September, correct?
The September list is behind it, and that's all the stuff that's went out, there's a few things that, that'll, that'll go out, um, um, early, early next week, because it's still September, but they're on this list.
Okay, um. I got nothing else. And your notary's on there, right?
Yes, it is, I'm a notary now.
Do you have your stuff?
Yep, I do.
All right, so you can do that, that's good to know.
And I'll put a, I'll put a note on, I'll send something out in the newsletter that's thanks to the website committee since they're done now.
Okay. I didn't have anything on that, so I'm, I'm good, anybody else, Bob?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So, next up, we have reports and updates, administer's, minister's report, start with Woodland Forest Speed Limit Signs.
So, just a couple of things, they actually did made a request for some speed limit signs being installed in their subdivision, they, um, are part of that group that y'all are going to be, that we just approved the ordinance or will be at the consent agenda for the speed limit changes, so just wanted to let, um, this group know if they're listening, and any other subdivisions that, um, are requesting some speed limit signs, I think Preserve may have requested them recently as well. That, um, once this ordinance is enacted, we will be installing those speed limit signs as previously discussed in this meeting. That's it, on that topic.
Okay.
The next topic is the NCDOT left turn only, so we're still working with DOT on that, we have to get an encroachment agreement with them for the no left turn, uh, they are willing, uh, to, to do that, so once that encroachment agreement goes through, we will then in turn, um, get an ordinance adopted on our end that changes, um, our traffic provisions that prohibit the left turn, and the sign will be ordered shortly thereafter that says, no left turns Monday through Fri- Friday, 3:30 to 6:30. Um, so it's a little bit of a process, DOT has to approve an ordinance, and then we approve one subsequently after that, so.
This is for where?
By Marvin, Marvin Newtown.
3:30 to 6:30, so we're moving forward with that, isn't that a little early, 3:30?
It does back up at that time, though.
We, yeah.
Does it?
Yeah.
I get caught in it when I'm delivering y'all, y'all's agenda packets.
If y'all want to change the sign, just let me know, I mean, we, we don't have to, the ordinance is not presented in front of you tonight, but we need to prepare the ordinance as to how y'all are desiring, but I've told them 3:30 to 6:30, those are the, the peak times that we've seen.
So.
I was thinking seven, but if it's cleared out by 6:30, then fine, I, I just thought it was a little later in the day that the traffic was higher, but you guys have been analyzing it better than.
So, we're still putting officers there, correct?
Correct.
And we're just saying that's not, no longer gonna be a left turn.
Correct.
Which will streamline the, the officer's job there.
So, how fast, so are we spending a lot of money on this?
Uh, or when the sign, whatever the cost of the sign is gonna be.
Okay. Because I, I see other issues that create other issues in other areas where they automatically divert to going to, it becomes cut-throughs of other.
No, they're just.
It'll create.
The easiest way is to go around the traffic circle and come back and make a right. That's just, they're not going through Firethorn to get that.
What traffic circle?
This traffic circle, they're just go straight to go around the traffic circle and go back and make a right.
We've had this conversation.
They just can't make a left there during.
From that direction.
Coming from.
That's the only direction.
Right.
Only direction.
Because they'll do, they'll, they'll try to go.
Eight turn left in a Metamorgue.
Again, I, I, I wanted, no, I, I wanted to be clear that it's not Marvin Road in Newtown, we're not saying no left there.
No. Can't make a left onto Marvin Road from Newtown coming from Southern Carolina, but from Marvin, you can make a left.
Yeah, 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 no, they, just.
Clarifying that, that's all I'm saying.
But what, what people are gonna do, they're gonna come down here and they're gonna turn around the church.
Yep.
And turn around here, and then to figure it out, it's really hard to, 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 because of traffic, then that's gonna stop, and they're gonna go down, they're gonna make the loop, and they're gonna come back.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I agree, I'm just clarifying that left hand.
Great, so let's, what if we get ahead of this?
We're doing it only on these. Okay.
When we put the sign up, just add use traffic circle. To access Marvin Road, when it says no left turn from 6:30 to, 3:30 to 6:30, put use traffic circle to access Marvin Road, simple.
There you go.
That's very simple, that way people, people get it.
I'm just clarifying, that was left hand both ways, left hand going out and left hand going in, I'm like, I don't remember that, I remember the other one, but I, I was like, in my mind, I was thinking, oh, we're stopping a left hand there, that's not.
And it's just Monday through Friday from 3:30 to 6:30.
Well, yeah, well, even when officers aren't there, because they're always gonna be there?
They're not always gonna be there, but it's done by enforcement basis, so we would have to have an officer to see it, to give them a citation.
Right, okay, so can we, can we add that signage to it?
What was it, I'm sorry.
Use, use traffic circle to access Marvin Road. Like, you know, when you put the, the times there, say use traffic circle to access Marvin Road, it makes it a very simple, uh, directive, so people will just, they'll come back.
I will ask DOT.
Use traffic circle ahead.
Yeah, to access Marvin Road. It just gives information to people so that they don't start using side streets to turn around, that doesn't work, not with, that's the whole point, is the volume is high, we're trying to mitigate the.
Right, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I, when I heard left turn, I thought, I was thinking the oth- the other left hand, I, I don't even remember that, but I do remember the off of Newtown, okay, anything else on that?
Not on that topic.
Okay, manhole covers.
So, the engineer did advise him of your recommendation at the last meeting, and he's taking care of it, so it should be done shortly, the manhole covers, at no cost to us.
Really?
Yeah. So, um, there's another issue that's going on in Firethorn, which is a issue that we've had to put some drainage at an intersection, he's still looking into that, DOT supposedly fixed it, but I don't know if it's for sure been fixed.
It hasn't fixed, it hasn't been fixed.
We're still assessing.
And even if it's, I know you made a comment, I sent you a picture yesterday of it, it hasn't rained in a while and there's a big puddle there, so when that person waters, it's, it puddles there, so the problem is, even if they do water or they don't water, it should drain properly in that corner, which, when, since they've, I don't ever remember, correct me if I'm wrong, seeing a puddle there all the time. Now, since the roads have been fixed, let's call them, there's a puddle there at all times.
And it may be a stopped storm drain, I don't know, a blocked up storm drain.
Nope, it's not, it is not, it's just a matter of a company coming in, I just had it done at my house, and coming in and injecting a polymer into that corner, it's, can be expensive, and they're gonna have to lift up that whole road to push the water off down through the thing, and it's just in that corner. I had it done to my cement driveway and where it, where it sunk, because things sink, and I don't know, other than adding more, I don't think they can add more road on there, I don't know.
They can lift the asphalt, add asphalt to lift, lift the elevation.
By adding more asphalt, which then creates a issue with the curb, because the curb goes down, so if you just lift the asphalt, then it sits on the curb, so you gotta lift everything up at once, yeah.
Let them figure it out.
Yeah.
Mike's still working on that, but keep me posted if y'all don't see any changes, um, and we'll keep looking at it too, and that's all I have on that topic.
Okay.
The next topic is Wyndham Hall Road Request, and I'm gonna pass this around, um, we've been approached by Wyndham Hall, oh, actually. That, well, yeah, actually, I meant to make copies of this, but that's our road acceptance policy, y'all should have it, and if you don't, you can put it in your books, but, um, it is kind of coincides with some of the stuff you were talking about early, earlier. Wyndham Hall has requested us to take over their roads for the primary reason of providing four-way stops so they can reduce some of the traffic speeding that's coming through their neighborhood. Wyndham Hall roads right now are owned and maintained by NCDOT, and they have a pretty high score, so they're gonna be pretty low on their maintenance schedule, meaning probably five, 10, 20 years from now before they're touched by NCDOT. Um, our road acceptance policy that's just passed around doesn't really specify us taking over ownership of DOT roads within a certain threshold as far as a percentage of, um, the scoring. The scoring based on the last assessment that was done in 2019, all of theirs are in the 90s, with the exception of the main road, which is an 81, and that's the one that they're really interested in us taking over, the, the rating that's an 81. Now, again, the acceptance policy doesn't specify us taking them over at a minimum standard, so I don't know if y'all want to set a precedent for going to.
So, this is, would be accelerating this particular road because it's not on the schedule to be turned over.
That's right, yes.
Okay. When are we, when is it in our schedule to take over?
Several years, it's like one of the last ones that.
And this is all because of a stop sign they wanted to do?
Yeah, they want to do, can you just show them like a four-way stop? On, on Wyndham Hall, they want to do it like right here.
So DOT won't do four-way stops?
No, he said that they've come out and done traffic studies and they've, they, they said no.
You're not gonna be able to do one coming in because it's gonna back up traffic onto Marvin's Road. Or maybe not.
That's way, it's way in, I, are the people cutting through, is that the deal?
I don't know.
Coming around that way now, or going right? So, we get into a precedent of, okay, all of a sudden they have an issue, whether it's. And, and, and keep in mind, it could be a stop sign, it could be, my roads are crumbling and DOT is not gonna fix it, and it's not the responsibility of Marvin yet, so all of a sudden, the community comes together and say, well, let's not put this on us, let's just, or we don't want to wait, let's just go over to Marvin and have them, and now all of a sudden, we're, we're not doing the schedule that we had. The schedule was done independently by an engineer, if I'm not mistaken.
The assessment, the assessment ratings based on the criteria that was established was, um, done by an, by our engineer.
Appomattox isn't on, in Wyndham Hall, it's in Frontal Bay.
Yeah, they, well, that's, yeah, they, well, we're identifying a free-flowing why that, maybe why they want the stops, I, I still don't see that as a cut through, it, it's no faster to cut through that neighborhood than it is to go to the corner.
I, I think they've got residents that are hauling ass up and down Wyndham Hall, like.
Well, then.
And that's why they want the four, four-way stop.
So, let's.
That they're not gonna, the stop sign is just gonna stop them for a second, it's not gonna, that's not gonna regulate the speed from.
I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Wind the lane to.
How wide stops in two sides, or only two, on two?
I don't think, yeah, I think DOT just doesn't want to spend the money to put signs up in a neighborhood that shouldn't be.
Is there a way we can talk to DOT and say, well, that's, because if that's what we're gonna do in the end anyways, once it gets turned over, that we'll pay for it if you just give us the blessing?
There are two stop signs there.
So, okay, so we're adding two more stop signs and, and can we not go back to DOT and say, look, our, our long-term plan is to turn over the roads to us anyways, we're at, giving, is an ask on our part, we're willing to pay for it because we would pay for it five years down the road, but give us a variance on this, where we, will you allow us to do this at our cost?
And it would be an encroachment agreement, I mean, we would enter an encroachment agreement with DOT to, to make that happen, and I can make that request.
I mean, our goal is to keep us on schedule like we're on schedule and do the thing, because once we start, okay, issue comes up, boom, all of a sudden, the community's gonna get together and say, we're, we're not getting a response from DOT, let's go to the Marvin, and Marvin, we have our master plan when we're gonna turn these roads over, and we're setting precedent, is what I'm saying. we're not getting a response from DOT, let's go to Marvin, and Marvin, we have our master plan when we're gonna turn these roads over, and we're setting precedent, is what I'm saying. So it's like, if we can work with DOT, if that's the issue, let's get that fixed.
Well, okay, Wyndham Hall, they'll say they'll pay for the stop signs, they just want somebody to approve them.
Well, yeah, we'll.
So if we can get the encroachment agreement and let them pay for them, then it's a win-win-win.
But that's what I'm saying, if we can reach out to someone, and it's not that they cooperate all the time, they're just saying, look.
This is, this goes back to the advertisement to be in Marvin. They have a bigger voice with the village on their behalf than just a neighborhood or an individual, if we can make this happen.
Did we not ask DOT for stop signs, and they told us no already?
We, we can't, cause we don't have control of, the HOA would have to do it. The HOA has asked DOT, but we haven't.
So why do we think we can ask them?
We would have to enter an encroachment agreement based on the fact that we're going to assume maintenance of the roads at some point, whether they approve it or not.
I think we should at least try and make an effort to check that box out, saying, yeah, we talked them to, and we didn't get it.
And they may not allow, they may not allow us, but we could at least maybe facilitate it from the HOA. Same, it's kinda the same thing that Firethorn did with the, what is that thing? The fountain or whatever y'all had, the planting?
Right.
The entrance monument?
Yeah.
Right.
Y'all entered, I think Firethorn entered an encroachment agreement. We didn't have anything to do with that, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's what I.
We, I think we initiated.
Well, in the end, if they're willing to put a left turn signal for a certain times, I mean, this can be, they can look at this as temporary, because eventually, for a temporary time, they're gonna own the roads till it's turned over to us, and we're fine with it staying on all, all roads being with the stop sign on.
Okay, we will facilitate that discussion as to where it goes. And then there's one more thing, did any more questions, comments on that?
No.
One more thing I wanted to mention that's not on the agenda is Marvin Creek Roundabout. We've been, we've had a lot of back and forth with this, and I've been in contact with the HOA just to keep them abreast of what's going on. But I'd come to you guys a couple months ago and requested some money for some repairs that were done, needed at that roundabout. And then we found some documents where we own two-thirds of that roundabout, DOT only control one-third.
Right.
We had submitted some information in our power bill reports for the last eight years that said that we owned and maintained that two-thirds. We've been receiving funding for that two-thirds of roundabout, which is not much, but no one has anything to date up until the point now where we went to enter an encroachment agreement with DOT for that one-third that we were gonna repair, because it just didn't make sense to repair half of a roundabout. So they come back and they say that it's their roundabout, so we get into a little bit of a contest with them about whose roundabout it is. They provided a petition to me back in two thousand six, where Marvin did petition to DOT to accept the entire roundabout, and since that time, there was discussion made at the April of two thousand twelve meeting that discussed the gates and the takeover of the gates. However, no official action was taken to take over the roads back from DOT. So we're still looking at historical records, but as it stands right now, we are under the assumption that the entire roundabout is DOT's. I will update you at a later date if that changes in any discovery that we find, but at this time, that's, that's kinda where we stand, but we do have more documentation to go through.
Yeah, cause I thought we just owned under the gate.
It's complicated. I've been looking through a lot of minutes.
If it comes back that we've been receiving power bill money for that, and we don't really own it, are we on the hook for repayment of that power bill?
I did have a discussion with Travis Pressler about that, and he said that we're just gonna not even talk about it anymore, so. He can't say yes or no, but it's not something that either party is, us or them are gonna pursue.
I mean, honestly, unless we find out it's Marvin's, I don't need to hear about it again.
Okay. With that said, the contract that y'all previously approved for roughly ten thousand dollars, we're not going to execute that. And if that's the case, I can't remember if we've already done a budget amendment, but if we are, we'll end up switching that back. And I have been in contact with the HOA, so they know that there potentially could be an issue, their understanding, and just awaiting to set up date.
Cause I think that it all came down to that gate, and the only thing, the previous council before I was on, they came in and they took over the, I don't know if it was from DOT or whatever, but right below the gate, so then the community could not install a gate there.
I looked at the minutes, and I didn't see official action. I saw a lot of that discussion, but I never saw an official action to actually assume, assume maintenance of that.
Somebody, somebody on our end changed the maps, so I don't know what prompted that person to think that something official took place, because our power bill maps did change from two thousand ten to two thousand twelve. So if something was done, I just can't find what that something is, and that something may not have been an official action, it just may have been.
Whatever it was, it was exactly that, is to prevent those gates being, they started them working, and then they stopped them working, and it was all about it being, those roads were designed to be through by DOT to direct traffic through, and that, they wanted to put gates up and stop that, and it was, there was a huge wrack and forth on that.
And the unfortunate thing is the argument.
DOT would never allow that.
I was gonna say, the argument evolving around the gates and control of the gates is kinda flawed, because number one, Marvin wouldn't allow gates, or DOT wouldn't allow gates, so it doesn't matter if Marvin owned it or DOT owned it. Either one would allow gates.
Wouldn't allow gates, yeah. And I know there's a big issue of maintenance and all that, when they were developing that roundabout for the other neighborhood and stuff, it's like, who's responsible? I know there's a lot of discussion on who owns what, all the way back to what we started earlier today, is who owns the sidewalks all the way out to Ray Road and stuff, which is, I think somehow that all needs to be clarified.
So we'll, we'll figure it out. If there's no other updates, other than the fact that DOT owns it, we won't bring it back, and just know that if y'all hear anything, that we said we were gonna do it, now we said we're not gonna do it. Yes, that's because of these reasons, but I have, let the HOA know. And pending no other questions on that, I have no other topics.
That road is bad, that circle is bad.
Yeah, I had to refer it the other day, just to look at it, and it is getting pretty bad.
All right, next up, the plan of the report.
Okay, so I didn't have anything on the agenda, but some things came up in between last weekend now. We got a report from NC DOT about the Bonds Grove Church Road traffic light in response to the resident's comment at the town hall. They estimate that to be five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, and so the discussion is eventually going to be, how much is Marvin willing to contribute? And also, would we be interested in asking the applicants for the conditional district to also pitch in to that cost share bucket?
Who else is on that quarter?
It's a quarter Waxaw, a quarter Marvin, and a half Union County. And Union County said they'd be willing to put in up to two hundred.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Well, whenever Waxaw comes back to us and tells us how much they contributed to our officers, then we'll have a conversation.
I, I really have to agree with that a hundred percent, because that's, that doesn't really affect our residents nearly as much as it does Waxaw's residents. And they haven't contributed any of the traffic pollution, as I'll call it, that they've inflicted on us, so.
Well, not even that, but we asked them to contribute to the officers down here on both corners, and they said no. So I'm inclined to say, no.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I mean, you know, truthfully, the, the way to fix that intersection is just make a no-left turns, a sign coming from Bonds Grove onto Providence Road, period. That fixes the whole problem. Just don't turn left then.
Nobody will take that route, so how would they get there? What would they?
They'd take the road down.
They'd train, or you go back to. You just.
Yeah, like put all those people in that community right there, and even, so that's the easiest access to that road to.
It's easiest maybe, but it's not safe, and, and, I'm sorry, six hundred thousand dollars for a traffic light, just to make it convenient for one neighborhood, doesn't, it doesn't add up.
And it's gonna get ripped out when they expand Providence in ten years, or whatever.
No left turn, one sign, done. And, and I would, I would bet my next paycheck that Waxaw and Union County would be on board with that very same plan, to make it a safer intersection.
You do no left turn that way, and then you do no left turn coming up from.
From Waxaw?
Waxaw.
Well, actually, that's actually less dangerous making a left, left turn off Providence onto Bonds Grove than it is to make the left turn at Bonds Grove and Waxaw Marvin Road. Because I, coming from Waxaw, I always go down Providence and make a left on Bonds Grove, because the other, the other intersection, there's no sightline. You cannot see people coming around, and it, it, truthfully, if flow's wrong, Waxaw Marvin Road should be the through road, and Bonds Grove should be the stop, but it's the other way around.
But that's not.
Difficult to see.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
So is us ponying a twenty-five percent?
So a quarter, a quarter of the, the cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and what Roadhead is proposing is if you want to make the developer, whoever that ends up being on this lot, or the owner, when they do develop it, a conditional.
If, we haven't even approved it to be commercial yet.
That's a long way down the road, and it may not even be developed until five years from now, or. You know, and, or even, even ten, when they, when they do, redo the road, so I still feel like that's a big ask for one residential community to go a little quicker to Charlotte.
Or go the other way, or?
Just go a different route.
Power blocks for that matter.
Yeah.
But so there, is there, there's plans to go through, and that's a through street right there, Bonds Grove, eventually?
There are plans on the table to make this a realigned intersection that's kinda perpendicular and then going into this farm. But they, the county and the DOT keeps, keeps, keeps seeming to flip-flop on whether they're gonna do it or not. And especially if there's a super street, it won't really matter, cause they're not gonna make it a through anyway, even if it is realigned, so.
We have that just little north corner, and then that development right there, right? That's, I mean, Marvin is, that's part of Marvin, the north corner?
Yeah, that's right.
That corner right there. What's that development name?
That's Courtyards here.
Right.
And Province Ridge.
And in the corner is the proposed commercial development.
Yeah, okay, so.
This is already zone commercial in Waxaw.
Yeah, I, to Kim's point, I think, you know, the fact that we reached out and didn't ask for much, just to participate in the officers, when we didn't have the thing, and there was no interest at all.
We can always go back and say, if y'all are willing to fifty percent annual cost of law enforcement, until the roundabout gets constructed, we're willing to.
Oh, I think that ship sailed.
Yeah, cause the biggest cost is already gone, it's already under the bridge, because that was putting the options there too.
Yeah, we had, we had, what, four? Cause we have two on each corner down here.
Corner.
Mornings and evenings.
Right, and, and that was a lot less money than that.
And we honed up our roundabouts to help five hundred thousand dollars plus every one, so now I'm good.
And they, I don't think they stepped up when Nick and I were in the CRTPO, and they were doing a study on Waxaw.
Oh, really?
And guess where, guess where it stopped? Right at Waxaw Marvin Road and Bonds Grove, as if traffic stopped there. So the study went no further than just that avenue for them, that they spent a ton of money on, that we got no love, no love from, so I'm indifferent.
Not our road. DOT can pony up the money.
Yeah, very much.
I have to agree.
You got most next one.
The build grant for the transportation stormwater study, Bjorn has told us that we were not awarded that grant, but he, he wants to thank us for supporting the county, and that he'll try to learn, you know, from whatever was, whatever applications did win, and maybe try to see how we can improve. While the county is writing applications, how they can improve to win both grants in the future. That's all. So the thirty-five hundred that was asked of us and pledged in an ordinance or a resolution would not be allocated.
Just a study, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Where they, does they go back into which funds, just general funds?
It wasn't ever budgeted, because it wouldn't be budgeted in a future.
Were you saying if they, if they awarded it to us?
Right, right. That would have been budgeted in a future year, so that's just kind of, kind of disapparent now.
Anything else?
Yeah, the land use plan is in front of you. I would say that this is a final draft, except for some, you know, last planning board meeting, there were several members absent because it was a rescheduled meeting. So pending no comments on, from them, this is the final draft that the planning board is submitting for council's approval, or, you know, revisions and considerations, everything, you know, every pixel, every punctuation was looked at. Of course, there's still maybe typos, who knows, but this should be, you know.
Yeah, we were to review this to make sure this would be a good copy to review, and when is this expected to be approved?
Up to you.
I mean, it just helps with the timeline of the rest of the stuff.
Oh, yeah, so if you could give a review between now and the next work session in October, and then consider its adoption contingent on the revisions that you find.
Yeah, no more public meetings are needed?
No.
So the approval would be in November, the official.
Why don't we have it, it's two weeks now to our regular meeting. We've already read this. The only thing that has been changed are minor grammatical things.
Okay.
Why would we not just do it for the regular meeting?
October session.
Sure, yes.
Are you gonna approve it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just approve it at the next meeting. That's, we don't need to.
So everybody has to do their homework, everybody read it, come with any changes, we'll make the changes, and then we'll prove it.
Yeah, it's, it's two weeks, that's plenty of time to read, even for me, it's plenty of time to read it.
Right, especially cause we've already.
Read it on airplane.
You've already read the text for chapters one through five, so now.
And the rest were maps, that was basically.
Chapter six was a few maps, and the description of those maps, chapter seven is just a consecutive summary one page, and chapter eight is just a glossary, so.
Do you have a book on audio for this?
Some driving.
I can narrate it for you.
All right. That's it?
But, yeah, the future land use map is the big thing. It's on the wall there, it's also included in chapter six, it wasn't reviewed the last time, so it's on page thirty-nine. That's kinda the big thing to review in this over, overview. Other than that, yeah, that's, let's see. Yeah, one more thing. The question was asked about Asheville's franchises. I had a meeting with Asheville's planning director. He says that he does not restrict franchises at all, it's a myth that even many of their residents believe, but what they do is that they require a maximum store size, and they also require two stories, which makes it, which makes most change deterred from opening up in Asheville downtown, because they don't have a pre-made store floor plan that fits Asheville's regulations.
Well, that's, that's one way of going around, not saying that you can't do it, just don't make it easy for you.
And so what, they do have a very thorough list of uses that they, they allow and don't allow, but they don't regulate franchises in any way.
Have they shared that with?
Yeah, yeah, we had a meeting about it. I, I asked them directly.
And he's got, and he's got a lot of information to use as discussion pieces.
I think you meant, you have a list of their uses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have a list of the uses. Yeah, yeah, it's in their ordinance, and they shared that with me as well, and I took a look at it.
That's awesome. That's, that's a, that could be a really good guidance point for us, cause I imagine that we're gonna be going down the same road as them. So how they have something that's not on the list, but we are five years, ten years down the road, and some technology comes out, which spurs a new retail-type center that is not.
You can always add it.
You can always add it, but because it's not on the no list, does it, anything new, like a vape store, we didn't think of vape stores fifteen years ago and stuff, and now vape stores are everywhere.
It's not permissible until it's on the permitted uses.
Yeah, yeah, there's two ways, yeah, there's two ways to go about it, and we would obviously go the way of having a list of what's allowed.
Yeah.
And try to do a text amendment to allow said use.
Right, right, and Asheville also found that they came up with this form-based guidelines. Some of the things they came up with were not, you know, matching up with market realities, and then they did a few years later revise, tweak it a little bit, so, you know, I guess that also goes to say, you don't have to get it a hundred percent right the first time, although you try to. It's still, you know, open to figuring out what happens when you actually go around to it.
Any other questions on that from council? Anything else?
I do not have anything else.
All right, final thing, agenda items, review of action items on ongoing action items.
Right. Okay, this is a long list, and Christina, if you hear something I missed, which I probably did, you can chime in. Okay, Joe will follow up. Joe will follow up with state officials on the roundabout. Christina will follow up with NC DOT on roundabout costs. Let's see, Christina will revise traffic calming policy. Derek will follow up with, with Summit Landscaping on warranty and references. I will place Nick's proclamation on the October work session, Don Carr's proclamation on the January regular meeting. I will put the minutes on the consent agenda. I will, uh, do send out calendar invites for the coffee with council dates decided on today. I will put coffee with council dates for January, February and March 2021 on the December 8th agenda. I will call Mark Peterson about getting his forms in before the October 13th regular meeting. I will research and email you all about council ethics training. Let's see, Rohit will revise the annexation plan. I have Rohit grants written down here, what was that?
Applied for the CRTPO grant.
Well, okay, I got that on audio. Let's see, Amber Meadows fixes signs, law enforcement, drafting an ordinance, informing Amber Meadows they can enforce, but that, they can enforce, uh, but they have to pay for it and that we will not remove the stub and informing Amber Meadows that we can't do anything on their sidewalks. Christine and Rohit will get with Mike Walden on signs at the, at the slant of the stop signs, okay.
Of all of Marvin?
Yeah.
The review.
All Marvin signs, okay. Rohit will provide an update when available on the ribbon cutting for Marvin Gardens, glad I remembered what that was. I'll put out a procedure quorum notice for that as well. Christine and Rohit will revise DFI contract, uh, for Village Center and Village, something at Village Hall?
Will obtain a new one for Village Hall.
New for Village.
And it won't be on the consent agenda, but it will just be on the regular agenda for next week.
Just put that on there, whenever, whenever you guys have it ready, just send the item. Staff will inform HOA presidents of incoming annexation mailers and to, and preparations for annual meetings. I will schedule the October communications, I will get with Archive Social to set up the services, I've actually already emailed them while we've been in here to get started. I will notify the website committee of their dissolution and thank them. And let's see, I will add Andy to the email list for the, uh, for the new committee, so you get all the communications. Christine and Rohit will follow up with NC DOT on roundabout lighting and possibly Kim. Uh, staff will change names on, change the name on everything to Marvin Heritage District and I will make sure to get any, any Wuma stuff I get to Joe and Andy. Anything to add, Christine?
Yeah, we'll, um, go ahead and get the first round contract to include, uh, making an addendum for financing of the roundabout as well as, um, the Village Hall. We'll also get the DFI on the timeline of Village Hall so nothing is delayed and then we will look into emotive vehicle civil penalty for Amber Meadows. For the trail. And then I will wait for, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I will wait for the email back from the mayor in terms of the response to citizens and then I will have the attorney review for legality.
Um, you need to add, uh, election information for the October work session?
Oh, yeah, I have it right here, so what, what, you handed me this note, what did you specifically want?
Just talking about election day, like amongst ourselves, if we do wanna go work the polls.
Okay, yeah, add, okay. I didn't, I just wasn't, I wasn't sure what you meant, election day to October work session. You might wanna talk about this at your regular meeting since early voting is starting two days after and people are gonna be voting.
I'm not gonna get work polls for early voting.
I think you can do it for no one on Saturday, you kind of volunteer for stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do more sessions.
And then you need to make sure you invite, uh, the families for the plaques in the November meeting.
Yeah, I've got, I've got that.
Invite four plaques.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's go around to council comments. I don't have any comments today. All right, Jim.
Just quick, to the point, um, I wanna thank, um, camp, uh, staff for all they do and I mean, we, we covered a lot of material, but as always, and I'm always gonna mention this, thank you for Mason and Tommy, um, for the work they do, um, here in Marvin and all law enforcement. Honestly, um, I'm a veteran, I'm an army veteran and I was proud to put that uniform on. I don't know that I have the courage to put on the uniform that they put on and the sheriff, the highway patrol that they put on every day, um, so I, I can't, I commend them for doing what they do and keeping us safe and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Bob?
Just wanted to welcome, uh, Jamie, uh, here, uh, as our finance officer, um, and again, you know, to reiterate the, the hard work that the staff does and it's all, all the time to make it easy for us. I want to applaud the effort that all of it put into and making happen the town hall. From a perspective, um, going forward, I, I think that we just need to, uh, from an audio and visual, to get as good as we are right now with the conference meetings, um, it, and as, uh, for feedback, since I was on the other side, uh, I know distinctively when, uh, uh, Kim started speaking and she was talking and responding to somebody in the audience, the audio couldn't be clear, uh, picture became very sharper and a lot of people started tuning in, back in again. But, you know, when I was watching the whole thing, I kept thinking about, uh, uh, everything Rome wasn't built today and, uh, we're gonna be doing a lot more of these town halls, so we need to, you know, just, we, we're gonna continue doing them, so, uh, it's gonna start out with whatever it was, 20 and 30, and it's gonna be a day that we're gonna have 100 in there and I can see it, so, uh, good luck, uh, not good luck, good work, um, to everybody putting in on, especially yourself Rohit, you were working really hard, uh, trying to put all the audio visuals and anything happen. So, uh, I'm looking forward to future ones, gonna need it as this, we've got three big projects coming at us, we've got this Village Hall, we've got the Marvin Heritage District and we got a roundabout. These, these are hot things, we're gonna be very busy as council, so, uh, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Bob. Kim?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, um, I'd like to thank staff as well, as always, you guys do a stand-up job, call you out this time Austin for, and his minutes are concise, they're clear, I mean, very simple, getting them up to date is a big, big deal. Welcome Jamie as well, finance department. I'd like to, just to do another shout out, thank Forest Hills again for hosting the event. Um, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from, uh, enjoying, enjoyed that venue, we have that venue now that we know we can use in these type of events. Um, there was a little bit of issues with the audios, whatever was told, um, I'd like to thank the residents who came out to be there, I'd like to thank the people who, my wife wrote down my list, the people who were actually on virtually and stuff, um, and with that, I'd like to specifically invite whoever CGM is, um, to come to coffee with council because, uh, um, I think they were throwing out, uh, it's my understanding, the most contentious type questions that are thrown out and, and I have to kind of apologize to putting Mr. Fincher on the spot, but it was ideal that the fact that he was in the audience when someone threw out a bomb that had no basis to it at all is, is, uh, talking about which, uh, Firethorn individual was financially tied to him and obviously we would, I denied it, anyone else tied to Firethorn would deny it, but it's nothing better than having the actual owner in the audience, so I apologize to him that we had to put him on the spot, but I think he answered it very clearly. But to that person asking it, the fact that they did ask it, um, I think this is a perfect person, I'm inviting you openly to come to coffee with council and come get clarification on any of the things that we are talking about, um, just love to know who you are. Also like to thank, uh, elementary school, Marvin Elementary, Lori Sanders, a teacher, she is, has the task of, uh, 26 kids that have decided to do full-time, uh, remote, so those kids aren't going to school and they invited me online with Dr. Worthington, he ended up in there, the principal, um, but with the students, they had a lot of good questions, we talked about government and stuff like that, so, uh, kudos to what she is doing and all those teachers that are doing online stuff and just watching the kids and being able to manage them, I can't imagine what the effort is from the parent's standpoint level and the teachers doing that job, so, great. Shout out to all the teachers at the elementary school and the high schools that are, um, in the new, new norm for now, so.
Yeah, we'll just leave the middle school out.
There, in the middle school too, of course, um, sorry, I missed the middle school.
I just said.
All the teachers, I'm, I'm doing a shout out, so, um, and, uh, I think we talked about the Wuma meeting today, just wanted to re, uh, re-mention that, so that meeting is today at 3:30 and with that, I'll need a motion to adjourn. So, all right, all is in favor? All right, motion passed.